Good morning, everybody. This is June 20th, 2024. The Board of Supervisors are meeting today for budget hearings. Our meeting may continue into Friday. We will see how things move along. We will start today with a moment of silence, and I'm going to pass it on to Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Not a moment of silence for anyone who passed, but thankfully, we did have a wildfire in Scotch Valley yesterday. The response gave me a lot of confidence in our firefighting professionals, not just locally, but we had the good fortune to have a task force reassigned from another fire. To stay safe out there, we are starting to see these fires coming up, and I know it's been a couple of years since we've had the mega fires, but if you're mowing, if you're doing just common outdoor activities, make sure you know what the rules are and make sure you follow them. Thank you.
I will add to that, just to make sure, to add the whole entire first responders, law enforcement, always helpful in these situations to keep it clear so that our firefighters can do the work they need to do, and also staff in working on Plan B, just in case things get out of control. And I know that it was all hands on deck. Everybody was preparing for the worst, but luckily, all the work and the collaboration worked out so that it wasn't as bad as it could have been. So always appreciate it, and thank you for that moment of silence, if we can have a moment.
Vice Chair Randall, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Our first item today, item 4.1, public hearing, consideration of recommended budget for fiscal year 2024-25 for the county of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. And I want to pass this off to Cao Parker and Mr. Carter. Whoever wanted to kick this off?
Thank you, Chair. Well, welcome, everybody, for the first day of our budget hearing. I'd like to introduce Ms. DCAO, Casey Moreno, who will be doing the initial presentation for everyone today. Wendy, can you share the presentation? Can you open the presentation and share?
Can you share it?
Perfect.
Let's go back one, actually.
Why is it not going back?
It's too far away.
What?
All right, well, sit down here.
Okay. Oh, wait. Did you do that? I'll just ask Wendy to do it. Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Okay. So, the budget hearing for fiscal years 24, 25. The budget hearing for the fiscal year 24, 25, recommended budget, next slide. So the budget priorities are to preserve general reserves and maintain a structurally balanced budget while avoiding reduction in service levels and avoiding layoffs, furloughs, and benefit reductions. General fund increased by just over 2 million. Special revenue funds increased by 7.6 million. Capital project funds increased by about 2 million. Internal revenue funds increased by about 2.5 million. Enterprise funds decreased by a little more than 4 million, and special districts and other agencies increased by about 3.5 million. Next slide. Thank you. As you can see with the bar graph, each fund group perfectly matches the revenue and anticipated FPA with the appropriations and reserve adjustments. So this pie chart is all county revenues by their source. The majority of county revenues are provided by the state at 48%. Tax and federal revenue are pretty even at 17% and 16% respectively. So this is all county appropriations by their source. Services and supplies are slightly higher than salaries and benefits at 34% and 31% respectively. Construction in pro- I'm sorry, progress accounts for 16% of the county appropriations, and other charges follows at 12%. Looking at general funds specifically, 46.55% of general fund revenue is made up of taxes. About a quarter is from the state with the remaining from interest, charges for services, and other minor sources. For general fund appropriations, just over half the general fund appropriations are salary and benefits. 30% is services and supplies, with the remaining being contingency, construction in progress, capital asset, and others. So if all county positions were filled, it would cost about 121 million excluding overtime cash outs and extra help positions. If all general fund positions were filled, based on filled and unfilled positions that are currently on the position allocation, we are looking at just over 53 million. With overtime of another 4 million, we are looking at 57 million for the 24, 25 fiscal year with all positions filled. With the appropriations departments are requesting, general fund would need 101,278,410. And that's assuming everything is spent. So the anticipated revenues are just over 79 million, with the remaining being carryover from the current 23, 24 fiscal year. If the entire budget was spent and no additional revenues came in, we would end the year with no carryover for next year. Go back one. Yeah, sorry. Luckily, general fund does not utilize all of the funds which have been approved, so we have continued to have carryover each year. We have been seeing a significant increase in the past few years, starting in 22, 23, which was about 4.5 million less than what was approved one year prior. The budget for the current year is slightly significantly higher, with the proposed budget for 24, 25 slightly higher. The blue line is the appropriation limit established by the state, calculated by the Auditor's Office, and approved by your board. As you can see, until the fiscal year, until this fiscal year, we didn't come close to allocating funds which would exceed that limit. This fiscal year, with the proposed 24, 25 fiscal year budget, we are over that allowable limit. After research and conversations with the Auditor's Office, we are actually under this limit because capital offset is excluded. Nonetheless, this is something we will be keeping a close eye on and make sure that we are, we remain under that limit. Changes to general fund positions. The registrar of voters is removing one election specialist and replacing it with an election specialist senior. Buildings and grounds is reducing the full-time allocation of the lead gender to a three-quarter time allocation. Engineering is removing the assistant engineer senior and replacing it with an assistant engineer 1/2. Sheriff is removing two deputy sheriffs and two deputy sheriff correction positions. Code enforcement is adding one office assistant and one code enforcement officer. And I apologize, on the memo, it said two code enforcement officers were being added, but they're actually unfunding two of those. Planning is changing the staff service analyst to a flex 1/2. Parks and recs are adding one parks maintenance worker. Museums is changing the assistant curator to a full-time position. And overall, general fund departments are reducing by one allocation. So based on a report provided by Human Resources on June 4th, the general fund departments have a 20% vacancy, whereas the other non-general fund departments have a 21% vacancy. And these calculations are based on both funded and unfunded positions. General fund departments with greater than 25% vacancy are public works admin, IT, engineering, inspection, public defender, just to name a few. On the right are the other funds with authorized positions and vacancy rates. So secured property tax has continued to increase steadily, and we expect this year to follow in line with that. For every dollar received from secured property taxes, 57.67% goes to schools, 26.51% goes to the county, 7.55% goes to fire, 6.03% goes to districts, and 2.24% goes to cities. Of the county portion, 23.04% goes to general fund, 1.22% goes to library, 1.19% goes to roads, and water gets 0.96%. The cannabis tax from both cultivation and business actually had a significant increase after we had prepared this budget. So you'll see the proposed 24, 25 is less than what we have received and anticipate to receive this year. So at final recommended budget, we will increase that to being in line with what we received this year. In May, we received a little over $1 million from the second installment of cannabis taxes. So sales tax, after a significant increase the past few years, we are seeing a slight decline, and this is offset with the increase in property taxes. So we have had a minimal, if anything, change. So we are still bringing in the revenue that we are anticipating. Transient occupancy taxes anticipate to continue to slightly increase. Over the past five years, we are seeing an average of 1 million. Contingencies and reserves, at this time, we are not anticipating any changes to contingencies or reserves, with the exception of the loan repayment from behavioral health in the amount of $3 million. There are a number of capital projects which either have been in progress or are near completion. A few notable projects are the Armory, which is partially funded by ARPA, various roads and bridges at just over 23 million, public health medical van, various parks projects, and various special districts projects. So the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, so the county has until December 31st of this year, 2024, to have expended or be under contract for the amount of funds the ARPA Committee has allocated. Once we are under contract, we have until December 31st of 2026 to spend those funds. There are various projects which have not had funds claimed yet. The ARPA Committee will be meeting next month to discuss reallocating funds to ensure we don't have to pay anything back. And this data is based on the last quarter that was reported, which ended on March 31st. So a few new anticipated needs from general fund is the new courthouse. Once ground is, once they break ground on the new courthouse, we should start anticipating, saving, putting money aside to purchase back the fourth floor and renovate it. We are also working on a compensation study, and so that, we are planning on bringing back recommendations to your board in October. As long as everything goes smoothly, we should have that here shortly. Ongoing ARPA projects, most of the ARPA was one-time expenses, however, there were a few approved that will have ongoing expenses. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate the level of detail. We have a question from Supervisor Pyska.
I have a question about the fourth floor. What do we anticipate that buyout to be?
We really don't know at this point. Once they break ground, we'll have to start having conversations with them.
Okay, so it does sound like something significant that we have to plan for.
Last time I looked into it, it would easily be between 2 and 3 million, so we'd have to get updated information from both the state and appraisal.
And that's the buyout and not the renovation, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we might have answers.
Not necessarily an answer, just a little bit more information. There has to be an appraisal done. The state has to cause that to be performed. So what they said, more information to come, but it is an appraisal-based data. That's really what it's going to be driven by.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd love to offer a suggestion. I know that we did a trade of a property for the Armory. I'm wondering if because of the need of housing still being quite critical here in Lake County, if that's a possibility, rather than actually forking out some money for the fourth floor. I know we have other properties, if that's a possibility.
We can look into it further.
Any further questions? I do have a question for staff. Do we have any, I think it's HDL are the folks that provide us information? Are there projections for where they believe that our, our sales tax is going to go and other things of that kind? Just because I know our budget, I'm so thankful that we're seeing positive trends when I'm hearing from other areas that they're really having to figure out how to clamp down and cut back on services and other things. And this is not our case here today that we're going to be discussing that, but I'm wondering what kind of projections you're seeing in the next two, three, five years?
So with HDL, we do get projections. I'm hesitating because I don't have the reports with me to tell you exactly what's on them, but for final budget, we would adjust related to anything that comes up with the HDL projections. Statewide, it's always been going lower than the Bradley Burns, which is local, which we're always two years behind, which I believe you guys are aware, so that's why we weren't hit very hard on Bradley Burns, but we were hit on the Prop 172 sales tax. And with just a quick note on that, on the numbers that Casey provided, it also had, it was low by 419,000, and the reason for that is the Auditor's Office accrued back one of the months of sales tax, which last year was the first year they did that, so we have to catch up to the 12 months of sales tax data, so it's not even as bad as it looked. But I would have to give back to you with more information because I don't have it with me.
If it's possible to bring for the final budget hearing in September, I think that would be useful to at least kind of see the landscape of where we're heading into.
Sounds good.
But we were expecting to see a decline.
Yeah.
We've been talking about that the last couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I expected. Just a general comment, I guess, this was brought up the year before. I know that if we do fill up 100% of our salaries and continue to try to provide the same level of services, that right now, we have a lot of one-time money kind of floating around to help us out here and there. I know that we got rid of our fiscal crisis management plan, which was supposed to reduce our position allocations, not layoffs, but positions that we're not filling by a certain percentage point. We didn't finish that. We cleared out the fiscal crisis management plan in light of all the raises that we provided in 2021, I think it was, when we started. But it's just, it's something that I worry about, especially as projections may not look as positive in the future, that we might want to take a look at those things, and obviously without hurting what we have currently, but alleviating some of the pains of trying to balance our budgets and trying to keep up with the services that we have. Because we still do, no matter what we've done, obviously, what we've done have not allowed us to get a larger vacancy rate, so that's good, but we're still at that 20% as it was stated. And so there's a lot of positions that are unfilled at this moment in time. Just wanted to bring it up. I don't have a specific ask, but just something to pay, that I pay attention to, especially as we see those projections. There's no further questions. I guess I'm going to open it up for the public, if there's any questions specific on this portion. And I'm not on Zoom at this moment, I apologize. No hands up on Zoom, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead, and I believe you wanted to ask for a five-minute break. Correct?
Looks like we can move.
Okay, five-minute break is gone. Okay, we will go on, and Ms. Moreno, if you can please let us know who is our first to go on our budget hearings.
So first up, we have the Ag Department.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Sabatier and board members. Catherine Vanderwall, Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. Before I get started this morning, I would like to take a moment to thank my Administrative Assistant of Elegaton in her support in preparing the budget, as well as support from the Admin Office. So would you like me to go through, I have three budget units. Would you like me to go through each?
Yes.
Okay. So Budget Unit 2601 is the main budget for the Agriculture Department in Weights and Measures. So this department is responsible for ensuring fairness and equity in the marketplace, protecting and promoting agriculture, the public, and the environment through the various programs that we administer. So some of these programs include our insect trapping program, which is critical to our local producers in safeguarding Lake County's environment and agricultural commodities. And this also allows producers to export their commodities out of state and out of country. So other programs include safe pesticide use, certified farmers markets, inspecting incoming plant shipments, and agricultural parcels. So in the Weights and Measures side, my department tests all commercial weighing and measuring devices, and this ensures that the consumer is getting what they are paying for, whether it's filling up at the gas station or buying groceries at a store. So there are no significant increases in this budget unit for fiscal year 24, 25. I am requesting to carry over funding for the capital asset listing to replace our 1982 International Weight Truck. So this was approved by your board during the fiscal year 22, 23 budget year. The truck body itself has been secured and paid for, and there was a delay in the crane shipment, which was coming from overseas, and at the time, it was bound for the port of Baltimore. I have received word in the last month that the crane has been received, and it is secured, so they are expecting to finish the build on the truck in the next few months. And I do have one thing that wasn't mentioned for my position allocations. When I submitted my budget information, the administrative assistant position, I requested it to be a flex position. So that would be an administrative assistant slash senior.
Okay. I heard.
Well, I was just going to say, it is notated, so it would need to be, we'll list everything that when the appropriate position allocation is finalized in the end. There's actually about three changes. This will be one of them.
Okay, and that will be one of them. Awesome.
I just didn't want to forget that one. Are there any questions for this budget unit?
And just for clarification, you're not adding to your position allocations, you're making one of them be flex?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I see no questions. Please keep going.
Okay, so next budget unit is 2701. This is the Fish and Game Protection and Propagation Fund. So this budget supports projects that improve the habitat for wildlife and fisheries in the county, and is funded by a percentage of state fish and wildlife fines, penalties, and forfeitures. So my department manages this budget for the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. The committee receives project ideas from the community, and then recommends these projects to your board for approval. So some of the projects approved by your board this current fiscal year include funding for the Clear Lake Science Symposium, as well as the carp removal project. Are there any questions for this budget unit?
I see no questions. That one's simple enough.
Okay. And then my third budget unit is 2714, and this is the Biological Community Fund. So this budget unit funds the USDA Wildlife Services Program, which provides assistance to the public with nuisance wildlife, and covers one full-time and one half-time wildlife specialist that's assigned to Lake County. The program protects public health and safety, reduces livestock depredation, and mitigates property damage caused by wildlife. In fiscal, fiscal year 23, 24, as of March 17th, a total of 468 people in the county were assisted with nuisance wildlife. So this program is beneficial to the Lake County residents, and I would like to ask that your board continue to support this program. Is there any questions for this budget unit?
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I hesitate to ask, but I have to. I know a couple of years ago, the state was taking a look at mute swans, and I don't know if we've ever tackled that under this budget unit.
Um, no.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I believe that that is a project that's being worked on through the State Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, well, as I heard, no. So between this fund and the state, next time you talk to them, I'm just going to inquire. I'd love to see some progress from either the state or this budget unit.
Yeah, but this is, to my understanding, USDA, which this supports, has not been asked to be involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
And no further questions at this moment. Appreciate your budgets. The changes are not dramatic at all. It's the normal increase that we would usually typically expect. Too bad about the truck. We were so excited when we approved it, did not know it was part of the Baltimore issue there, but glad that it's on its way and that it'll get hopefully completed this year. That's, fingers are crossed for that. And so let's go ahead and open it up for any public comment on those three budget See, nobody in the chamber is getting up, and no hands in the Zoom room, and so bring it back to the board for action. Usually, we approve each set of budget units at a time, rather than going through the whole list at the end. I'm looking for action to approve budget unit 2601, 2701, and 2714 as presented.
There's going to be an amendment, correct, for the flex position? We need to add that in.
And that'll be in the position allocation when we approve that part, not within the budget itself?
Correct. It's not in the appropriations.
I'll motion to approve those budget units as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to pivot a little bit here. We have a separate item that we're going to take up now. It's actually exactly 9:30 a.m., so we're going to pause on item 4.1 and move on to 4.2. Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, LCA QMD, fiscal year 24, 25, draft budget hearing, June 20th, 2024, budget units 8799 and 8798. Director Gerhart, good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Thank you. I'm sorry, just getting everything out. That's what I was looking for. Okay, so today, this is our, our draft budget hearing for the Air Quality Management District. We're a little bit different. We're required to have this hearing as part of California Health and Safety Code, Section 40131, where we take public comment and at least two weeks prior to adoption of the final budget. So this meets that requirement, and it's in perfectly with the county's adoption of their draft budget as well. So what we've done for 30-plus years now is have the, have our draft budget... So what we've done for 30-plus years now is have the have our draft budget presented, and then we have just kind of our general policies that we follow for updates or board direction to come back and have further discussions later, if that's the desire of the board. So that's just kind of a way to present some information quickly so that we can get a little direction and make sure that we're still on the right track for the budget and then move forward throughout the year. So. So with that, you know, our budget unit 8799 is our primary operating budget, which has all the staffing, maintaining clean air, air monitoring inspections, enforcement, everything that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, state reporting, all sorts of things. It, we are looking at, I'm not even following my notes anymore, sorry. We're, we are looking at a fee rule update to this year to, because with all the impacts of the staffing, the increases in wages and things, we've been able to absorb those for multiple years, but we've hit the point now where we actually, it's impacting our ability to come to full staffing. That plus some other issues with staffing, but so the new fee rule will implement that, and we hope to have that to this board. I'm hoping the end of next month. There's lots of hoops that we have to jump through in order, you know, to finalize it and get it through this board for consideration. So so it's still in the works, and right now we're down to three people, so it's, things take a little more time than we anticipated. So. That's, that is the major change this year, is the revenue side. Expenses are, as everyone knows, expenses are always going up. You know, all of our equipment comes from, you know, it's technical equipment, so it is expensive. When we buy monitors, they've gone from, you know, $10,000 to $20,000. You know, things, we can't buy things on the cheap, so we're stuck with the going rate because we have to meet all the state and federal requirements. So, so expenses, everything goes up for us, and there's no way for us to avoid it. So with that, you know, our budget is increasing. We are hoping to get, you know, work toward full staffing, but we don't expect that this year. And the next one to two years will, once the board has the new fee schedule, it will take us probably two years to fully implement that because it is a significant change. Our fee schedule has been the same, same structure since the 70s, so it's, it's a very different change, a very different scenario, so that'll take a lot of staff time, and we'll be spending a lot of time with that and our burn program because we're taking over that online burn permit, burn permitting system. So, and it's gonna be managed through our office as a central point. So, so there's gonna be a lot of staff resources required, and at the moment, that's a significant burden on us. So. So with that, you know, the budget itself, the, is early standard. Otherwise, we do have some reserve issues that I believe Mr. Carr is gonna address, but.
So when the fund summary, if you look at the fund summary in the budget book, the reserves for 299 are actually incorrect. This isn't a part of what you specifically approved, but for Fund 299, Budget Unit 8799, on the fund summary, there should be $320,062. $100,000 should be restricted O and M. $10,530 should be small business AB 2588 assistance. $1,560 should be air monitoring equipment. $100,000 should be restricted for buildings, and $107,972 should be restricted for vehicle replacement.
So just for clarification, I believe the current reserves document that we have says it's supposed to be at $50,063, and you're saying it should be $320,062?
Yes.
Okay.
What's, what's currently in the book is two years old, so.
Okay.
Year and a half ago, we adopted the, the board adopted the resolution to transfer the funds, so it just somehow got missed in the update.
Yeah, all these were already in reserves by June 30th of last year, actually, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that update and clarification. Anything further?
On this budget unit, not unless you have questions.
I believe it is this budget unit. Well, let me check first if my colleagues have any questions. So obviously, I have a feeling I know the answer. It's you're dealing with some challenges with staffing, but I've seen on your capital assets that there's been a long-term effort to get the solar installation. It seems to be separate from the capital asset project of the Courthouse Solar. Is it completely separate, and you're taking that out on your own, or is that in conjunction with our Public Services?
We have, we've been in talks with Public Services to see if we can tie into their contract, but at the moment, that, that's not happening, so it'll probably be a separate project at some future date, so.
Okay.
Because that's.
And one of my reasons for bringing it up as well is the potential for savings. It's not gonna be immense, but running an office full-time, it still has utility costs and whatnot, and the solar installation would be helpful as you try to readjust what your rates need to be. Do you have a timeline of when you anticipate that might be accomplished?
If we can get up to, you know, 75% staffing, then we can probably start working on the planning for that within the year. But, you know, right now, we're less than 50% staffing, so it's, you know, we need at least two more staff before we can really get to that.
Okay.
And recruitment is challenging for our positions. So just, just as awareness, the people we're competing for, for experienced air quality, there's probably 50 people in the state that do what we do, that would be willing to work for a smaller district. You know, LA, Bay Area, San Joaquin, you know, they have professional engineers. We're competing for the other engineers and that are working for all the other air districts, and that's, that's probably a pool of about 50. So trying to attract someone with experience is very challenging.
Can understand that.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like we have no further questions. Let's move on to the next budget unit.
And 8798 is formerly the APCO Trust Fund, but now it's, it's the carryover from that, but also we use it for our grant funds. So it's basically grant programs is the primary revenue and expenditure from that. We do have a reserve for legal assistance and a few minor things like that in that fund, but it's primarily a grant-based fund at this point. So it's where we put the funds for grants that have to be tracked separately until we can expend those as part of the grant program. So, so those, those vary year to year based on what we anticipate for the grant programs. And with the state, that can vary quite a bit from year to year. So. We do have an issue where, you know, we are running into timeframes of, you know, our priority is the air quality benefit, where grants have, you know, specific timeframes, and so we may lose some grants in the coming year, just because we don't have staff time to process them properly to meet all the state requirements, but we're doing our best to not have that happen, but just to be aware that some of those, some of those funds may go back to the state.
Okay.
So.
I would request that maybe you let us know what those potential grants are, so, because I know, like, for example, Supervisor Simon has reminded Lake Transit Authority to connect with air quality control to see what can be possible for green buses, things like that, and maybe we can get a little bit more activity to try not to get those funds going back to the state level, depending on what the state does.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of it is our staff time, too. It's, you know, just to do one bus, it's probably, you know, just to do the application, it's 80 to 100 hours of staff time just for one bus, and then inspections and follow-up and reporting, and so it just adds up, and if we have emergencies or other things going on, that's where, that's where the problem comes in, is being able to get all of that workload in, in an Orville with a very short staffing. So. So we're doing our best to avoid that and get people on board, but.
Any other questions for this budget unit? Please.
Quick question on 23-90. So your admin services, a fair, a fair chunk of an increase in there. So you're looking to outsource some additional staff work that you're not able to get hired in inside?
That, that's the 87 through the county, and that, that is whatever the county charges us. I don't think our costs haven't significantly increased, but it's the program and the averaging that increases, so I.
That's a piece of cost allocation plan, which is also known as the 87 Plan. The Auditor's Office has a contractor who does the calculation for that, and that means that the overall expenses that, not necessarily just for your department, but IT expenses that are spread, the Admin Office expenses that are spread, the Auditor's Office, Treasury, and so on, where the General Fund Departments that provide services to all the other budget units, those expenses are then spread to the departments to pay, which is the cost allocation plan, and we bring them in to Budget Unit 1120. That's always been, that's been done for decades, and that's the way it's always been, but that's not a good answer, but that, Genevieve, do you wanna?
Looks more like a.
Explain what the 87 Cost Allocation Plan is?
Anyway.
Did a great job of it, I mean, is to offset the cost of the services.
I'm sorry that you got called on, but we're gonna need you to come to the microphone. It was unexpected.
I mean, Stephen did a great job of explaining it, so it's to, it's designed to offset the cost of the services. So I'm not sure what the question is.
And if we can get your name, please.
Genevieve Harrison, Auditor Controller, County Clerk.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
The question is, from 2023 to 24, adopted at 8K, now it's going to 30K. So if this is just one light item, and we're gonna see similar increases in other departments, I guess my question is more like, whoa, that's spreading quite a bit. So it's stated correctly in the budget, so for your budget unit, I guess that answers the question, and maybe at some future time, we'll say, why did this spread?
A lot of the increases overall are the increases in salaries, but for a specific question and on a specific budget unit regarding a fluctuation, I'd need to look into the calculation, which I can do. So I, anytime there's a question, usually they just send an email.
And we can catch up later. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I will just, to the point, sometimes it is challenging because there, there are significant jumps at times, and being a special district, we could pay a direct bill, which is what we would rather have, because we are, our, our funding is an annual funding, so we get paid per year, nothing carries over. So it's our permit fees for one year, pay for services for that year. So it would be much easier for us to pay as we went, but that's not the process that works for the county. So, you know, we do have the 87, which just sometimes, you know, sometimes it's great and it works out well, and sometimes, you know, there's a jump, and we have to make adjustments at the final budget to accommodate those changes. So.
Thank you very much.
I'll just add one more point to that. Doug, that is something that you can reach out about. A direct bill is another way that can be handled through the cost allocation plan, so feel free to send an email and we can look into that.
Okay.
Perfect, and that would be you. I'm glad you brought that up, and thank you very much for letting him know that that's available. And I think that it's easy to jump to conclusions with things that have been adopted. You really have to look at the history of the actuals, because I know there's times I see the adopted and actuals can be almost 50%, and it seems continuously, I mean, especially we look at what your anticipated revenues are versus the actuals. As you say, you don't know from what the state's gonna provide for you, and it kind of gives you that surprise of how it is that you can deal with your appropriations, and same thing, your appropriations jump from really high expectations to the reality of what you had and what you could spend. So I think that looking at adopted numbers, you need to really go back at the history of the actuals to see what is the true trend, because these are simply projections at this moment in time. And so even though it is 30, it may not be anything more than 15. We'll see what happens.
Usually it doesn't change that much, but just to be honest.
It can.
But other, other items will, yes.
Yes.
So.
Any further questions on these two budget units?
I just wanted to do, say, one clarifying thing with the cost allocation plan. It's the current year charges and then a two-years-back reconciliation. So if anything is overcharged from actuals, it's adjusted two years later, plus or minus, to the current-year estimated. So it does catch up.
Basically, we, we do write, in the long run, it may not be perfect right away. Okay, let's go ahead and open up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom, nobody getting up in the chamber, and so I'll bring it back to the board for action on these two budget units.
Do them both at once.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, for FY 2425 draft budget units 8798 and 8799. Cover it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
And do we have direction on the, the additional items, if you've had a chance to look at them, whether you would like to consider them or have us bring them back later to discuss as a separate item?
All right.
The general policies.
I would say we'd like to see them come back to us so we could have greater conversations, so we can get through the budget hearing.
Okay.
Is that in agreement with?
Consensus from the board?
Yes.
Apologize for not giving direction today, but please put it on the agenda as quickly as possible so we can provide that guidance.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Probation, Budget Unit 2302, found on page D 150, and their requested appropriations equals $7,484,464.
Good morning.
Not used to going so early. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chair and Board. I'd like to begin with thanking Admin for their assistance in preparing our budget, and my staff, Cindy Rodriguez and Kevin Lewis. The probation department is tasked with providing to the court information and reports in the form of pre-sentence reports, violations of probation, pre-trial, pre-trial conduct and memorandums, supervision of adult offenders and public safety by using evidence-based practices to encourage the change of behaviors, providing access to resources, and connecting individuals to services and programs, supervision and custody of juveniles who come in contact with justice system from traffic tickets to serious felonies. Housed, we have housed youth in Tahima County for the last seven years, and I wanted to make your board aware that within the next two weeks, it is my intention to move the youth that we have in Tahima County to Mendocino County. We had previously housed youth in Mendocino County, and there were some hiccups in the programming that was received, which caused us to move to Tahima, and we're gonna give Mendocino County a chance, a try again to make sure that our families are closer to the youth and they get the needed services closer to home. So that should be coming in the next two weeks. The accomplishments for this year, we have collaborated with the jail and taken our programming classes that we provide outside into the custody setting so that those that are coming out on supervision can start meeting their case plan goals before they're in the community. We had a successful resilient reentry event with Woodland College. We had more than 40 providers and 100 in attendance. Over the next year, probation will strengthen its collaboration with Behavioral Health by co-locating its services for justice-involved individuals in Lower Lake, and we anticipate beginning enhanced case management services through CalAim. We will continue to hire caring, intelligent, and dedicated individuals who aim to make a difference in Lake County. Currently, our vacancy rate overall in the department is about 25%, but for the deputy probation position, it is 30%. We do have one change, and I'm hoping Admin can help me with that.
So there is, within the FBA, probation has some carryover dollars, which is not normal for a general fund, but it was an anticipated revenue. And we did not put them, those capital assets, in the budget, and I was made, I was informed by Ms. Monfrans that they're already in progress. So. Budget, account number 40-70, instead of just adding appropriations, we're gonna move it within the budget unit and then replenish the funds during final, so that there isn't too big of a change. Account 4070, decrease it by $472,821. Account 4070, decrease it by $472,821. Account 2391, increase it by $75,821, that's for two vehicles, so that is where it would go, transfer it over to Public Works Roads, not Roads, for the vehicles. And then account 6272, which is a capital asset, $57,000 for one vehicle, and the reason why the vehicles are in two different accounts is the $57,000 in 6272 is a brand-new vehicle that wasn't already in the pool, the two that are paid for out of 2391 were already in the pool being replaced, so they're different, and then when the new vehicle comes in, they would transfer the asset. And the last change would be account 6313, that is for a solar project, $304,000.
Forty.
Forty, sorry. My bad, $340,000 even.
So I got a quick question about the last two, the 6272 and the 6313, that we're changing and adding, the $52,340, are we also adding that to our capital assets list, where right now probation has nothing on there?
Correct.
And that'll be a separate?
That change would need to be when you approve the capital.
When we approve that at the end of this, okay, just wanted to make sure and check in. Okay, anything further?
No.
All right, any questions or comments? Appreciate seeing your department just about everywhere that I'm a part of, obviously there's a recognition of a need to reduce recidivism, and doing great work to try and limit that as much as possible, and I really greatly appreciate that. I think that's all that I have on here, I know that, no, I do have one more thing, I do have concerns about our state budget, not our budget, and I see that you, it feels like you've recognized the potential losses, but there are, at least on the table, we'll see what happens when it's fully done, where prison inmates being released, there were some automatic funds that were typically provided to the counties, or it's been automatic for at least the last few years, that have been completely expunged from coming to the county, so I do have concern that with your vacancy rates that you just provided, so I hope that we can maybe hear from you in the near future on what incentives might be needed to help you fill those in, as you don't realize those funds coming from the state that can help you to ensure that we are capturing all those people coming out and being put on the right path.
Okay.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, it's not a budget thing, but I want to congratulate you on the move to Mendocino County, but I was wondering if we could, at a later time, get an update on that, because it's not just programming, but it's also facilities, right? So, and I'm not aware personally of, you know, I'm sure Tahima County was all that, it's great welcome news that they're moving closer to home, but it's both the facility and the services being provided, so would love to hear more about that transition at some appropriate time in the future.
There's no further comments or questions, open it up for the public, anyone wish to speak on these budget units? Nobody, okay, I'll bring it back, we have some amendments that were provided by administration, and I'm sure we could just state exactly that.
Okay, I'll move to approve budget unit 2302 for the probation department, as amended and as ably described by our staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, CAO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair, can we respectfully request a five-minute break?
We will take a five-minute break, we will reconvene at 10:01. Thank you for everybody's patience, and I'm going to go back to our DCAO for where we are and who's next.
So next up, we have Behavioral Health, starting on page D238, with requested appropriations of $27,154,240, presented by Director Jones.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board, thank you so much, I just have our fiscal manager, Amber, up here, in case there's any questions that get a little too sophisticated for me, but we are growing, I think that's quite obvious, to address the elephant in the room, first of all, with our budget, let's see, we have payment information, I want to tell you guys all, we just received, I think we've received over $3 million in payments so far from the SUD treatment side, our largest dollar amount expense with the SUD's budget is our contract with New Life, we've been meeting weekly with the Department of Healthcare Services to resolve the billing latency issues that we've been experiencing, and myriad billing issues, and we're now seeing claims being approved at, with a less-than-1% denial rate, so that's like huge for us, it was really good to see the state step up and do what they needed to do, and it gave me hope that they can do that for the rest of the system as well. On the mental health side, we're starting to see revenues come in similar to what we used to at about a million a month-ish, so like essentially, we've, we're up to normal, I would say, billing, we still have a backlog of billing, and in our budget, which I'll get to in a moment, it's inflated, I'm not sure if that's the right word, but because of the loan repayment in $4 million to General Fund, $3 million, and then Social Services is one, so it's larger than normal, because we factored in that repayment into our budget, and we are moving to billing weekly for services, as opposed to monthly, so as to not, to clog the billing mechanism, I don't know how else to explain it, but just to have an even cadence of billing, so with that said, and of course happy to answer any more questions about our billing status, I just wanted to highlight some of the changes, so for our Mental Health 4014 budget, we are seeing an increase in almost, of almost $5 million, so about 4.9 million, of course, you recognize that $4 million of that is directly a result from our loan repayment, so a truer representation of our increases is almost a million, so $991,000, we're primarily seeing increases in our mental health budget come from just overall costs are absolutely skyrocketing across every sector, so it costs money to feed and care and house people in care, just as it does in our communities, and so those costs have all gone up, and we are, as I've previously spoken about, seeing increases in hospitalizations, which are particularly expensive, we do have a goal of bringing people back into county, and are exploring ways that we can do that economically for people who primarily are on conservatorship or things like that, our goal over the next several years will be to bring people back in county for a variety of reasons, of course, one of them is to control costs, but it's happening. We have a total expenditure estimate of $27 million and some change, and total revenue expected for the 4014 budget of $26 million, and we have a $600,000 about carryover, our position allocation last year was 105, and this year it will be 109, and I believe those three extra staff are probably going to Mobile Crisis, fortunately, we did receive nearly, was it like $750,000 worth of grant funding, your board just approved, actually for me to sign, so we'll be seeing those funds touch down and actually reimburse us for some of the staffing and other related costs for our Mobile Crisis program, so that's nice to have, and how we're able to grow those two positions for our Mobile Crisis program, Mobile Crisis is absolutely exploding, which is good, I guess, we're finally actually really meeting the needs of our community. For our budget unit SUDs 4015, we're seeing an increase of about $866,000, our total expenditure estimate for this year is about $15 million for SUDs, and then our total revenues are anticipated to be around $14.7 million, with our carryover at $530,000. Last year, we had a position allocation of 24 FTEs, this year we have it of 30 FTEs, we, this is in preparation for the organized delivery system, and I'm pleased to report to your board that we have officially received approval from the Department of Healthcare Services to go live on July 1st, here in the next couple of weeks, we will be coming forward with a resolution, which will authorize me to sign the standard agreement retroactively, it won't probably get here before July 1st, but it will be retroactively dated to the 1st, so that will offer expanded benefits to all of our substance use disorder beneficiaries, so those are the budget highlights, and then of course, I think DUI has its own tiny little budget, and there's really nothing notable, it's pretty much business as usual, DUI pays for itself, and it's very stable, so with that said, I'm happy to try to answer any questions your board may have.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, on the SUDs, budget unit 4015, line item 79-90, what's the increase in miscellaneous?
One moment. Can, I'm in the budget, are you in the budget form?
I'm on page D243, and I see an increase under miscellaneous of close to a half million dollars on line item 79-90. It looks like income, which is good, but just didn't know what the miscellaneous was.
It's an increase in expense, not revenue, right?
Says revenue.
Says revenue. I believe that's the opioid settlement funds.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, appreciate the summary that you provided, opioid settlement fund, since that was the last thing that was mentioned, I know that when I sat down with DCAO Carter to, or ACAHO, sorry, never remember the exact title, I apologize for that, that the number that we were looking at was maybe a little lower than what it actually is, when I was looking in the reserves? So on the reserves, I was trying to figure out where we're putting those funds for the opioid settlement, and I remember, and I could be incorrect on my recollection, that we had discussed that those funds were not up-to-date as far as the opioid settlement, because I believe they're being placed in the substance use?
On the?
Budget unit?
In the fund summary, it's showing up as both an opioid settlement reserve and a general reserve, that general reserve is all opioid settlement, so the fund summary is a little off there, and yeah, it doesn't look to be the entire amount that has been received.
It is not.
And the department head can speak to why not all of it is in the reserve.
I suppose I defer to Amber, because it should be well over a million. We did allocate $600,000 to our Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which would take that down, and that's for our South Shore Clinic, which is moving forward, so expansion and revitalization of that clinic, so I believe this is after that $600,000 is taken out and holding in anticipation, so if we don't get that award, it will go back, but we're hopeful that we do get that award.
Okay, because I believe it says there's 519, and that was about $700,000 or something along those lines for the South Shore Clinic?
No, we earmark $600,000 as a match.
So then my next question is, and this was in your, I think it was in your summary, or it was in a summary, that you're adding a business analyst or a software analyst to help out with the EHR, and I'm just looking historically here at your position allocations currently, unfortunately, I see you at a pretty high vacancy rate of about 27% as a whole for Behavioral Health itself, because of the, I'll just be blunt, I feel uncomfortable with the way the budget is and what some of these asks are, without having repaid the loans back, once those loans are repaid back, then I feel very comfortable in figuring out how to move forward, and so one of those issues that I have and my concerns is you're adding more staff, some specifically to deal with this, with the amount of vacancies that you have, is it possible to unfund a position in order to fund this new position, rather than continuously adding more, where now it just has the potential that it increases the budget by adding another position on top of the issues of having a $4 million loan, and the uncertainty of what the state is going to do, we've been seeing trickling amounts coming in throughout this whole time that we've been struggling with the state, in my opinion, until we've repaid the loans, that doesn't mean that the problem has been completely solved, so I'm a little concerned about the increase in the budget, I believe your appropriations def, are the revenues are definitely going to go up, because you're owed so much money, you're going to get a whole lot more than usual, I appreciate the change in process to bill weekly, that way you're not waiting for three months to go by before you finally get your bills processed and you start seeing reimbursement, now it's going to be a week to week to week, and you're going to see a little bit more of a trickle, so I appreciate those changes, but I'm just kind of, I, I'm uncomfortable that I don't feel like there's any guardrails, when right now, your reserves are at zero, we've borrowed from other departments in order to make it possible to continue doing the work, and we're increasing the anticipation of what can be done, and as a board of supervisor, I'm feeling unsafe in maneuvering in that way, I can definitely say that I trust you and that you'll be spending it appropriately, but I also feel that guardrails are a necessary part of moving forward, and that's just me, but love to hear feedback on that.
Yeah, we've maintained a high vacancy rate intentionally, I probably shouldn't even say that out loud, but it's true, we have not flown positions to wait and see how things go, and so this is like our best-case scenario, right, we're planning optimistically for a future where things do work out, and that's been consistently, my ethos in leadership is planning for the best-case scenario, and part of, again, that vacancy rate is because we've, we haven't flown positions, we added a whole bunch, like 13 positions, I want to say, last time, and we didn't fill a lot of them, because we were in this budget position, so we're absolutely going to not fly positions and recruit for them if it, if it doesn't remediate itself, and you are, you are correct, is that one of the BSA positions, we're definitely needing more support in that arena, especially as we go into ODS, and we have to do more technical assistance for our contractors to access our EHR and whatnot, so it is really a tightrope of balancing this period of, once-in-a-generation period of investment and growth, which is truly happening at the state level, with, with being cautious, it's definitely a challenge right now, and I don't think that we're unique in that, so that's been our position, is we have this high vacancy rate, and we'll continue to dole out recruitments as we feel more comfortable with the monies rolling in.
And whether vacancies are a high rate of vacancy or a low rate of vacancy, that still doesn't change the fact that billing can still happen, because individuals within the community can access Medi-Cal services that then has to be billed through you, where you have to pay off the contractor, but you may not get the, so whether you have vacancies or not, the issue that you're dealing with continues to potentially intensify or exacerbate whatever the case might be. whatever the case might be. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. It feels awkward to me to keep adding. I believe what I'm seeing is we added 15 positions from '22, '23 to '23, '24, and that's over the course of the whole year, maybe not just at the budget time. And so we added 15, and now we're looking at adding five more, but yet you have 78 positions filled. And so I'm trying to figure out a way to be a little bit more comfortable, just because the state gives me a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainties as to where we're going. And where else, and I mean no offense in saying this, but where else are we going to get the money from in order to keep supporting the work that we do want to see happening from behavioral health if the state does not actually solve these problems? So I'm concerned that I feel we're moving forward with status quo from the board's perspective, and I don't want to micromanage. I know that you have potentially a hiring freeze within your own department. I don't want to apply that from a board perspective. That just creates more hurdles to happen, and it just becomes micromanaging. But I feel like there's not any single safeguard rail that I can rely on to ensure that we don't come back and say, we need two more million dollars, or so on and so forth. Again, I'd love to hear from my colleagues. I don't want you to respond on something that I'm just simply saying myself.
I hear what you're saying. I just don't know how we could task them with putting a guardrail or coming up with a guardrail on our own. I mean, the variables of the state, you know, you could put a crystal ball up here, and we could not have any good certainty in all of that. Anecdotally, she's already not flying positions. She's already like being proactive in a weird way, in a kind of a reverse proactivity of doing cost control, and I think that's appropriate. If Admin had some ideas on this, I think I saw a hand raised, I'd love to hear it because it shouldn't just fall on BH, it shouldn't just fall on us. If this is a structural thing we need to address sooner than later, I want to be sensitive to what you're saying. I just don't know what we can or should do other than what we've been doing. You know, we did the reserve, we did the loan, we're not flying positions, and we're just all holding our breath. But it seems like a bigger kind of state issue that we don't really have control over. So to invent a guardrail for something we don't fully understand and certainly can't predict, I don't know where we would go with that. Does Admin have anything to add on this? No? Yes, no?
I can only say what we have already, this is not the first time we've heard of the possibility of a guardrail, and it has been difficult to come up with anything that would be functional for both the board and the department. We did go into the idea of maybe lowering the department's budget to what would potentially be reality until the new funds come in, but then they wouldn't be able to spend the new funds unless we came back to the board, either during a budget hearing or a standard meeting with a resolution to increase their appropriations to now release the funds so they can spend it. Now, there is also where, this is a non-general fund department, so they are limited by what the cash is in their budget unit and fund. And if they do not have the cash, the payments will not be made by the auditor's office, period. That's the last resort. That's not really a guardrail, that's just a fact of business. So unfortunately, I just wanted to tell you what we've looked at, at least parts of what we've looked at, and we don't have a good idea for what a guardrail would look like at this stage.
And I'll just go ahead and finish so that we can move forward or continue the conversation, depending on what everyone wants. With the budget growing and adding of a position, I can't say yes to this budget. If it was the same as it was the year before, and there was a swap of one position, I would feel much more comfortable in saying yes. Still this uncomfortable, but I don't want to cut anything out. I had really hoped at one point, and maybe that's coming in the future, of what's mandated by the state that we have to do versus what's not mandated, to see how we can better maneuver through these issues of not getting paid. But today, what I have in front of me, I just, I feel like we're increasing the budget with appropriations, and my saying yes means I approve of you spending all of that, and I cannot possibly say yes to that. And adding positions in a time where you owe money to the general fund and to social services, I also cannot say yes to that, and I'll leave it at that.
Just follow-up, because I'm not totally privy to where the discussions are at with the opioid settlement, but you know, it wouldn't be a guardrail, but it'd be a Band-Aid or two if there was direction of staff to, you know, research additional use of opioid settlement money or take a fresh look at, you know, we don't have a lot of cannabis taxes, but you know, if there was direction of staff to look for Band-Aids as opposed to guardrails and bring that back when we do final, would that help?
I mean, I think if things can carry on or get exacerbated and worse from the state perspective, we're going to have to find those Band-Aids, but I don't want to find something that's not needed at the moment. I just, I don't know how to answer that right off the top.
Okay.
If I may, I can confidently say it is not getting worse. It is improving. It is very incremental. We have not been paid yet back, a huge backlog while they were figuring everything out, but it's resumed, and we're clearing backlog right now, even back to, for SUDS, '21, '22, believe it or not. And that is entirely on the state. They have recently been more responsive, which I'm happy about, at a very high level of leadership, and we've seen resolution of some of those issues. And I think that we're on a forward trend now. I completely appreciate how tenuous this is, and I feel that it's, of course, my duty as the director to make sure that whatever we can do to continue to meet the needs of our community, I feel is all the services that we provide are essential safety net services. And just as with mobile crisis, we saw a dramatic increase in hospitalizations. That's because our community wasn't being adequately served. And so now that we have injection of resources and programming to better meet the needs of our community, we're going, you know, eventually it will plateau, and we'll really have full penetration of needs. But this is a very sick community. So I have to balance taking care of this community with our budget realities, but I can confidently say that it is improving, and we are seeing the revenue begin to come in at a rate that is sustainable for us.
And that's what I heard you say in the beginning of your presentation here. And so I know that when we came to the board before to talk about the loan and moving funds around, we were worried, or there was concern that this wouldn't happen. And since you're saying that it's coming on an upward trend, I think that you're doing what you can already by not hiring in those positions and being prepared. I'm fine with that, and I'm fine with moving forward.
Thank you. I knew how my word will maintain our, that's the word, hiring freezes internally, just as we have been to manage. And I mean, we've really micromanaged the heck out of our staff with costs. We've delayed all travel, training, anything that wasn't absolutely necessary. Our staff are definitely feeling it and aware, you know, that these are tighter times, so we'll continue to implement those measures.
How many positions are you freezing at the moment?
All the vacant ones.
And how many is that again?
Oh, 27%. I want to say that's like 20, 15, 20 positions about for the mental health side? Yeah, and so we evaluate it essentially all the time, but on a monthly basis, we're like, okay, where's our cash flow? How are things looking? Balanced against like how, the highest need for position. Like for us, I would say right now, one of our highest needs is that BSA position for obvious reasons. And then, this is also a weird time. One thing I have to balance is that the last leg of the race for Cal AIM is a fully capitated plan rate for mental health plans and for DMC/ODS plans. So right now, we've transitioned effective July 1st, 2023, to a fee-for-service model, where you provide a service, you get paid. It's pretty simple. In 2028-ish, DHCS has said, we're going to gather all of this claims data for each plan, and we're going to do a capitation rate, where we say, here's what we think we need to break you off to do business for your members. It's how managed care plans operate. They get a capitated rate, and they're going to transition us to that. And so running up to that, it's been very clear to me that we need to have like 100% penetration rate for our services and provide as much services as needed so that we get a reasonable capitated rate. So it's very hard to like curb services and to shut down costs when you know that you want to, I don't want to say drive up costs, but you really want to show the accurate representation of costs, so you don't get a poor capitated rate.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, just want to acknowledge Supervisor Tye's concern on this. It is really challenging to move forward when we don't have control of the situation. And, you know, wanting to make sure that we're going to be solvent as we move forward, and it just, it is a big challenge. So hear your concern, Supervisor, and I think what we've asked for in the past too is just to keep us updated as this thing keeps moving along between now and September. We've got final, but you know, just continue that on. So yeah, definitely concerned, but we need to work together, continue on, maybe some more meetings at the state level and opportunities with the chair and the vice chair to talk with our electeds. They'll push some things along too, I think is a real opportunity, but yeah, ready to move forward with the requests, but definitely wanted to acknowledge the concerns that are there.
Thank you. I share those concerns.
All right, I see Supervisor Green.
Just very quickly, to your point on capitation, so if we're not filling those positions, that's going to artificially suppress our cost.
Drives down billing. So if you don't have providers to bill, right, you don't get the true cost of service. And now with the eligibility criteria for youth for mental health, I think I've told the board before, but it's expanded to include any youth, any youth that has a history of trauma, whether or not they have symptoms. That's nearly every youth in Lake County. So we could actually, if they wanted it, any and every youth in Lake County could be receiving some form of behavioral health services or supports. And that's the biggest, to me, that's one of my hottest priorities. We believe strongly in investing in the youth, and so a lot of these positions would go towards youth programming as well. You know, we also have a dream of someday doing such a good job providing services to youth that we work ourselves out of a job. I joke, I know that will never happen, but that's truly the end game for me as a career. So to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, the need is there, the need is present, the need has been there for years. So I appreciate the concerns. Yeah, we have to not stare a potential deficit down and not be proactive on it. That said, the point you raised about capitation, if we are overcautious and not filling our budgeted positions and we're not providing those needed services, then that's a different kind of deficit. That's a deficit that we are not adequately serving our community with the available resources we do have. So I encourage you to continue a walk in that fine line.
And it's the state that's handcuffing us, and I keep bringing this up at RCRC with other supervisors who share the same concerns and issues with that, so.
Thank you for doing that. All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? These budget units? I see none on Zoom and no one getting up. And if it's possible to entertain splitting mental health from the alcohol and other drug services and alcoholism program services, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I'll move to approve Budget 4014, Mental Health?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay.
I move to approve Budget Item 4015 and 4018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Was there another budget unit? Do we have another one?
4015, 4018. Okay.
Yep. I have three here, so I'm going to guess there's only three.
Just making sure. Thank you.
If you want more, speak with Mr. Carter.
All right, so next up, we have Child Support Services, starting on Page D 97, with appropriations as $2,877,135, presented by Director Widener.
Good morning. Hey. I brought my deputy director, Cindy Van Lannan. She assists with the budget. All right, I'm going to give a quick overview of our department. The Department of Child Support Services is responsible for establishing paternity, child support, and medical support orders and enforcing those orders. As circumstances change, the department also modifies child support orders to get right-sized orders that are enforceable. The department strives to put children first by helping parents assume responsibility for the economic and social well-being, health, and stability of their children while recognizing the value of improved relationships with both parents. I wanted to mention that we did receive a last-minute budget notification from the state Child Support Office that the governor made a revision at the end of May. We are looking at a decrease in our allocation. However, the decrease will be absorbed, and there are no potential layoffs within our department. Our final allocation letter will be received before September. So it's approximately going to be around $84,000, and so we're able to absorb that into our budget.
How are you absorbing it?
In our expenditures or possibly eliminating a position.
And, a vacant position?
But, I'm sorry?
A vacant?
A vacant position, yeah, no layoffs. Yeah.
And does it look like this change in allocation is going to continue forward?
We don't know the, I missed the meeting on the 17th. I wasn't in the office, so I have to reach out to my regional administrator and find out what happened, but we don't know if it's a one-time decrease or if it's ongoing. So we're not positive on that yet.
Okay.
But we're able to manage it.
Okay.
The decrease. I also would like to mention that, and I'm sure it's probably going to be mentioned in the position allocation, that we were asking for our account technician be changed to a flex position, that it be an accounting technician to an accounting technician senior. So I just wanted to make sure that, okay, all right.
Yes.
You got the thumbs up.
Okay. And I'm open for any questions, if the board has any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for the summary. We kind of figured that something would be coming along this way from the budget changes. I know that's already been a struggle in the past with us writing letters, trying to make those changes happen. Please keep us up to date on what we can do on our end to help out, and glad that you have the ability to absorb it. I know it looks like you have four vacancies at this moment in time. Always nice to have somebody at the desk next to you, but at this moment in time, at least there's a way to absorb that.
Yes.
Let's hope that it's not for the next three years rather than just one.
We're hoping.
We'll see. Well, thank you very much. I have no questions. Everything looks normal, normal growth, normal everything to me. So thank you very much for your budget.
Thank you.
Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No hands in Zoom, no race to the microphone in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve Budget Unit 2112 for Child Support Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Health Services, starting on Page D 153, with Jail Medical, with appropriations of $4,479,296, presented by Director Arden.
Morning.
Well, thank you for having me. So we're going to get started. I think Rainey's going to, we're going to kind of tag-team this. Rainey's going to do jail medical and then the veteran services, and I will take care of the other programs.
Okay, so Budget Unit 2304, Jail Medical Services. This provides for a contract with WellPath, formerly known as California Forensic Medical Group, or CFNG. They deliver medical care in the correctional facility. They deliver medical care in the correctional facility. And it looks like our, our final budget or, I guess this is the pending budget? It looks like that remains the same. Proposed budget, sorry, thank you. That remains the same. And then, did you want me to do vets now, or did you want to do that in order?
Yeah, we'll do it in order. Okay, moving on to Environmental Health. Thank you. Environmental Health provides consumer protection for retail food, public pools, spas. They're also in land use, some of their accomplishments this year. Also, I'm hoping this goes pretty smooth since I just did a presentation to you guys a few weeks ago, so a lot of this I don't want to recover, but feel free to ask questions at the end. Some of their accomplishments, developed a, and hosted a food safety management certification course for the restaurants. And then, as you guys know, about a month ago, we got started with implementing the health space, yeah, electronic health record. For Environmental Health, currently they're carrying around a 25% vacancy rate. I do believe they have one candidate in the pipeline. And then for this year, with some of the proposed changes in their budgets, implementing the software EHR. Other than that, there's no other allocations or change with Environmental Health. Any questions on Environmental Health? That one's pretty standard and pretty easy. I think one thing that they're looking at is revising the fee schedule this coming year and then potentially doing TRL enforcement if that gets passed in the future, so.
Just a quick request, if you're going to bounce around budget units, can you call out the page numbers and budget unit numbers as we go so I can follow along?
Oh, my apologies. That was Budget Unit 4010.
Yeah, I found it. That was on D226.
I think we're going, I thought we were going in order.
It's, it's a big book. You're all over the map.
Fair enough. Yeah, we've got a lot. Moving on to Budget Unit 4011 Public Health, or what?
That's the page number.
Oh, Page D229.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know what it looks like on your guys' side.
We have it.
So the Public Health Budget, so HIV surveillance, emergency preparedness, immunizations, communicable disease control, oral health program, tobacco control program, vital statistics. Those are the, pretty much the most commonly used programs in public health. As you guys know, launched the home visitation program with, and then getting started with community health workers. And then, one of the big changes you'll see in this budget is adding in the medical unit van, which was approved. That was around, what, $460,000 if I recall? Yep. In terms of allocations, we really kind of just traded a lot in this budget unit. So we're adding a deputy director as we're going through our org chart revisions. We're adding, adding some additional community health workers, we're adding a coordinator position, SafeRx position, an epidemiologist, and then we've given back some HSNs, a few HPSSs, and then a couple registered nurses or PHNs. So we're giving a few of those back, so we're kind of flip-flopping some of those. And we might use the community health workers, for instance, instead of the RNs, which are a little cheaper for communicable disease control, because you don't have to be a public health nurse to do communicable disease control for like case investigation and contact tracing. So as mentioned, just doing an org chart restructure, a lot of that's going into effect with this new budget come July 1. Some other things that we've added to this budget is potentially finding a clinic space, really trying to target Clear Lake area to have, one, we're short on space in the office, and we're implementing remote work hopefully in the next week or so too. So, but I'd like to have some of space in Clear Lake to help provide some services there. We also are adding in a backup public health officer contract for around $34,000 if I recall correctly. We're looking at, in the future, changing out maybe one of our office spaces or kitchen to, to do a remodel and make that like a lab or immunization clinic room. And then, of course, as we move into expanding our services, we need an EHR, and I think we've identified a cheap one, so hope to be implementing that soon in the near future. Any questions on that budget?
Go ahead and keep going. Okay, seeing none?
Just one clarification. You mean you're eliminating positions? You said you're giving back or trading?
Trading.
Okay.
Yep, just trading.
Wash.
Yeah, I think it ended up, yeah, I think that's the correct term. It's a wash, I believe. And then, did I say what the vacancy rate was in that unit? I think we're at 35% vacancy rate.
Yeah.
In the public health unit, yeah.
And trading out those positions will help with the vacancy rate, you think?
Potentially. The community health workers should be a little easier to recruit, I hope, so. And then we do have some people in mind for some of the positions that we are creating. And I think we have one, I think actually technically right now, we have three candidates in the pipeline right now. So fingers crossed that that continues to go smooth. That includes Director Nursing position, Public Health Nurse Senior position, and then the SafeRx program. So fingers crossed all that goes smooth. That will lower that vacancy rate a little bit.
Did have a question on Page D231 under revenue line item 53-80. So the actuals in 2223, about $4 million. We adopted $8 million in the current budget, and we're going to stick to that request roughly for this with an admin adjusted month of 759. So did we get a big chunk of money as some of that opioid money or?
I'm sorry, which line item was that?
Looks like 53-80 is the third line down under revenue on Page D231.
On revenue, is that the COVID funds? Or is that the, is that the van?
It's, it's all of our grant funding.
Oh, okay, so the pass sided funds, okay. So some of the things that you guys have approved probably this year, does that include the SafeRx vending machines and, okay, so $30,000 and $15,000 for the SafeRx program, and then $400 something thousand for the community health worker expansion project?
Right, thank you.
Which I think that was back in February when I first started.
Big bunch of grants.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. This is Health Services Administration Budget, 4012, Page D234. This is basically, as it says, the administration over public health, environmental health. So all the fun positions, they get to oversee the management of it. So we formalized the strategic plan, and then recently we've implemented the program sheets, helps streamline our time recording process, which as you guys know, we were about to spend a lot of money on persimony, so, and it was also a headache. It was not as streamlined as we had hoped, so we went more towards an Excel spreadsheet. The only other major change really in this one is that we've added in some money around $40,000 for an audit contract. I think that was something I talked about three weeks ago that I'd like to have, to help keep us in compliance. Any questions with that one? And then the last one is Tobacco Education, Budget Unit 4016, Page Number D245. No major changes to this. This is just basically one grant that comes in that helps provide education for the community.
Okay, and then finally, we have Veteran Services, which is Budget Unit 5321. That's on Page D279. Veteran Services provides counseling, support, and benefits, benefit support and assistance applying for, excuse me, veterans benefits. Apologies, I'm a little nervous. And they, they have a couple of major outreach events every year. Their budget actually has, it looks like it's decreasing a little bit for this year. But it's, it's a very small amount, the change.
They have one vacancy?
They do have one vacancy, yes.
Any comments or questions?
If I can just back up to 4016. Does that budget include, I know Tuesday we just approved a grant application, so if we get that grant, is that plugged in there? Oh, okay.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
And I do want to say we've also received some good news. It does not seem like our future public health funds are going to get cut. So both the legislature, the Senate and the House have approved to retain those funds. We're just waiting on a governor's signature. Fingers crossed.
We shall see what happens in the long run. I do have a quick question, and that's the increases that we've seen in your position allocations for public health and health administration just over the years. And I've got a feeling, because like, for example, in 2021, we were at 31.3, now we're at 41 for health, for public health. And then same thing, 2021, it was eight for health administration, and now it's 12. I, I feel like some of that came from the increased needs during COVID-19. I know that we had a lot of grant funding in order to make that possible. Have those been turned into covered position allocations for ongoing funds, or is still, is it still highly reliant on grant funding every single year?
So we have shifted those positions to other projects that are covered under other grants. Three of the HPSSs that we're removing and swapping with other positions were initially allocated to COVID, at least two of them were. And so there's been some, some shuffle there too. The grant funding, all of our positions, or almost all of our positions are reliant on grant funding every year, so.
There were like three or four very large COVID grant funds that have come in since about that timeline. And so, yeah. And then we also had Future Public Health Start last year? Okay, and then how many positions were funded with that? Four or five?
Positions that were filled, I believe it was three.
Okay.
There may have been four, but in the grant initially.
Yep, and we have a couple additional, like the epidemiologist, like the epidemiologist's position this year, sorry.
And, and I'm not too concerned overall. I just wanted to check in because I know there was a huge influx of money during that time period, and I, if the grants keep being available and you can keep that staffing, that's awesome. I just felt like it was such a huge growth and then a kind of a pullback, and we're having that tug of war as we speak with the budget, and I'm glad it seems to be going in the right direction, so we'll see what the final one looks like. But that was my only question that I had.
Several of the grants have been extended into 25 and some even into 26. So yeah, we are probably going to get a little pinched when that money runs out. The demobilization process probably wouldn't have gone the way I would have liked it if I was here, but at the same time, I think they did take advantage of those funds to retain some staff members that were, that were good and that could fill some roles.
Okay. And I, I do want to share my concern as well about your vacancies and hope that the changes you're making will help fill in some of those vacancies.
I think that's only fair, that you grilled me a little bit on that one as well.
And I, I think it's, it's what you inherited when you got here. I think COVID had a huge hit on that department as a whole. I think there's a lot of explanations to explain why it is what it is, but I know that you can't do the job that we're expecting you to do if you don't have the team that you need to have to make it happen.
Yep, and fingers crossed, I think recruiting is going pretty well so far, so.
Good to hear.
We'll continue to chip away at it.
All right. If there's no further comments or questions, open it up for public comment. I see no one in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action. And we have ACAo.
So this is one of the ones that I talked to you earlier, Chair Sapati, about a budget book issue. The department is not aware of it, and it's not going to affect you guys directly. So if you look on Page D154, the 80-80 account is correct. Well, for whatever reason, that's not what's in the system currently, so something.
Is that jail medical?
Tweaked, we'll call it, glitched, tweaked, same. So what's in the system is negative 762,600, which is, that's revenue coming in, but that's, that is incorrect. So we would need to fix that by increasing 80-80 by $508,400 when this is a general fund budget unit. So it will, the overall general fund appropriations will go up by 508,400 as well. So the system is wrong, but the budget book itself on that D154 is correct. If you go to the beginning pages where it says the overall Fund I amount, that's off by 508,400 because of this system issue.
Okay.
Did any of that make sense?
And then Stephen, do we need to talk, I don't think Director Jones really discussed it very much. I think she hinted at it, but do we need to talk a little bit about the grant that we're working with, her department?
You mean Path III?
Yeah, the Path III with the jail medical.
That would go into this budget unit for final.
Huh?
It would go in during final budget September hearings.
Okay, all right.
And just to respond, not 100% clear, other than you're making some changes to 80-80 on the appropriation side, which doesn't change the overall.
It does change.
But there's another report where that was correct, and on here it's not.
The report that is correct is the department-specific one?
Yeah.
Which the system doesn't actually read that. So the overall general fund with this change would go up by 508,400 in appropriations.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then one last note that I missed. I don't believe we have reserves, but I think we have rollover from realignment funding, so I forgot to mention that. Is that all of them? Which ones do we use realignment for? All of them?
Public health.
Okay, public health.
Yeah, I don't see reserves, no.
All right. I didn't hear anything that would require a motion as amended, so if there's nothing further, I move to approve Budget Units 2304, 4010, 4011, 4012, 4016, and 5321.
Second.
As amended by?
It does need to be amended for 2304, Budget Unit 2304.
Not, not in the budget narratives. When we get to the.
The system has it differently than the actual budget book does. So technically, the system is what they're approving.
I do need an amended for 2304?
The book, then it's fine. We'll fix it internally.
Okay, so the original motion stands.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yep.
And I just want to remind that if you look at the budget hearing schedule that we have, it does provide the page numbers for you to be able to quickly move on to where that information is. And next, we have Registrar Voters, Budget Unit 1451, found on Page D39.
Good morning. Maria Valades, Registrar Voters. I'm here to present Budget Unit 1451. The Registrar Voters Office is responsible for conducting all federal, state, county, municipal, and local district elections in Lake County while following strict federal and state election laws and regulations. This department is responsible for all components of election management, administration, including voter registration, poll worker recruitment and training, locating and reserving polling place locations which meets accessibility requirements, ballot creation, voting system security, ballot processing and vote telling, community outreach and voter education, candidate services such as candidate filing, campaign finance filing, as well as filing of initiatives and signature verification. There is one scheduled election for this fiscal year, the November 2024 statewide presidential election, which will include presidential candidates, US Senate Congressional Legislative runoff of County District One Supervisor, candidates for City of Clear Lake and City of Lakeport, council members, school, college, special district directors, as well as numerous state propositions, and a couple of local ballot measures. Our budget unit has five full-time permanent employees, and during peak election periods, we do employ several extra help employees to help work in the office to assist with the many tasks required in order to certify an election. Our budget is funded primarily by general fund discretionary revenues with limited reimbursement from state and local jurisdictions. It's all dependent, if they go to, like, local jurisdictions go to election, then we seek reimbursement, otherwise it's county-funded. Reason for significant changes, increase in salaries, as well as the increase to the health insurance employee contribution. health insurance employee contribution. And a reason and position allocation changes, I increased one of our elections specialists to a senior position to give increased responsibility, including candidate filing and campaign finance disclosure, which allows for us to be cross-trained and assist the candidates during that period specifically. We have no extraordinary requests at this time, so that concludes my budget presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? I see nothing that I have any questions about regarding your budget. I do want to congratulate you on 100% staffing.
Thank you.
That's critical and awesome.
I'd like to thank my staff, though, also for assisting with budget preparation. They all get pushed out of their current timeframes or for their budget, or, I'm sorry, during their work periods to assist with preparing the budget, so I'd like to thank all of them.
Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and open this up for public comment. I see nothing on Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber, bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve budget unit 1451 for the registrar voters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take a, let's take a five-minute, let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 11:15. Okay, welcome back. We are going to reconvene where we left off. We will be looking at building and safety, code enforcement, nuisance abatement, planning, CSA 23 wildfire benefit. All starts on page D 160. Director Turner.
Good morning. Mireya Turner, Director of Community Development Department. The vision of the Community Development Department is the provision of exemplary public service through three priorities. The first priority is staff recruitment and retention. The second is staff professional development. And the third is achieving fiscal sustainability for code enforcement and planning divisions. This morning's budget, I hope, will reflect these priorities. Starting with the Building Division, budget unit 2602, the Building Division ensures development projects are done in compliance with health and safety regulations. They also respond to local emergencies, including wildfire and flood events, to assess structural integrity and safety. Some highlights of this department of accomplishments has been the ongoing training and certifications. They're listed in that budget narrative. Additionally, this division did great work during the February storm events. They were all over the county and working with Cal OES to assess damages done to the structures, mostly in Cobb. There is a reserve fund within this budget. It represents building services that are to be provided in the 24-25 fiscal year, but the applications we've already received, we just haven't been able to get to that point where they're completed yet. Those applications do include two apartment complexes, one hotel, and a number of single-family residences. For this fiscal year, or this next fiscal year, we are looking forward to transitioning the National Flood Plane Insurance Program from public works to community development. This will improve the efficiency of those various activities and we actually have staff that have taken it upon themselves to become certified flood plane managers already, but we are working with administrative office and HR to make sure that that is done correctly. We are waiting eagerly to hear the results from the latest CASP exam, which is an accessibility certification that one of our plans examiners has just taken. We do anticipate a positive result, which will then have two certified CASP inspectors on our staff, which is awesome, because when I used to work here years and years ago, like, there were like two CASP people in the county. So this is great. We will also go live with OpenGov for the Building Division. This is after our planned going live on the code enforcement. That has been our priority so far. And we look forward to providing increased support to the home hardening project as it continues to ramp up. Do you have any questions for me for 2602?
Please go on.
2603, 2604, and 8475 are all dealt with by the same staff, so I'll cover them next. This includes code enforcement, nuisance abatement, and the CSA 23 wildfire benefit. Code enforcement works with our residents and property owners to maintain healthy and attractive residential character in our neighborhoods. They also handle abatement of abandoned vehicles, illegal dumping, illegal cannabis cultivation, and hazardous vegetation. Some highlights from this department over this past year was the awarding of a CDBG grant for disaster mitigation. This funding came from, it was to address damage done during the 2018 wildfires. This grant is $1,123,262 over the next three years, which will fund two code enforcement officer positions, one for hazardous vegetation management, the other for substandard housing. It will also fund one office assistant and the vehicle and the various technology that will be required for these staff members to do their jobs. We have also been awarded the Cal Recycle Grant, $250,000 over the next two years to focus on illegal dumping. This will partially fund one current staff member, but the abatement funding is to target our larger, more expensive abatements in cases of like hoarding in houses, things like that. There is an unfunded position currently for a code enforcement officer. We have been waiting until we had the funding available in order to place that. We're looking forward to a few things this next year. Code enforcement was our priority in getting started with OpenGov, which is our electronic permitting system. We do anticipate going live with that on July 1st. This will also increase the efficiency within our internal systems, as well as serve to inform the public on questions that they may have for code enforcement cases. We are also going live with Data Ticket. This is the firm, the agency that handles collections of citations and fines. We were conservative in listing the amount of revenue we anticipate for this next fiscal year because there is a time required to really get them up and running, as well as the time it requires to start, or to go through the collections process with each citation or violation that we will send them. So what we're really hoping is that we under-promised, but will overperform on that one. We are also continuing to work with the tax collector and the auditor's office to get the banking part that's going to be required to launch this program settled, and that is just pending approval of our department's policies and procedures for the fiscal. But we do anticipate going live by the end of July. Wait, there's more. If the board approves the COPTER program, the COPTER program stands for Community Oriented Policing and Targeted Restoration, and it is based on lessons learned from the Roadmap Task Force Pilot Project that the board approved a few years ago. This, the COPTER program, instead of a two-year pilot program, is going to be three years, and it's shifting the focus from Clear Lake Oaks over to now the Neeson-Lucerne communities. As presented to the board previously, code enforcement staff, of which it will fund two positions, they will focus on the Neeson-Lucerne area, while the sheriff's office will have additional flexibility to follow any criminal elements that they find in Neeson-Lucerne as they move up and down all over the North Shore. The CSA 23 wildfire benefit, this is a pilot project in the Riviera's. We will continue to do abatements this year, and our department does plan to bring a presentation to the board after this fire season to discuss lessons learned from this project and also next steps for hazardous vegetation management countywide. Additionally, we are continuing to work on a fiscal sustainability plan for code enforcement to be revenue and grant-funded within the next two fiscal years. It's ambitious, but it does support our goal of achieving fiscal sustainability. Any questions for those three budget codes? If not, I'll move on to planning.
Looks like a question.
I was just gonna comment, actually. I'd be going to Sacramento on the second to testify for AB 491, which would probably help your department. It deals with illicit grows and fines up to seizing the property.
That's very good news, thank you. In the future, we also would like to revisit our citation and finding programs specific to cannabis to allow for a notice of violation and a citation immediately, rather than going through the 10 days as it's currently structured. So we're looking forward to bringing that to the board in the future for your consideration. And if I can be of any assistance with any data you might need for your appearance, we'd be happy to talk to you further about that.
Excellent. I had a question, going back to 2603 on page D 166. There was a state aid adjustment. What was that about?
Could you be more specific about what line item you're?
It's second line, 54-90.
54-90.
They add half a million and change. Admin took it away. Admin's very mean, so.
In this case, they are not. This was for added clarity. The revenue was moved from 5490 to now 8080, which shows as a negative expense on appropriations. I'd be happy to defer to Stephen for the additional admin-related input.
Is it Prop 64 stuff?
What's that?
Is it Prop 64 funding?
It's the funding that's coming from the cannabis budget unit, so it's either Prop 64 or cannabis funds. Those are transferred into 8080 because it's not just a cash transfer. It goes into 8080 when there's actually a product being done for the dollars being sent. It's not a rev, you don't want to show revenue in cannabis and a revenue in this budget unit, so it's only showing a revenue once. It lowers the overall appropriations, same purpose.
Do you have any further questions?
Yeah, thank you. And then I'm sorry to skip, but you kind of skipped ahead, too. So on page D 174, under budget unit 2702, four lines down under revenue, I see a big chunk of new revenue anticipated for penalties, forebitters, about 300K. Is that ramped up enforcement that you're anticipating?
Do you want me to move on to 2702? I haven't.
I thought you already did.
No, I'm about to hype, hype 2702.
I believe you put together all the code enforcement and planning has been left out at this moment in time.
All right, my bad. Thank you.
One moment. Okay. 2702, planning. The Planning Division processes development projects to ensure compliance with the community's vision, that's including the general plan, the local area plans, the zoning ordinance, as well as analysis for environmental impacts through SEQA. Some highlights for Planning Division, we launched the Lake County 2050 project, which is an update of our general plan, all eight local area plans, the climate adaptation plan, and we are also supporting the progress of the Housing Action and Implementation Plan Program. Cannabis Ordinance Task Force sent recommendations to the board regarding cannabis-related business types, possible zoning districts, and recommended permit levels. We do have an unfunded position there in planning that is possible that it will come to you later this year as an extraordinary request. We have a number of very complex projects going through planning and anticipated to come to planning within this next fiscal year. We're looking forward to an APGP grant, which we have submitted the application, which would fund the housing element as much as it touches our department, but this is a collaborative application. And so we are working with the Deputy C A O of Housing through the administrative office to help move along some housing goals, as well as the Lake County Community Foundation, which is focused on provision of affordable housing through the use of 3D printing. So I'm looking forward to bringing you good news about that one, or hopeful. Additionally, we will seek funding for the Aggregate Resource Management Plan, which is also part of our general plan but was not included in the Lake County 2050 at this point. We also look forward to completing the cannabis policy update with a draft ordinance to the board by the end of this calendar year, and to continue with the Lake County 2050 project, including draft local area plans available by the end of this calendar year. I have just a couple thank yous. I would like to, community development does not operate in a silo. In order to provide good public service, we rely on the collaborative and the cooperative natures of a number of our colleagues in different departments. And so I would just like to express appreciation to those who we reach out to pretty much every day and just their supportive attitude. Additionally, I appreciate the board's support of our department's vision. Most recently, an example of that was the approval of bringing on a new staff services analyst. He will focus on grants and ongoing contracts, and it is part of developing our grants program for fiscal sustainability. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any other questions or comments? For us agree?
If this is, we're on 2702 now, so now my question is under revenue. Fourth line down, 3190. You're anticipating a whole bunch of new penalties that we haven't collected in years past.
So that was actually entered incorrectly. It should be on 5490. So that is one of our command changes.
Oh, just push it down a line? All right, thank you.
Correct.
So a couple of things. Appreciate you giving us some details on where you are with the process to kind of recoup some of the funds from the work that you're doing out there, whether it's planning and ensuring that we are getting the full payment of the amount of hours that your staff are actually working on the projects. I know that there is, in planning, a, I don't have the information in front of me. I know I sat down with the C A O's office and staff and asked some questions, that there was a spike at one point of the amount of general funds compared to the revenues created by the services being offered. I have concerns of the continued use and want to make sure that we are going to get to that point where we can make people pay for the services they're requesting, especially I have a bit of discomfort in the sense, if it's for development or personal gain or benefit from somebody coming to your office and asking for these permits, at what point is it a gift to public funds if we're not actually making them pay for the full amount of work that a staff is providing to them? I don't want to look in the past, I want to look in the future and ensure that we get to that point. Similarly, for code enforcement, one of I think our missed opportunities with Roadmap Task Force and one that I will absolutely, I full support of COPTER and expanding it, but it's again, that revenue piece of, and addition of fines, where right now what we're doing is we're paying to do the work that someone else should be doing, and they're supposed to pay us back for that work, but there's no additional teeth. There's no fines to say, hey, you could have paid $2,000 and taken care of this, or now you got to pay us $2,000 plus whatever the fines are. We need to change people's behaviors because we should not be continuously taking responsibility of other community members. We need to get them to take care of those responsibilities. And again, I know you're trying to get there, but I'm concerned that what I see are very small anticipations. small anticipated revenues from these fines when there should be a much more elevated number, in my opinion. From what I understand, you're close by August. You said the end of July. You should be ready with that. I want to see every cannabis violation. I want to see everybody who's gone past their 30 days or whatever notice. Maybe there's extensions, but I feel like it's a missed opportunity to get changed behavior to help your team, because your team is working hard to clean up our communities. But I think we're working too hard when we're not trying to get other people to fall in line with everything that we're asking them to do and meet us at the halfway point. So I know I've had a conversation with you via email. I would like to get an update on our final budget as to where we are, just to get a better understanding that, yes, the process is going, we are doing these things, we have all the contracts in place since last November. I want to see those things happening, and the reason for bringing it up is obviously twofold. I want to see a behavioral change in our community of not violating these codes and making our communities look like what they look like. But I'm concerned about our general fund when it comes to the state, and general fund's going to be-- is going to start being asked from many different departments potentially on, hey, we want to keep our services, how are you going to help us with general fund? Not to say that's what we're going to do, but I think we're going to get a lot of asks. And I would like to focus on reducing that and increasing those fines, fees, and everything else, because we shouldn't just be doing the work of other people, they should be doing it themselves. And I think we're just missing that opportunity to really make those changes and really have that positive effect on the general fund. So I know that I kind of came in with an idea of what I would want to offer. I'm not going to offer anything other than please bring that back to us in the final budget to let us know where you stand with all those things being implemented, because I think it's really important as we go through this three-year process with the state where they're looking at such a huge deficit, it's really going to be unknown as to how that's going to impact the general fund as other departments get impacted as well.
I completely appreciate the many demands on the board for the discretionary funds you have available. That is exactly why it's been one of our priorities, to develop fiscal sustainability for code enforcement and planning. Open GOV will be a much more effective way for us to track our time for cost recovery, but also so that we can do a more-- an exhaustive review of planning fees as they stand now to see if there are any changes that would be appropriate. We do look forward, as the AVA meetings continue, we actually are hoping for a possibility of a fine for people who come and dump their cars here. That would be great, because I totally get what you're saying as far as we're cleaning up after these people, and there's not really a lot of recourse because it's AVA-funded. So we fully embrace the idea of holding people accountable for the cost that they are incurring on the taxpayers.
And I just want to restate, I think your team, your code enforcement division, is working really hard. I want to push them to help them not have to work so hard where they're the ones that are really cleaning up the community. We got to get people to meet us.
Thank you. When are we doing life with open job? July 1st for code enforcement. I don't have a specific date for the other two divisions, but after code enforcement, then we're bringing building up second, and then planning will be last. Unless I am mistaken, end of calendar year for probably building. I have--
Someone's checking in on you.
I have multiple staff watching and texting me to keep me on the straight and narrow.
My last comment is, and I'm going to check in with ACAOC harder. The position allocation for planning, it was identified, at least on our paperwork, and I think we'll do a quick adjustment to that as being 12, but when you actually count the numbers, for some reason, one line was not counted, and I believe it should be 17 with an asterisk that once one of your positions resigns or leaves, that you will not be filling in that position, so it'll bring it back down to 16. But for some reason, the five asterisks got completely missed in the count, and instead of saying 17, it says 12 at the moment. I just want to make sure we don't put you in a situation where HR says you only have 12 spots.
I'm happy to continue working with HR as we do move on. However, the idea of losing one planner is ill-advised, given the workload that our team has. But I'll be happy to discuss that with admin and HR as we move forward.
Are you saying the asterisk is no longer?
That's not my asterisk. I'd have to take a look. One moment. Or I would defer to admin on that one.
Ms. Moreno?
There is one position that's being unfunded. The other one upon next vacancy will be unfunded, so there will be two planning positions unfunded for a total of 17.
Okay. And if that needs to be reviewed, if things changed, I would say definitely continue to meet with CAO's office and HR just to make sure. I have no changes other than those comments that I made.
Supervisor Green?
And just very briefly to counter some of those comments, I, when we do come back and we talk about fines and asset forfeiture and stuff like that, I don't share the enthusiasm you have expressed. I've seen this movie before in Fresno County and other places, especially on cannabis prohibition and cannabis eradication. You know, we had a problem for decades in this county and across the state, and those problems popped up even when we were still arresting people and throwing them in prison for 10 and 20 years at a time. The idea that we're going to find people in compliance and make a meaningful stab at changing their behaviors creates additional work on staff, creates additional due process concerns for those people being cited and the non-resident property owners for those properties that aren't in compliance. To me, by far, the better bang for the buck is continued public outreach. And so if we're going to bring back something explaining how we're going to drop a whole bunch more fines on people, I'd love to see an additional item saying, what kind of public outreach are we doing? Because whether it's a personal cultivator who doesn't even know we have a personal cultivation ordinance, whether it's the old-school collective that is now operating under a medical portion of our personal use ordinance, there's lots of education that still needs to happen, and it's not self-evident, it's not easy to find on our website. And if we're going to modify behaviors, by far, education is the more effective way to do it than coming in after the fact and trying to apply a bunch of fines and fees and what have you, and that will ultimately end up in a lot of appeals and a lot of work on staff. So that's my comment.
And just to let you know, fines and other things are already within the code. It's a matter of having the capacity within your staff to be able to do that. I know internally, there has begun some fines, but the Data Take It process will alleviate some of those processes where it can be passed on to a third party that can then handle the collection and so on and so forth. So I appreciate the efforts that's been made. I think Data Take It will give us that bigger window, but we already have all of those things within our code to be able to do the fines. We have limited ourselves at this moment in time, do some due to capacity and being able to follow up, and if we're doing fines and not collecting them, they're pretty much useless.
Funds for public outreach and education are also included in the nuisance abatement grant that we have, and that will take-- that will happen. We are happy to look at possible options for grant funding regarding public outreach for cannabis. However, one thing I wanted to point out about our staff is that in code enforcement, it's very important that you come alongside the resident and the property owner first, and we do that very well, and that's how we get a high level of self-abatement and never have to move on to a notice of violation.
These are for people that ignore our notice of violations. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public. Anyone wish to speak?
There's another. Don't you have to do the zone of benefit?
Nope, she talked about it.
She captured that already.
Did you have any comments or questions on that?
No.
Okay. I think somebody asked me if I could be the panelist, and then I clicked and disappeared. Thank you very much for asking. Again, let's open it up for the public. I see nobody moving in the chamber and no hands up in the Zoom room. I'll bring it back to the board for those budget units.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget units 2602, 2603, 2604, 2702, and 8475.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clarification, there was-- was there an amendment on that or needed?
That's for the--
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you for checking. No.
Yeah. Lloyd's jumping off.
Looks like we are going to move forward. There was more than just a position allocation.
We'll need to reopen.
Please include, as amended, in the motion.
If we can amend the motion?
I will go ahead. I did ask questions, so hopefully we don't have to go all the way back. So yes, I'd like to add, as amended to my motion.
We have an amended motion on the floor?
And I'll second.
That's what I'm asking. Do we need to--
We already voted.
Do we need to reopen it, Lloyd? I guess is the question.
We need a motion to rescind first.
So the first step would be, Lloyd Gigny, Vando County Council, so the first step would be to clarify if the item has been closed?
I have not moved on yet.
Okay. So in that case, it would be a motion to rescind the motion that approved budget unit 2602, 2603, 2604, 2702, 8475. Rescind the approval of that motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve budget units 2602, 2603, 2604, 2702, 8475, as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Takes the team. Thank you. We're going to move on to our sheriff and public safety. We have a number of budget units that I'm not going to read off right now. It starts on page D60. And we have our undersheriff-- to walk us through it. It's just a few.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Thank you. First, I'd like to obviously thank the CAO's office and our fiscal staff for preparing this budget. We have approximately 21 budgets to go through here, so I'm going to go just kind of a top overview of them, and if there's any questions, then we'll move on to the next ones. So first one we're going to start with is 1781, Sheriff's Facility and Construction. As you guys are aware, this is the budget dealing with the National Guard Armory and the Arbor Funds for renovating that. We're moving forward with that, and I'm sure as your board is aware, we have moved on to the next phase of that with Lars and Dewberry Design. Are there any questions on that?
No questions.
Our next budget is the 2201, which is the Sheriff Coroner Budget. This one is under state law. The sheriff is responsible for delivery of law enforcement services to the uncorporated areas of Lake County. You guys have all heard that, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Just to kind of go back to a lot of that, you know, appreciate the board's support in that. We're currently reduced our, I believe, last budget hearing, we were at probably a 30 or 31% vacancy rate. We're down to 26 now. We have five vacant positions in the Patrol Division, and just kind of go jump ahead a little bit over in Corrections, we're down to three, and we're down to two vacant positions in Dispatch. And we currently have all of our deputy sheriffs patrol out of Corrections and Dispatch and back on the street. We've been able to transition into a team concept for our Patrol Division, which is beneficial to the Sheriff's Office and the community as far as supervision is concerned and the collaboration of investigations, rather than having that modified schedule that we were working, we are back into a team concept. So that's good. And then to kind of piggyback on what Meera was saying, the copter program that was outstanding, we saw how it worked in Clear Lake Oaks, and we were able to collaborate with code enforcement and then kind of modify that to our new copter program and pushing forward with that, where we have a little more flexibility, lessons learned, and move that into more of a North Shore area, and it gives the Sheriff's Office and the sergeant and deputy assigned to that position a little more flexibility to kind of maintain that work that we've done in Clear Lake Oaks, and then also expand that into the Nissen-Losseren areas and focus on those community-oriented problems in those areas. So we appreciate the board's support in that. Any questions in 2201?
Not at this moment.
And 2202, dispatch. Again, you know, Lake County Sheriff's Dispatch centers services Lake County Public Safety, access point, emergency 911 calls for fire, law, and medical services received there, and then center staff 24/7, days a week and 365 days a year. I have all the stats in here. I'd be happy to provide if you'd like them, but again, in the interest of time and everybody's, since we have so many budgets to go through, again, we were able to get our deputies out of there, and we are, again, just down one supervisor position and one dispatcher position in there now. So we're making good progress in those areas through, again, the support of the board and then some of the recruitment efforts that we're really pushing hard in the agency.
Excellent.
And then 2203, Sheriff's Marijuana Suppression. Per grant requirements, monies received from the DEA and the DSET program go to funding this. Our focus again on this is those illegal marijuana grows, that's our main focus on this, and then those that are on rural lands or federal lands, US Forest Service, BLM in those areas.
Please keep going.
And 2204, Sheriff Court Security. Sheriff provides executive protection for the judges and county court security. The functions performed within combination of permanent full-time employees and retired annuitants supervised by a full-time sergeant. With the-- we're staffed in there with all of the positions, and then again, you guys, I'm sure the funding comes from state courts for that position, for that budget. 2205, Sheriff's Marine Patrol. The Sheriff's Marine Patrol provide enforcement in California Harbor and Navigations Code Enforcement to county waterways. The division is staffed by one full-time sergeant and then, again, retired annuitants in that position. The division also enforces the county Quagga Mussel Invasion Species Ordinance. And I have stats, but I'm just kind of going, not really going into those because of the number of budgets we have.
Please keep going. You've got a good pace.
The Sheriff's Rural and Small Counties, monies received in this budget are funded entirely with AB 443 funds. The Sheriff's Office receives about $500,000 annually. Monies in this unit are designed to enhance law enforcement services in rural communities. They are designed to supplement existing and mandatory services. 2207, Sheriff Civil. Fees for this budget are collected pursuant to Government Code 26746, 26731, and 26746.1. The division is responsible for the service of civil papers. A civil division processed and served hundreds of subpoenas, notices, and summons, complaints, restraining orders, earnings withholdings, order claims, levies, evictions, and other 2208, Sheriff's Blood Alcohol. This budget pays for the blood, breath, and urine analysis for any testing conducted in the unincorporated areas of Lake County, regardless of which agency administers the test. These are by government code through fines and fees from courts. Sheriff STC, this is reimbursement from, or partial reimbursement from BSCC for training that we send DSTs, or DSCs to throughout the year to maintain their required training standards and then all of the initial Core and 832 training that are required to do. Sheriff's Automated Warrants. Monies in this budget are collected by the courts per a 853.7 California Penal Code and 40508.5 of the California Vehicle Code. Automated Warrant System is used to provide a county-wide automated warrant system. 2213, Sheriff's DNA. Monies in this budget are collected by both the courts and probation per Government Code 76104.6 as-- per Government Code seventy-six one oh-four point six as, uh, a result of Proposition sixty-nine. And then twenty-two fourteen, Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture. Monies in this budget are from seized property in accordance with the equitable sharing agreements between the County of Lake and the Department of Justice and Treasury. Monies are also received from the state and local forfeitures. Sheriff's Inmate Welfare, twenty-two fifteen. Services provided by these funds are under Penal Code four zero two-five. Are used primarily for the benefits, education, and welfare of the inmates confined within the jail facility. The budget unit also provides funding for a Deputy Sheriff Corrections assigned to coordinate inmate programs. Twenty-two sixteen, Sheriff's Pool Vehicle Replacement. Uh, this fund is, uh, mileage-based, uh, to replace, uh, Sheriff Pool Vehicles for trainings and then also for our detectives and unmarked vehicles. Twenty-two seventeen, Sheriff's Pursuit Vehicle Replacement. This is same as the pool vehicles, mileage-based, and it is used to replace our pursuit unmarked vehicle fleet, as those vehicles, uh, age out and time out, mileage out. Twenty-two eighteen, Sheriff Search and Rescue. This budget functions strictly on donations. Uh, the main beneficiary was donated from the Grace, uh, Mazakis Thompson Trust. Under the terms, uh, her trust, twenty-five percent of the monies were designated to made, to be made available to the Lake County Search and Rescue with the sheriff as the beneficiary. Um, as you guys are aware, Sheriff, uh, Search and Rescue not only provides search and rescue services in Lake County, but is also available for mutual aid, uh, support and request to other counties, um, and vice versa from those counties. And twenty-two twenty, Sheriff's Posts. This is same as STC. These are partial reimbursements that we get from the California Commission on Posts for trainings that we send our deputies to, mandated twenty-four-hour trainings, perishable skills training, and then whatever trainings that are required is what their job, uh, per their job assignments, detectives, narcotics, and so on. And twenty-two twenty-one, Sheriff's Local Law Enforcement Block Grant. Monies in this budget are received from federal, uh, Burn JAG Grant, which are no longer allocated to this budget. Twenty-three oh-one, Jail Facilities. Staffing of the facilities made up by a captain, correctional lieutenant, correctional sergeants, and correctional deputies. Um, food services, medical services, the jail, um, we have a average rate. We have a bed space of two hundred and ninety-seven inmates, which is an average daily population in twenty-three, twenty-four of about two hundred and twenty, uh, with a peak high of about two hundred and fifty-three. And correctional staff are responsible for security, programming, recreation, feeding, and medical attention to the inmates. And that concludes the twenty-one budgets.
Twenty-seven oh-four.
Twenty-seven oh-four? Did I miss that one? Oh, I don't have, I don't have that one. Uh, Office of Emergency Services, um, unfortunately, I don't have that one in front of me. Office of Emergency Services coordinates, uh, resources and provides, uh, emergency resources to the County of Lake.
Thank you for pivoting.
Apologize for that. I thought I had that one.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I, I, I'm just gonna quickly mention something, um, you're, and, and something I feel you missed, which I think is a huge highlight. In your jail facility currently, you have a ninety percent filled, uh, position. Uh, that's a ten percent vacancy, and I, I know that we made some changes here. You talked about how the, um, uh, dispatchers and, um, everyone's out of the jail that are deputies. Now they're out on the streets. I think that's exactly the kind of, uh, outcomes that we were looking for, and, uh, really happy that we are where we are. I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. I was hoping that we can get a little bit higher on our, um, vacancies that we have on the, uh, law enforcement side, uh, but it's hopefully gonna keep climbing. It's, uh, can't make it all the way to where we want to be right away, but, uh, the fact is, things are changing, and it's appreciated to see, and, uh, definitely having the, the visual of patrols out and about more than just one is, is great.
Yeah, and we are progressing in that, in, uh, the DSC ranks. We're currently have a recruitment that we're running through backgrounds, and then we have another, uh, female recruitment that we have, I believe, and I'm gonna say this, and I may be a little bit off. I think we have twenty-seven that applied for that. So that is outstanding. Um, and then on the deputy side, we just graduated Deputy Coon from the Siskiyou Academy, um, last week, and then we have two new deputy trainees that will be starting the academy on July first. So we are making progress in that area. Unfortunately, it takes a little bit longer to get the deputies and get them through training, get them up to speed than DSCs, but we're, we're definitely going in the right direction, and with the board's support, and then some of the pivots we've done with recruitment, we're, we're making progress.
It's greatly appreciated to see all that. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, if I could backtrack very quickly to marijuana suppression, um, I, I, and I see other specialty budgets in here that don't have wages and salaries, um, but because there aren't any wages and salaries, I'm guessing there's no, uh, permanent staff assigned, and it's more of a detail. Um, so can, can you describe, uh, what the current staffing is for marijuana suppression? Is it solely reliant on this grant funding? Um, are there things we can or should be looking to do within the budget to, uh, provide additional resources? Cause, uh, a hundred and ninety-five K of grant funding doesn't seem like it's, uh, gonna be adequate to fit the need, but I, I, I don't know. Yeah, you, you tell me, uh, what the current state is of criminal enforcement against illegal marijuana cultivation, which clearly has a negative impact on our legal cannabis industry, uh, in addition to the code enforcement concerns that CDD is gonna pick up. So, uh, can you give me the thirty-second elevator speech on the current level of staffing and the department's ability to aggressively pursue illegal marijuana grows?
Absolutely. Currently, we have a sergeant and a detective assigned to that position. That is their full-time job, so it's not an ancillary duty. That is where they're assigned and what they do. Uh, the sergeant obviously manages the DESEP grant. Um, and Mary Beth can correct me if I'm wrong, but the DESEP grant is used primarily for overtime and then also for helber, helicopter contracts for oversights and what we call stable out, stabo operations for very rural areas where we can't get vehicles for getting, uh, the deputies in there and then getting their marijuana out so it can be properly destroyed. Um, that's primarily what DESEP is. So the, the, um, day-to-day, uh, hourly funding for the Sheriff's Office, detective and sergeant that are in there comes from twenty-two oh-one. Um, overtime comes from DESEP grant, where we have an operation, we bring in deputies, um, on ancillary duties on their days off to work overtime. For DESEP is what covers that from the DESEP grant. We, um, quite frankly, with the number of grows, we focus on those that are, um, water, um, diversion, that are environmental hazards, that are just egregious grows. We, we're focused on those. Um, with staffing, if we can improve staffing to the point where we can add another detective over there, we can expand that, um, focus on other illegal grows, but right now, we, we kind of focus on the big ones cause we have a sergeant and a detective in there, and that's a lot of work for them, and they are ve- very busy. So we tend to target the very egregious environmental grows at this time.
Thank you.
That's what, uh, hopefully AB four ninety-one helps with as well. So we'll see how that goes, and that might be another, um, asset for you.
Awesome.
And thank you for the copter.
Yeah.
All the contributions in those meetings, the discussion. We had a really robust discussion on how we would all approach, approach that, community development administration staff, you and two other, I think it was a captain and a lieutenant, and so, yeah, it was a really good, robust discussion, and I think the strategy is, uh, is really hopeful.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? I do want to check in with the CAO's office. Is there any, uh, changes at all to the, um, expenses?
No changes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? See nothing in Zoom. Nothing in the chamber. I'm bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve budget items seventeen eighty-five, twenty-two oh-one, twenty-two oh-two, twenty-two oh-three, twenty-two oh-four, twenty-two oh-five, twenty-two oh-six, twenty-two oh-seven, twenty-two oh-eight, twenty-two ten, twenty-two twelve, twenty-two thirteen, twenty-two fourteen, twenty-two fifteen, twenty-two sixteen, twenty-two seventeen, twenty-two eighteen, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two twenty-one, twenty-three oh-one, and twenty-seven oh-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right.
The first of many.
Yeah, first of many.
Thank you very much. Uh, so just checking in with the board, uh, we have a number of Public Works budgets. Do you want to take our lunch now and come back at one-ten, or do you want to, uh, take up those, um, Public Works budgets currently?
I'm always hungry at this time of day.
So let's go ahead. We gotta take a lunch at one point or another. It's either now or after that. So we'll go ahead and take our lunch. We'll come back at one-ten PM, and we will reconvene with the Public Works Administration budgets as listed. See you then. All right, welcome back. We are going to continue where we left off with our Public Works Administration budget. Uh, we have, um, multiple lines here to go through, uh, and are you going into some of these CSAs as well, or?
We, we're prepared, prepared to.
Oh, yeah, you have the road benefit zones. Okay, uh, so that's all there, and so let's go ahead and start there. Uh, we are on page D seventy, and I'm gonna turn it over to Director DeLeon.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board. Uh, I'm here, uh, this afternoon with Deputy Director of Public Works Administration, Alicia Ayala, and in the audience is our new Public Works Director, Glenn March. And, uh, so we're, uh, prepared. Uh, we were advised that, uh, uh, brevity was, was going to be good. Um, so we are gonna give a brief overview of, of, uh, the, the department, and, um, we will, uh, give you a brief overview and then, uh, be happy to answer any questions. Uh, and specifically, we'll look at vacancies and reserves, which I understand is one of the board's, um, uh, points of emphasis this year. Uh, so with that, uh, we'll start with Public Works. Uh, the Public Works Department has, uh, eleven primary budget units and thirty-four secondary budget units. Uh, those are the CSAs and subdivisions that you just asked about, uh, Chair Sabatier. Um, the department's main responsibilities include, uh, the maintenance of approximately six hundred and thirteen centerline miles of county roads, a hundred and twenty-five miles of which are unpaid, a, a hundred and twenty-five bridges, and, um, I, I'm gonna say thousands. We have lots and lots of culverts, uh, that we maintain. DPW Admin, uh, it's, uh, the budget unit that provides the fiscal and clerical services, uh, to both Public Works and Water Resources, and we can talk about that later if you have questions about that. Engineering and Inspection Services, uh, they manage the development of capital improvement projects. Uh, the Public Works Department manages Lamson Field Airport, and we have a Fleet Maintenance Division, uh, that oversees a hundred and thirty-two vehicles in the county fleet and approximately a hundred and twenty-eight pieces of heavy equipment, uh, that they rent to the Road Department. Not a lot's changed with Public Works, uh, over the years. We, we work on projects, uh, as you know, uh, road maintenance is a, is a, is a challenge, and it's something that we, we tackle every day. Um, we, uh, are really focusing on capital improvement projects and specifically road improvements. Uh, it was a promise that I made this board about this time last year, and, um, we are working diligently with our consultant to get a project before you for approval and, um, get that out to bid, and we're gonna get as much built as we can this year. Uh, the Road Department is up on Cobb, uh, working on prep for that project, and, uh, so we've got, uh, a lot of projects. We've got a couple of bridge projects in construction right now, and, um, uh, so we have a lot of things going on with, uh, Public Works. Uh, vacancies, uh, we're in pretty decent shape right now, um, with the exception of our Engineering and Inspection Division. Uh, if you recall, uh, your board approved a, uh, contract with Coastland Engineering, uh, to provide staff augmentation services to the department. Uh, we are utilizing them on a number of projects, and, and they've been, uh, a, a real benefit, uh, to the department, and specifically the Engineering and Inspection Division. In DPW Admin, uh, we have a total of thirteen positions, ten of which are, uh, funded full-time positions. Uh, we have two vacancies. Assistant Director of Public Works is vacant and a Public Works Service Tech, although we just completed, uh, the, uh, interviews for that position, and we, uh, have made an offer, and we have an accepted offer, and that person is in background, and, uh, we're looking forward to having, uh, her start, uh, on Monday. So, um, so one, one vacancy in DPW Admin. Um, Engineering and Inspection has, uh, uh, twelve total positions, ten of which are funded. We have seven full-time positions, so, uh, three vacancies, uh, Principal Civil Engineer, the Associate Civil Engineer, and the Right-of-Way Agent. Uh, as you know, uh, engineering positions have historically been challenging for us to, uh, to recruit, and, uh, I don't see that changing in the near future. The Road Department has thirty-four full-time position, uh, positions, and, uh, we have five vacancies, uh, and this is a moving target here, uh, because things have changed since we prepared the budget. Uh, we just completed, uh, uh, interviews, uh, for, uh, maintenance workers, and we, I believe we have three that, uh, we're working with, uh, that are gonna come on board. So we're, uh, uh, we're constantly, uh, uh, working and trying to keep people. Uh, uh, one of the things that happens is, uh, people join us, uh, they, they, uh, we send them to class, they get their Class A driver's licenses, and, uh, then they move on to, uh, other higher-paying positions with the benefit of their Class A driver's license. So, uh, that'll be something that, uh, Glenn and, and the staff can tackle, uh, in the future, trying to, trying to minimize that turnover, but that is a, a constant that we deal with. Lamson Engine, uh, Lamson Airport, we have two extra help positions. One of those is, uh, is filled. Uh, so we have a vacancy with the Airport Coordinator, and, uh, Central Garage is, uh, has five full-time positions, uh, six total. One of them is unfunded, and they have zero vacancies. So, uh, we're in pretty decent shape with respect to, uh, vacancies, and, and again, uh, kind of a revolving door with our Road Department, but that's something that we, we tend to deal with. We can talk a little bit about reserves. If you have any questions, of course, at any time, please, uh, please ask, uh, but we'll move on to reserves. Um, and we'll start with the Road Department, uh, Budget Unit thirty-eleven. There are three separate reserves in that budget unit. Uh, the first is inventory, uh, and that account represents, uh, the value of materials on hand, uh, such as culverts, de-icing sand, uh, patching materials, uh, that, that inventory, uh, is, uh, placed in a reserve. Or we have that, some of that placed in a reserve, and it has a value of two hundred and forty-one thousand. Uh, we have a restricted reserve in, uh, the Road Department, and that account was created to reserve funds for the overall operation of the Road, uh, Division in the event of some catastrophic funding problem. Uh, we rely solely, uh, practically solely on the state and gas tax, uh, revenues, and, um, you just never know. So what we've done is we've set aside funding, uh, to sustain the operation of the Road Department for a year, and, uh, that, uh, restricted, uh, re, uh, reserve has, uh, seven point two million in that reserve. Uh, and then our restricted SB one reserve was an account that we created following, uh, the approval of Senate Bill One, or SB- of Senate Bill 1, or SB1, that created additional gas tax revenues. We wanted to set that money aside for large-scale pavement rehab projects, and it contains a total of a little over 7 million. There was a reduction in reserves this year of almost 1.3 million, which is proposed to fund various pavement rehab projects. So we dipped into that reserve a little bit for pavement rehabilitation project. You mentioned the subdivisions and some of our side budgets. Budget Unit 3062 through 3081 are subdivision road improvement budgets. These are individual budgets. They were created to track subdivisions and other commercial developments that had road improvements as a condition of approval. We keep the funding for those in individual accounts, which is the reason for the various budget units. Historically, we've kept those monies in our reserves, I'm sorry, in the fund balance, but we were asked to move those into reserves, which we did this year. And so all of those individual fund balances have been moved into reserve accounts. And then those reserve accounts will be retained until such time that a project is proposed for that specific development. Again, those are specific to individual projects, and those funds will remain until those projects need to occur. Budget Unit 8463, CSA number three, Twin Lakes. This budget was created to provide for routine maintenance of a service area that was developed by vote of the property owners within the subdivision. It provides basic road maintenance, annual road maintenance for the roads in the Twin Lakes subdivision. We also have occasional chip seal projects, and that has three designated reserve funds. A general reserve, which is created and it's got unused revenue for future projects. That general reserve has a total of $537,000, which reflects a proposed increase of $104,000. Then we have a restricted emergency account that was created to reserve funds to pay for any damages resulting from an emergency event. That reserve has $187,000. And a pavement rehab account was to create, set aside funding for special pavement rehabilitation projects, and that fund was utilized two years ago for a large chip seal project, and it has zero reserves. So with that, that is our discussion of Public Works and the various vacancies and reserves in the various budget units. And with that, Alicia and I will be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that summary. Are there any questions, comments? Supervisor Pisca?
No.
Just getting ready in case. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at page D200, the last page of 3011. And just some big swings in there that I wonder if you could walk me through. For example, third line, 5355, from 2022, '23, went from half a million. We adopted apparently 17 million with last year's budget, and now it's down to 4.5. And then a couple lines down on 63-01. I see last year we adopted about 3.3 million, and in the request, it's 17 million. And that may be just jumping from point A to point B along the serial planning of these projects, but it looked like some big swings to me. So can you explain?
Well, you hit the nail on the head. It's just the progression of the project going from preliminary engineering into construction. So we got moved from one object code to the other. And so that big swing that you're seeing for road improvements, other charges, 5355, to construction in progress is simply the projects that we were in preliminary design for got moved to construction. A lot of that is, a lot of that is bridge replacement projects money. It's not, it's funds that are earmarked, if you will. They're specific to projects. They're not a discretionary fund that we can just use any way we want. They're specific to projects. So the projects are meeting milestones and moving on to the next phase.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. And I'll add, if you look at 6301 and 6302 and 6309, if you look at the capital project list, which I'm trying to find, for some reason I just had it. Isn't this gracious? Yeah, right here. Under the capital asset list, it does split them up in construction in progress and then details all of the costs. And then construction in progress for roads, for bridges, and sidewalks are all separated. And I haven't done the math, but I'm assuming that they all add up to those same exact numbers on the bottom of those appropriations. Are there any other questions or comments? I do have some questions. And I apologize, I didn't front-load any of these questions, but they're not dangerous. I know that we've been seeing your SB1 list year to year. I don't know that I've seen one this year, but I know they listed like Rainbow Road or a bunch of roads in the North Lakeport area. Have those roads been done already? Because I don't see them on the list here. So I just was wondering if that was going to happen or not. I do see SB1 dollars has been pushed into the Cobb area roads. Just kind of curious.
So you'll be seeing the SB1 list come to your Board. I think it's July the 9th. So that list has been completed, and so you'll see it at your next official Board meeting. A lot of those projects, you mentioned Rainbow Road. That road is still on the list of projects that we would like to do. We have completed, one of the roads that was on the list for SB1 was Hendricks Road that we completed last summer. So that road got moved to a completed project list, but you'll see that on the 9th.
Okay, thank you so much. And I know that the anticipation is to go out for bids. Obviously, the main portion of the 10-year plan will be the Cobb area roads. We see that on the capital asset list, but there's a whole bunch of other roads listed on there. Some of them have been there for multiple years. Just kind of curious, are you anticipating to be able to hit all those projects this year based on the fact that it's on our capital asset list for 2425? Or are they just there to ensure that money is allocated and maybe still accumulating or maybe going through the SEQA process in order to finalize those projects?
So the answer is yes, and it's a little bit of both. We create placeholders partly as a requirement of SB1, but also to create projects to just keep them on the burner so we know what we're doing. I can tell you that in the few short weeks, and I am not going to throw him under the bus and have him come up here, but I can tell you that in the last several weeks when, as Glenn has come in and started with the Department, the first thing he tackled has been the capital improvement projects list, partly to comply with Admin's request for overall county capital improvement plan, but also to help familiarize himself with all of the projects that Engineering and Inspection is working on. And from what I am seeing, he has really put together a solid list. He's developing a solid understanding of the funding sources and the timeframes. And so I'm confident in saying that you're going to see more and more projects as you move forward.
Okay, I think we're all excited about hearing that, that's for sure. We want to see as many roads being done as possible every single year, right? My next question to you, and it's just more of a kind of, I guess, a reality check on our anticipated expenses when it comes to the roads. Let me get back to where that is on 3011, Budget Unit 3011. We are anticipating this year to spending $38 million. Obviously, that deals with the 34 potential staff that make up the Public Roads Department, Public Works Roads Department, but also it's the projects that are there. I guess the question is similar to the question for the capital assets. Is that what we hope to spend? Or is it just to cover all of those other projects that may be still in the works for multiple years down the road? Because I see us spending historically 8 million, 7 million, 9 million, and 38 just seems way outside of the norm. I know we didn't have our 10-year plan in the past before. There's been a lot of work to engineer some of the work that's going to be done later this year. Just kind of wanted to get a better concept of what we should realistically expect.
Before I answer the question, you're throwing me just a little bit with historic numbers. I look at the adopted budget for the Road Department in 2223, and it was 37 million. So we've, our Road Department budget's been up in the 30 million range for several years. And I think what you're seeing is the difference between discretionary funding and the overall Road Department funding. I know there's probably people sitting at home watching this saying, wait a second, that Road Department budget's $38 million? That's the total amount using all of the available funding sources that we have and the projects that we have on the books. That's what we are budgeting to spend. Our discretionary funds are significantly less than that, and the discretionary funds are your SB1 dollars. And a lot of, well, not a lot, but a good portion of the gas tax funding that we receive goes to staff salaries and materials and all those kinds of things. So though the budget is quite large at 38 million, the majority of that is already designated for specific projects, either preliminary design or construction. And so we have to have that funding in place so that, you know, as we work on bridge projects, we have to pay for that, and then we seek reimbursement from the state on that. So that's how that cash flow works. I hope I answered the question.
I think it's good enough. What I, I think you made the same statement that I have in my mind is, when the public sees 38 million, how do we better explain what that represents? Because when they see the quality of the roads and they see 38 million, it doesn't quite come together, especially when it's on an annual basis. That's what we are adopting.
Well, I can tell you the majority of that is through the Highway Bridge Program. Bridges cost us, between engineering, environmental, and construction, we're probably spending 7 to 8 million dollars a bridge. And we have multiple bridges. We probably have seven or eight bridges and a couple of them in construction, and we have many others that are in various stages of design. And you have heard me say that as a Public Works Director, I love the HBP program because it allows us to replace structures that we ordinarily would not have the funding to replace. But as a taxpayer, 7 to 8 million dollars per bridge is a lot of money. And because it's federal dollars that are run through the state, the bridges are all federalized, so we have increased environmental review, we have SEQA and NEPA, and the bridges have to be designed to ASHTO standards, which is a federal standard. And so the bridges are very expensive to build and design and the additional environmental, and that's all contributes to those higher costs.
Now, and I appreciate the level of access that you've had to that program. I know it was highlighted by Congressman Thompson, in fact. And just a real quick statement on your engineer and your capacity at this moment to do the work needed in light of your vacancies. I'm glad that we have the extra contract to be able to supplement that and make sure that we're still moving forward with all of these projects. So those are all my questions and comments. Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a follow-up question and thank you. I feel like I'm getting real-time education on deep dives into the budget, and I'm so sad I won't be able to do it, say, about six months from now. But having looked at the capital asset list, right up top on page one, I see a water line for South Main Street and Soda Bay Road, which makes me deliriously happy because that's been a core concern of mine for the time I have been on this Board, but I wasn't aware of that.
And that is not on this budget? That will be a discussion with probably Special Districts or with a lot of the other projects on there from Director Ewing? Not that one specifically?
That's not a Public Works?
No.
No, but if you go down to the roads, you will see the widening of Soda Bay Road, which is a Public Works.
Okay, I'll save my question for Special Districts.
And the underground utilities and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Yeah, Scott, I just wanted to ask about Budget Unit 3011 or 6309. Is that part of the grant that, when you were attending the SERF committee meeting, is that the grant that you were talking about? No, there was a grant, because they were talking about some crosswalks for schools, and all three of the MACs in my district have been talking about that. And I also offered to provide some discretionary funds to help with that. Just wanted to see if that was in that budget unit, or is that a different?
Well, let's see if we have that broken down here.
I know we did do a swap with the Connockdy Road sidewalks.
It's a different, it's a different project.
The crosswalks are, it's a different grant.
There's one that Kelsey wrote too.
Yeah, it was a different one he was talking about with schools or something like that.
So the two projects that are included in 6309 are the Connockdy Road sidewalk project that we received some federal funding through Congressman Thompson and the completion of the Middletown multi-use path.
Oh, okay, so that's not the one? Okay.
No. The, those sidewalk projects that you, that you're speaking about are...
I know at the APC, there was a report from Caltrans. I know they're planning to do a lot of work. I didn't hear anything about our local county, so I'm not sure.
I know those are, I think, on the highway. These ones were more along the lines of the crosswalks at the school, just basically at the school, because they were doing some...
With the lights?
Something like that. It was a grant that they were either applying for or received or something like that. And so, yeah.
Thanks. Those are going to be in 5355, road and bridge, other charges, road improvements. So there, those projects are included in 5355.
Okay, okay. And then just to make sure, I did agree to commit some of the discretionary funds to help with that, to ensure that all three schools were addressed. And we, yeah, so just wanted to make sure to state that. And then just lastly, with the bridges, I know that it's been something since I've got on, and I think probably before it's been an issue, is the Spring Valley Bridge. You know, they only have one way in, one way out, and I don't know if that's something that's been addressed or that's in one of these budget items for the future, or if we need to have another.
That's a, that's a capital improvement project that, you know, I think, I think there's some, I think there's an opportunity to pursue perhaps hazard elimination or hazard mitigation funds. And if it's not already on the list, we'll make sure that it is.
Okay. Thank you.
The crosswalks, is that this happening this summer?
I couldn't answer that. I, we're trying. It's a project that we're probably going to end up giving to Coastland to get done. The limited window, trying to get these things done, and we have a lot of projects already under construction. So we're working on it.
Okay.
I think if I remember, you had mentioned it needs to be upgraded to NEPA, since now it's using federal dollars.
That's the sidewalk.
The Kelseyville sidewalk will, yes.
It's a different project.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Let's open it up for the public. Do we have something from our ACao? Deputy.
DCA has something.
DCAO.
So on Budget Unit 3122 for the airport, we need to add in some appropriations and revenue. So we need to add to 8122 $45,600, which will be coming from 1781. In appropriations, increase 1,400 to 500, or increase it by $500. 18 needs to increase by $26,000. 26 needs to increase by $13,000. 30 is going to increase by $1,800. 38 needs to increase by $4,300. It was removed in error, the $4,100 was removed in error, and so we need to add in $200 for the pilot's lounge fax machine and printer.
And what does that bring, our total appropriations?
Give me just a second.
While she's doing that, these were extraordinary requests that we generally don't approve. And see, the department's unaware of this at the time, right now. These are extraordinary requests that generally don't go through until September. But Pilot's Lounge has already been prior approved by the board, and they're going to start having expenses now. So, are you kidding? So the difference is the Pilot's Lounge is 16, 500, and then just about 25,000 for balancing their budget, which is how it's verbalized. There's still about 30,000 that isn't in there that we'll talk about for September. That's towards the department.
So the total appropriations are now at $130,065.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see none in the Zoom room, no one moving in the chamber. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve budget items 1903, 1908, 3111, 3062 through 3081, 3122 with the appropriation of $130,065? Let's see, 3123, 8463, 8464 through 8472, 8483 through 8492, 9905, 9907, 9908, and 9909, lastly, 9911.
Do we need to change revenues at all, or no?
As amended?
As amended.
Mr. Chair, I got something else, too. I was just looking at, there was one public comment? And is this where we're supposed to take that public comment? It's about Julia Carrera?
Next, the Water Resources?
Yeah.
Water, okay, all right. Just want to make sure we didn't miss it.
Thank you for the reminder, though. Okay, we have a motion. Did we get a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry about that. Jumped ahead.
All right, we're going to continue on, and we're going to start with our Water Resources budgets, starting on page D47. Director DeLeon, keep going.
Thank you. So same approach here with Water Resources. The department has nine budget units. The department has a number of responsibilities, and I'll just hit some of the highlights. The management of the Quagga Zebra Muscle Prevention Program, oversight of lake bed encroachments, including leases for existing structures and permitting of new structures, perform the activities of the Lake County Watershed Protection District, which includes, but is not limited to, the Middle Creek Restoration Project, Highland Springs Recreation Area, stormwater management, groundwater management, water quality monitoring and improvement, and flood emergency response. We manage four separate flood control districts. And one of the biggest changes to this department for fiscal year 2425 is the transfer of the National Flood Insurance Program to community development. We have been working together on this transition for the past couple of months. And in my opinion, CDD staff is well-prepared to take on this program. And I will give a shout to CDD Director Mariaa Turner for the vision, to see that this program would be better served in her department. And I, I'm confident that her staff has the ability to run this program and actually improve it. We were on a meeting day before yesterday with a member of FEMA who is very excited about working with CDD staff to tackle some of the properties that just require some minor improvements and might even see some changes in our community rating system, rating, which would be an additional benefit to ratepayers or folks who have flood insurance policies in the county. So pretty excited about that and that opportunity, and I'm hopeful that they're going to be able to take advantage of that. The department has 13 full-time positions with 12 of those funded. The Water Resources Engineer was unfunded this year. And there are three vacancies in the department, a Deputy Director and two Water Resources Field Maintenance Technicians. They will likely begin recruitment for a Field Maintenance Technician. We just recently promoted one to, to a program coordinator or technician, I'm sorry. We just promoted one. So we'll be doing that recruitment here shortly. And your board approved on Tuesday a contract with Coastland for engineering services for Water Resources. Again, due to the challenges of trying to find engineers to come to Lake County, we brought in Coastland to provide that staff augmentation for engineering services for Water Resources. So those are overview and the vacancies. A lot of these budget units have reserves, so I'll try to go quickly through those. Budget 1672 is lake bed management. It has a restricted reserve of $14,625. And so that I don't repeat myself on every single one of these. The purpose of these budget reserves is to provide emergency source of funding for any unforeseen expenditures. 1673 is, also contains a restricted reserve of $112,001. And again, emergency source of funding. Budget Unit 1674 is flood corridor maintenance, and it has a general reserve of $750,000. The flood corridor maintenance budget unit 1674 is to provide maintenance of grounds and properties that we purchased for the Middle Creek project. And when we purchase a property, the state allows us to take a percentage of whatever the sale was and retain it for maintenance. And so we put those funds into reserves. And in this year, to reduce our fund balance, we increased that general reserve by $485,228, again, to get it out of the fund balance and put it in reserve. But those funds are generated through the sale of properties within the project limits, and that funding is provided by the state. 8101 is flood zone one, Adobe Creek and Highland Springs. There's a restricted operation and maintenance reserve of $19,309. And again, emergency source of funding. Budget Unit 8104, flood zone four, Scotts Creek. This budget has three separate reserves. It has a restricted operation and maintenance reserve of $94,000, a flood fight reserve of $800, and a groundwater recharge reserve of $11,105. These reserves have been in place for a very long time. Staff did some research. We couldn't really find a clear purpose for some of these. Obviously, operation and maintenance is pretty clear, but some of the other stuff we're a little unclear on. But the reserve funds exist nonetheless. And because they're reserves, any expenditure of them will require board action. So in the future, should funding become necessary and they need to take money out of reserves, they're going to need to come to the board to do anything with those. Budget Unit 8105 is flood zone five, Kelsey Creek. And that has four separate reserves, general reserve of $11,851, an operation and maintenance reserve of $4,024, a flood fight reserve of $495, and a modification reserve of $1,743. Again, these reserves have been in place for a number of years, predate anyone in the department, including me. And so we, you know, the first three reserves are pretty straightforward. We presume that the modification reserve was money that was set aside, likely to fund a future Prop 218 effort. And that's something that's probably going to need to occur in the very near future is a lot of these flood zones don't generate enough revenue to sustain their operations. Budget Unit 8107 has two reserves. It has a general reserve that has $25 in it and a restricted reserve of $264,243. Staff tells me that final budget, we're going to be recommending moving the $25 into the other reserve and kind of consolidating them. Budget Unit 8108, flood zone eight, Upper Middle Creek Basin. That budget contains four separate reserves. However, only one of those reserves actually contains funds, and it is a capital improvement reserve account that contains $3,099. And again, it is to provide emergency source of funding should there something arise. And while we are on Budget Unit 8108, there was a question about public comment. And yes, there was a question about 8108. Constituent was having difficulty locating that. She and I have had some email conversations. I understand she did locate the information. I also provided some information from our preliminary budget that included additional detail on the appropriations and the expenditures. So I trust that that question has been resolved. So, and I, she's here, so I suppose if there's questions, we'll deal with those. But public comment has been addressed. And then finally, Budget Unit 8109. This budget has five separate reserves, a general reserve of $89,997, a restricted equipment reserve of $27,420, a flood fight reserve of $7,766, a flood matching reserve of $1,175, and a restoration project reserve of $253,753. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
I just wanted to go back to the collection of the past due lake bed fees and where we are with that.
Staff's made a big effort towards that. If you're asking about a particular property, they have entered into and signed agreements. We've received checks from them. And they are working towards getting their past due balance paid.
What's the timeline for that to get?
We gave them four years. So they have to maintain their current, to pay their current annual. And then we broke up the past due amount into manageable amounts for them. And so, and they are current.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And you sent me an email about that. I apologize for not getting a response, but glad we got it handled.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding these budget items? I actually had a similar question, but I guess more along the vein of, I see it kind of like property taxes. You have to pay your annual fee in order to continue using. Do you know what percentage pays? Is it the majority? Is it 75%, 80%? Like, is there a need to kind of review how we're going about collecting these things? Because maybe it's not happening in the appropriate and efficient way that's within the capacity of your staff to be able to go after these individuals? Just kind of curious where we are and, because we can ask about one, but I'm curious about all. That's quite, that's quite a number.
Right. Got a feel for percentage?
I would say about 90%.
So Lisi is saying that about 90% of the folks that have lake bed leases are paying. And I think that that number reflects, you know, there's a lot of turnover in purchasing and folks that walk away from properties. And so I think that you're seeing that 10% is a combination of those turnover. We get people all the time that had no idea that they had a lake bed lease. They buy a piece of property. They think, great, I've got, I've got a lake bed or a lakefront home, and I have this beautiful dock, and this is wonderful. And then they get a bill from us, and they didn't know that they had it, either because they didn't review their title report all that well or it was never disclosed, you know, who knows? But there's a fair amount of folks that are surprised that they have a lake bed lease. And so staff is constantly updating those and making sure that we're current with that. So it's a, you know, it's an ongoing effort. But I would say that it's, the majority of lake bed leases are paid.
Okay. I don't think I had anything else specific to Water Resources. Definitely a lot more work being asked of your department in light of the hitch emergency. Obviously, the Middle Creek is also a large project, but that's been kind of looming, and the process has been gone through for many years. And I know that we also saw a slight increase in your staffing in order to try to accommodate to the needs of the hitch emergency. I guess we just got to see how that works out and how that plays out as we get a better understanding of what is needed from those staff members in order to really move things along. So I just wanted to at least mention that. And if there's, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize for not catching up to this. So on page D323, in flood zone four, which I believe is Scotts Valley, underlying 23-80, still left over from the 2324 budget is 165 allocation that former Supervisor Scott had put in. I've been going back and forth with staff on reshaping that. And I think we had a tentative agreement to leave the bigger chunk of this in this so we can do a cost share or something with whatever the latest project is coming down in that. But we also intended to put about 25K or so in a different budget line item for Highland Springs. So I don't know if that, it doesn't look like it translated into this, and I don't know if we need to lock it in before September. But do you recall some of that back and forth about?
Yeah, I am aware of a lot of that back and forth. And, you know, when did we turn these in? April? So, you know, things have happened since April. And so if we need to modify that, I'm sure we can work with admin to get any adjustments made before the final. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure. I want to make sure we're not locking things in. This has been lingering for a year plus. And I think we have a roadmap, but I don't see the roadmap in here.
Okay. We were just perhaps trying to take advantage of and and get more money out of you Supervisor Green.
Every little bit counts. All right, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No hands in Zoom, please come on up in the chamber.
Thank you Chair Sabatier. Julia Carrer Upperlake here representing the Upperlake Community Services District Formation Committee. Thank you Supervisor Simone for mentioning my comment, making sure it was being covered. I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Green, for forwarding my comment to Mr. De Leon. Mr. De Leon provided Form number three and Form number five on budget unit 8108 that has some significant detail. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Do have some clarification questions. Was hoping maybe there would be someone in the department at another time that could meet with us to go through those clarification questions or send them in an email, whatever works for you. So this board doesn't have to sit further through that that discussion and can move forward. Some general comments. Number one, welcome to Mr. Marsh and Mr. Upadahoy. And I hope I didn't brutalize his name too bad. I look forward to working both with both of those directors as we move forward. Regarding the department overview, I don't mean to be a Karen here, but the levies are currently structurally sound, it says. And I refer everyone to this feasibility study that was done in the winter of 2021 that says something different. Under the accomplishments, I was wondering what the work was that was done in 23 and 24 on the Upperlake feasibility study. We don't remember any significant work and perhaps we're missing something, but we'd like to know what that significant work is. And we'd also like to know what the other three reserve line items are called in the reserves so that we can, as we work on our LAFCO budget, can carry that information over. Thank you for your time. That's all.
Mr. De Leon, if you want an opportunity to respond to some of those questions. If you I think we just read out the titles of the reserves. If you can maybe
I think we can provide that that additional information. That shouldn't be a that's not a problem.
Okay. And as far as the accomplishments in 2324?
Well, I I think I'm not sure today and and this budget hearing is the appropriate place to discuss that. There were a couple of public hearings that highlighted the work that was done on that report. And, you know, that that was public information. So we can certainly get a summary of that to the folks that are interested in it. Be happy to do that. And and as far as the the request to work with staff moving forward and getting additional information, we're happy to do that.
And thank you very much. I was going to say I saw you nodding your head during that part of the conversation of being accessible.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Anything further from anybody bringing it back?
Just real quick, the statement about the levy maintenance, structurally sound they were in the report that said that they are structurally sound?
Again, it's
Not the spot?
I don't personally, I don't think it's the spot. It's it there's a lengthy report about the condition of the levies. There are obviously differing opinions about the report. And I don't think today is the time or the place to to debate those with all due respect.
Okay.
There's none in further. Chair move to approve budget units 1672, 1673, 1674, 8101, 8104, 8105, 8107, 8108, 8109. I don't believe there were any amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And before we go, just like to thank the administrative staff for all their assistance with our budgets. And, you know, the development of a budget is a department-wide effort. Everyone gets involved, all the division heads, all the I mean, just every staff member has some contribution. And and today or this year was no different. It was made a little more challenging with the separation of the departments and and new leadership. But the staff did an outstanding job. And just like to specifically acknowledge Alicia and Sylvia Valades and Jacqueline Stores. So thank you very much, Board. Appreciate it.
And just for you real quick, thank you. I know we did this on Tuesday, but thank you for your efforts in Public Works and Water Resources. And we are looking forward to seeing Glenn March in the position and also Dr. Upadie. And we will provide them the same level of support we've been providing you in the past as well.
Awesome, thank you.
And we'll be aware going through budget hearings without you.
Your smile seems somewhat sarcastic.
You can come back anytime.
Maybe I'll come next year.
Next on our list, we will continue with our county library, who has two budget units. And we will start on page D 283. Director Veach, welcome.
Talking things over. So thank you for considering our recommended budget. I'm Christopher Veach, the county librarian. I want to thank admin office for their assistance and of course, all the library staff that helped put together our budget. As you said, it does start on page D 283 or page 337 of the PDF. And my two budget units, 6022 and 6023, both support the operations of the library, promote reading literacy and lifelong learning in Lake County. The main library fund, 125 6022, is primarily funded with a dedicated property tax approved by the voters in 1974. And property taxes make up the majority of all revenues. There are also various grants that fund specific programs as well as a contribution from the general fund for staff positions and to partially cover county overhead. And my budget unit in 6023 Fund 71 historically was funded entirely by community donations and helps support our library collection and events. However, it also contains 1.6 million in grant funds for our capital projects, which is the majority of the expenditures seen in this fund for this upcoming year. And then for the community donations revenue in that fund, we'll continue to partner with community nonprofits, primarily the Friends of the Library and the Lake County Literacy Coalition, who are the main source of community donations for the library. So over the past year, the library increased from the year before in the main metrics we track. Circulation of library materials has increased about 4%. Digital checkouts made up around 32% of our total circulation this past year, which is increasing. Part of the reason for the boost in circulation is adding new materials to the collection. This past year, the library selected, purchased and added over 3,000 items to the library collection to keep it current and useful for the public. Use of our public computers and Wi-Fi has increased about 9%. And checkout of our Wi-Fi hotspots and Chromebooks have also increased about 40%. This past year, we presented over 600 programs with a combined attendance of 6,000 people. And we also launched the Lake County Library Bookmobile, which has eight stops over a three-day-per-week schedule, utilizing state grant funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds and local library funding. So in this upcoming budget year, we want plan to continue to maintain our library collections. We are endeavoring to provide digital resources as well as continue improvements on our print collections. And we're striving for our print collections to have 25% of titles have a publishing date within the last five years. This year, we have already applied for and won a grant to bring a community-wide reading event, the NAA Big Read to the county. That's first announced here because we just received word. And we'll also be applying for a state-funded Lunch at the Library program, which brings summer meals to school-aged children at the library. We're also making looking at making improvements to our online library catalog. That's the library website where people can search for items that are in the library. It's how many residents interact with the library and has all of our titles digital and in print. It's currently available through our partnership with Sonoma County Library. And as they're looking to make improvements, we want to join in with them and provide a better experience for our patrons, be able to find what they need and want through the library. We will also be continuing with the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant Program, which is a multi-year grant from the state library that I referenced in budget unit 6023. There are capital improvements at all of our library branches focusing on safety as required by the grant. And the biggest addition is still to come, which will be solar backup generation at our three largest branches. That work will mainly be done by public services, but as a library, we'll do our best to remain open to the public as much as possible through these construction projects. I did want to note there is no changes at the position allocation this year. We have one unfunded position, a branch library coordinator, that the library doesn't plan to fill at this time. And that concludes the overview of my library budget, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your brief summary and excited about all the things that are happening. I do want to thank you. You were one of the first in our agency of Lake County to really step up for the capital improvement plans to all of the branches of all the libraries around the county. And that shows with the list of projects that have already occurred and are continuing to occur that's on our list for this year. So greatly appreciate you taking the lead and taking the initiative on that. Any questions, comments? I see none. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. See no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the audience. Such a grand audience. Director Veach, no questions, no comments. Your budgets are easy. Your work is flawless. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, we still need to vote for it.
Oh, almost out here.
This is the exciting part.
Yeah. Ms. Chair, I'd like to move to approve budget unit 6022 and 6023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our county council with three budget items. We're going to start on page D 31. And county council Quintavano is coming up.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Loi Quintavano, county council for the county of Lake. So as Chair Sabatier indicated, there's three budget units here. I'll start with budget unit number 1231, which does start on page D dash D 31. That's our office's general county council budget, the bulk of which consists of wages and salaries of staff in the office. One positive update that we do have in our office is that starting early July, our office will be, at least it's anticipated that our office will be fully staffed. Well, we've filled the one vacant deputy county council position and he's looking to start either first or second week of July. So we haven't been fully staffed for quite some time, so that is some good news. And kind of related to that is the where our office is currently working with collaborating with public services for potential renovations to that's expected to occur in our office in order to build some office space to accommodate staff. And I've indicated it in our part of our narrative, still are planning to implement or at least initiate the search for case management software for our office. And as part of that plan, we are looking to consult with other county departments, such as the district attorney, district attorney's office or the public defender, who are, as I, as we understand that they are in the process of also initiating or or implementing their case management software. So unless there's any questions regarding this budget unit, I could move on to the others. Next budget unit is 9919, which is on page D 446. This is the county's public liability budget. It pertains to administrative risk management functions towards the county's public liability claims in coordination with the county's third-party administrator. For, as with in prior fiscal years, for this fiscal year, the requested amounts in that budget primarily are based on the estimates provided by PRISM, which is the risk-sharing insurance pool of which the county is a member. PRISM stands for Public Risk Innovations, Solutions and Management. There's really three main factors for determining the premium amounts for each fiscal year. First one is the cost of claims. Second one is payroll. And the third point, third factor is the market of insurance. As with the previous fiscal years, it's still relatively a hard market, which means that insurance coverages for certain types of insurance coverage categories are still hard to obtain. But we do appreciate, our office does appreciate the the prompt response that we receive from other county departments and and cooperation as well from other county departments when it comes to our office's inquiries in responding and making a determination on a claim that's filed and processed through the county's third-party administrator. Unless there's any questions about that, I can move on to the next one. The third budget unit is 9920. That's in page D 448, which is the county's workers' compensation budget. This is also through the county's membership in PRISM. And the again, and as with the public liability budget, the requested amounts for this fiscal year are also based on projections provided by PRISM to to the county or to to our office. With workers' compensation, similar to the public liability budget, it is still a hard market when it comes to the premiums that we pay. However, would note and highlight that the number of workers' compensation claims that have been incurred by the county has been at its lowest since fiscal year 1984, 1985. And the total amount of workers' compensation payment currently has been at its lowest since fiscal year 1976, 1977. The specific figures are all laid out outlining the narrative. So as with previous fiscal years, our office strives to get employees on workers' compensation and get back to work as soon as possible in order to mitigate claims and boost employee morale. And as with our public liability budget, we do, our office does appreciate the cooperation from the other county departments, which we've consistently received in responding to our office's inquiries on, you know, on workers' compensation matters involving county employees. So overall, we do thank staff, well, start off with county council staff for their hard work and and moving along with with these three budget units. We want to thank administration and the auditor controller for their assistance in the budget process as always. It's still a bit of a learning curve for us. But members of admin staff, Steve, Susan, Casey, Sarah, they've always been available and and they've helped us at this point, getting us hopefully up to speed in terms of training our office in 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 providing the the information that's needed for this budget presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
So on the public liability, you know, I get there a lot of variables in setting that insurance premium. But that's a big old premium, more than the 4 million bucks, about 20% more than last year's budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So I guess for me to feel comfortable with this going up, you've said on occasion it will go down if our claims are down for that year? Or has that been a trend you've seen in recent memory?
It's the trend, at least in recent years, has been upward. Not to say that it's possible for it to go down, but that is in large part. As being a member of of this risk insurance sharing pool, the county does not have a lot of direct direct control over, you know, whether or not certain premiums would necessarily go up or down because it's shared by by other counties as part of PRISM. So it is tied into to the other member counties as part of PRISM and and how they process their claims, the results of those claims as well. But that's not to say that it's possible that it would trend down. It's from what we gather thus far, premiums are based on those three factors. And the third factor is the the market the market environment for for insurance. And it is still relatively high.
Thank you. All right. I am so happy to hear that you will I am so happy to hear that you will have a full team coming, did you say Monday?
Could either first or second week of July.
Okay, gotcha.
Is what's anticipated.
I think Monday was the previous director that was telling us that. But that's exciting to have a full team, you know, that your department kind of touches every single department, ensuring that things are written to form, checking in with any new processes that we might have, even employee situations goes through your department. So that's a lot of, it's a lot of work and activity going through one department, and having everyone on board is going to be helpful for you and your staff. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom and nobody is getting up in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve Budget Units 1231, 9919, and 9920 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move on to our information technology, and that is Budget Unit 1904. It's on page D-73. And Director French, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Shane French, Information Technology. Yeah, so for Budget Unit 1904, this budget unit manages all of the technology leadership for the county, essentially all of the network infrastructure, computing, software, software contract management, and information security tasks. You know, I noticed that I put on my narrative that we manage 750 desktop computers, but I just thought it would be interesting to mention that over the last three, four years, that's actually a lot bigger number. It's about 960 now, and that's kind of a function of folks, you know, utilizing work from home and having more than one device. Some users have, you know, several devices, so. I mention that only because, you know, you're going to notice in this budget, and this year and last year especially, there's been an increase in certain costs, especially licensing costs. And I think I've mentioned that a time or two. But the costs are tending to accelerate, especially for these software-as-a-service platforms, or what they might call a cloud platform. A lot of that cloud-based licensing is increasing every year, and sometimes it's not just single digits. I actually had a vendor hit us with an almost 40% increase just this last year, and it caused us to have to really reshuffle a lot of what we've been doing with licensing in a lot of instances. So I just want your board to be aware that I'm very much cognizant of the fact that these costs are creeping up, and we're trying to be diligent about how we procure and manage these systems because as more things are moving to third parties in terms of how they're managed, obviously, it takes a certain amount of control away from us, and we don't always have a lot of recourse there. So I'm trying to kind of limit our exposure in a lot of ways to some of those increased costs, and sometimes we're pretty effective at that, but sometimes it's very difficult to prevent some of these increases from impacting us. You know, significant changes from last year, again, we've got about $130,000 uplift in costs for software-as-a-service or cloud-based services, primarily Microsoft services. And the reason for that is because we're kind of shifting away from on-premise mail systems, and we're going to be putting that all in Microsoft's cloud, which is, it's a good thing. It's going to give us some additional resiliency in terms of, you know, data availability, email system availability and so forth, and give us some new, some new features that are available to us. However, I mean, it is an increased cost, and it's something that we're keeping an eye on. And part of that is security spend as well. Security spend has gone way up over the last several years, just because there's just a lot more you need to do to put a perimeter around your network these days. There's just, there's a whole lot more threats that are, we are encountering that we're having to mitigate again, so. Other than that, you know, about $74,000 in payroll costs increased due to primarily raises. And then finally, I've got about $200,000 in infrastructure updates. Those would be an upgrade of our core switch, is basically the core of our network. It's a very big, expensive, complicated device. And then some more, some other network upgrades, and then, of course, backup storage. That's another area that, from a budgetary standpoint, is very challenging because the more data you store, the more data you have to back up, right? Every time somebody stores a one-megabyte file, I'm actually storing about four megabytes because I'm having to make copies of it and put it in various places, whether it be here on-premise or up into the cloud for disaster recovery purposes. So just something to be aware of and something I just wanted to kind of share with your board. Aside from that, I'm really happy that we've moved to having a new object code for these software subscriptions. I think that's going to be really helpful in kind of seeing how these costs are trending over years, and I think it'll be very enlightening. So I'm really, I'm really glad to see that in our system. So other than that, not any real major changes. Other costs have remained fairly static, but again, some pretty significant uplift, especially in the subscription services.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Piscott?
So just thinking about some of the projects that you wanted to do with the ARPA funding that we're looking at, and then also realizing that that's one-time funding, but your projects are ongoing, how are you considering those moves as we move forward out of that one-time funding opportunity?
Sure. So, I mean, primarily, a lot of the spend that we've had with ARPA has been security-related, right? Information security projects, information security subscriptions, and then also network upgrades. We spent quite a bit on refreshing older equipment, things that need to be replaced. And, I mean, for the most part, the majority of my ARPA funds or for our department have been accounted for and actually spent. So it's been very helpful to have those funds. I would say there's one thing that I am a little concerned about, and that's that, you know, a lot of the things that we've moved forward with, obviously, it's good to have those one-time funds, but sometimes those one-time funds lead to non-one-time funds. And that's been a little bit of a concern for me because, obviously, we don't, we don't have that, that funding kind of moving forward. So, you know, as of this year, obviously, we have quite a bit of an uplift, and part of it is in part because we've had projects that have, have used ARPA. You know, we were able to kind of bootstrap a lot of what we were doing with ARPA funds. But moving forward, obviously, in the future, we're not going to be able to do that.
Any other comments or questions? So I do want to bring something up, and it's budget-related, but I know it has a different feel to it as well. In some of the conversations we had, I mean, you're talking about fees for annual licensing for specific software. Other departments also have special annual contract fees for the software that they've licensed and contracted with. And I think when you start looking at the full package of it, not just what you're paying for, you're paying for more the overall infrastructure, not the nitty-gritty detail of what each department requires and needs to function. But when you start looking at all of the licensing fees and all of the contracts and all the softwares that we're using, there is some inefficiencies in how we are handling all of that.
Yeah.
Agency-wide. And so I think that we started some of those conversations in the technology group. I want to make sure we continue those conversations because there are some potential savings there if we find a more global solution to things that can help you with the license increases, because everybody's going to need email no matter what. Everyone's going to need access to some sort of Adobe Sign or something that's more universal than just each individual department. But then we're, we're obviously working forward. Our auditor controller is already making those steps for a accounting software and so on. And I think that's going to be the foundation to try and figure out how to better streamline what everybody is doing. And I just, it's getting very difficult because everyone wants to go to live service where they can control us versus us controlling it, it being the software. And so I think we're going to end up with a no-choice situation, unless we want to build the entire thing from scratch, which would just be a whole different situation. And I don't think we can accomplish that, but I think there's ways to help out with some of your concerns by really focusing on the global issue of each independent department going after their own independent software when there's ways to share the same software that we all have. So I think we can get to a point where it's less concerning, but without tackling the issue, it does become a concern because we're not changing anything underneath the big umbrella of what the agency of Lake is really doing to fix the problem.
Yeah. And I think, again, like one of the, that's one of the reasons I'm really excited about this new object code because, in the budgeting system, because it's going to show overall how much is being spent on these subscription services, and I think it's going to be really enlightening, really eye-opening. And I think it'll be another tool that we can use to kind of investigate some of these instances where, hey, we've got some overlap. We're duplicating effort, we're duplicating spending. And I'll just say, I mean, departments have been really good about working with those issues with us in the past, and I anticipate that continuing in the future for sure.
And I don't know what role, never mind, that one gets out of the budget conversation, so I'll leave it there, but I just know that we've tried software and it didn't work, and then tried a different software. And I really feel the technology group is a way to make it efficient on our budgets by having the bigger conversation of questions that may not be asked when people are looking for things. I'll leave it there. If there's nothing further, let's open it up for public comment. I see no hands being raised in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber. I will just say one last comment before we take action. I know one of my key things that I believe in is that I hope that in the future, we can have a discussion about hiring a programmer, somebody who can help to identify little niche needs. We used to have somebody who used to program the AS400. That skill set and that program has been upgraded, and those skill sets are hard to find. But I still think getting the outcomes of our data that we are looking for, rather than trying to figure out how we can get something that's made to be so general for every agency, I think would really help us to pinpoint the kind of data and meaningful data that we're looking for, because we collect a whole bunch of data, but it's not presented to us in a way that I think is very helpful. With that, looking for action.
Motion to approve Budget Item 1904.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have our auditor controller with two budget units, and we will start with D-18, on page D-18. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board and attendees. I'm Genevieve Harrington, Lake County's Auditor Controller, County Clerk. I'll introduce her in a second. As you may know, the Auditor Controller, County Clerk Department is a consolidated office of the County Clerk and Auditor Controller. Many of the duties and functions of these offices are addressed separately in law. Functions of the Auditor Controller include, definitely not limited to, financial reporting, general ledger accounting for all county departments, budgeting, property tax administration and allocation, administration and processing of the county payroll and accounts payable, the A-87 cost plan development and coordination, court settlement distribution, coordinating the single, oh, sorry, coordinating the single audit each year is a six-month project alone. The CIFA preparation, as well as the ACFA, so CIFA is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, the ACFA is our annual comprehensive financial reporting. Those are all occurring in the same season and require all hands on deck. Having no material findings and being able to say that we are a low audit risk county is exciting for my office, but should be exciting, should be exciting for the entire county, just keeping in mind that this affects us all, and we're really grateful for all the cooperation we've received in ensuring compliance with our various GASB and other accounting standards. Divisions of my office include payroll, property tax, and the general ledger, financial reporting, which also includes the financial transaction reports that we submit to the State Controller's Office every year. The Auditor Controller's Office was tasked with the responsibility of coordination, claiming, and financial disaster recovery as a result of the multiple emergencies that have occurred over the years, and will be presented in Budget Unit 1920 separately. In addition to county services, the Auditor Controller provides services to 21 independent special districts, fire, water, cemetery, the Lake County Office of Education, the First Five Commission, and our local transit agencies. Services provided to those customers include accounting support, budget, and general ledger transaction processing. Functions of the County Clerk include marriage licensing, fictitious business name statement filing, notary oaths, fish and wildlife administrative fees, Form 700 processing, conflict of interest code maintenance and administration, as well as a variety of additional county clerk filings and duties as required by the County Board of Supervisors and the State of California. This department is a general fund service department, partially funded by a combination of user fees and services to others. All right. So some accomplishments that have led to goals or vice versa over the last couple of years. Contract management, that's, that's the one I keep talking about. But we are actually uploading the documents into Laserfish now. They're being tested, and so just a reminder, the ultimate goal has been to increase transparency and efficiencies within the contract management. So I know there's been some discussion about that, but I just wanted to let you know where we're at right now. All of the agreements are in Laserfish, so any licensed Laserfish user will be able to see all the contracts throughout the entire county. So if you wanted to know a specific vendor, a specific department, that, that information is available to you, as well as the payment tracking and how much is left on the agreement. That's all going to be available in Laserfish to any licensed user. Let's see. And just, so that's also supposed to align with the purchasing ordinance that will be, that's being implemented on July 1st of 2024. So all of that will happen at once, but that's, like I said, an accomplishment and a goal in one. And, let's see. And as you may recall, back in February, the board approved the contract with Averro Consulting to perform a needs assessment for our county. So Averro has been facilitating discovery sessions with our various departments to address their financial, finance-related needs, as well as department-specific software issues. We hope, by working with the departments directly, that we are able to identify potential improvements and efficiencies countywide. And to that point, I just wanted to add to that, that as we're doing these discovery interviews, we're going beyond just the finance system, their cash sharing, their permitting, and so forth, because if there are any opportunities to integrate, we're hoping to capture that all in this one project. So that is something that we're definitely looking at. So the current timeline is to wrap up the discovery interviews by the end of July, have the RFP written by the end of August, and out by September. Ideally, we will be selecting the vendor by the end of December. The finance system implementation is scheduled to go live July 1st, 2025. The implementation of the human capital module will occur shortly after. It's important we're done with the finance implementation so that we can give the full attention to the HR component. And just to mention, the extraordinary items that are in my budget are directly related to this project. One last note, being able to take credit cards and other forms of electronic payment countywide is still high on the list. I imagine this will align with our go-live with the new ERP, but we'll need to confirm that with the tax collector. It was definitely left over from last time. Okay. So 1920 Budget Unit. The disaster response and recovery was established for a centralized location to track and claim the costs associated with declared disasters. The responsibilities of the budget unit were absorbed by the Auditor Controller Department in 2015. And here to speak on this budget unit is Dakota Hockett, the Emergency Event Fiscal Manager.
The 1920 Budget Unit is a special revenue fund, and it is funded day-to-day through state and federal administrative payments and interest revenue. The purpose of this fund is to track and claim expenses incurred to countywide declared disasters and ensure the county qualifies for as much reimbursement as possible. The 1920 Budget Unit has reserves held for audit exceptions, repayment of insurance, duplication of benefits, advance repayments, and emergency funds for major disasters. The advance repayments, and emergency funds for major disasters. The audit exception reserve is to ensure monies are available for any audit findings. All events except for Rocky and Jerusalem fires are still eligible for audit, which leaves us with $21 million in unaudited public assistance proceeds. The insurance proceeds duplication reserve is to ensure monies are available to pay back in cases where we receive both public assistance and insurance for the same damages. The advance repayment reserve is because we received an advance for Mendocino Fire, and we were paid in full as well. The general reserve is to ensure there is money available in the case of a major disaster. Disaster response and recovery has claimed reimbursement for 14 federally declared disasters. This budget unit has also administered the coronavirus aid relief and economic safety act funding, PG&E settlement funds, and the public safety power shut off funds. The disaster assistance we are eligible for comes from FEMA authorized by the Robert T. Stafford Act and the California Office of Emergency Services, CALOES, authorized by the California Disaster Assistance Act, CDAA. We therefore receive reimbursement through two different entities, the timing of which sometimes lines up well together and sometimes does not. For example, we experienced with the 2023 February storms that even in the best case scenario, when both the FEMA and CDAA, excuse me, when both the FEMA and CDAA reimbursements are obligated on the exact same day through the exact same notice, we will still receive the CDAA and FEMA funds weeks apart. In addition, depending on the assistance received and project types, the closeout schedule and process is different from project to project and event to event. Some projects can only be reimbursed by CDAA, even if the event as a whole is authorized for assistance through FEMA. Those projects therefore have a different procedure for closeout than projects reimbursed by both FEMA and CDAA. In addition, not all projects for an event are completed at the same time. And so for one event, there can be multiple closeout dates. It's due to the closeout process that disaster response and recovery is still budgeting for older events. When we initiate closeout through FEMA and CALOES, they review all costs submitted and settle any projects that have not been paid or that need to be adjusted. If you notice any older events that are still being budgeted, it is because we are still waiting for them to be reviewed by the CALOES closeout team. As for some accomplishments this year, they include completing the countywide emergency protective measures project for the 2023 February storms event. Departments have already been reimbursed for their expenses. Completing the COVID-19 projects and initiating closeout, while we're waiting on checks for four out of the seven projects, all non administrative projects have been obligated. We've also initiated closeout on the Mendocino Fire and received the administrative expense reimbursement. All told, this fiscal year, departments have been reimbursed $215,263, with an additional $437,332 anticipated to be accrued to the 2324 fiscal year. Goals for the coming year include wrapping up older events, preparing for potential audits, and creating a fiscal user packet for staff who will be submitting disaster event costs. The budget itself is driven by the anticipated disaster funding. Overall, outside of the administrative payments received, which are used to fund our position allocations and office expenses, the majority of the state and federal disaster revenues received leave the budget unit as reimbursement to other departments for expenses incurred during a disaster event. And thus wraps up the disaster response and recovery budget presentation. Thank you for your time and attention.
And if you have questions for either.
Thank you very much for your presentations and truly appreciate the transparency that you gave to the disaster response. It's a large number in the reserves, and there's quite a lot that goes into why that is the case. It's not all accessible, and it's meant to be saved for future threats and also for potential audits in the future. So I really appreciate the level of detail that you provided. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, forgive me if I missed it in the narrative. At the bottom on page D20, 23-80, admin recommended adding 300K. Can you explain what that is?
That's the contract with Averro. They're the consultant that's doing the needs assessment, having the individual meetings with each of the departments to help us write the RFP to get our new finance system.
The reason is because it was an extraordinary. So we made the adjustment after they submitted.
So another 300K just to get us to the point of an intelligent RFP.
And, I mean, the original, the original scope is really more in the realm of 160,000, but because I know we need more than just the finance system, we added an additional appropriation in case it would help us help the other departments inside the same project.
Right. It's gonna be one good RFP. Thank you.
Yes. But you know, it has been 23 plus years, I believe, since the last big finance system implementation. So wanted to do it right one time.
I think we've gone through about four iterations of what your computer screen looks like during that same software. It used to be monochrome, then it was CRV, or CRT, now it's flat screen. Yeah, it's been a while, and it needs to be upgraded. And thank you very much for working on that. That's one of the most important projects that we're taking on. It really will bring us a little bit more into the 21st century. Any other questions or comments? And I was gonna ask some questions, but you answered them all, because I wanted to be a little bit more transparent on the disaster budget, but you did a great job. So I appreciate that. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? See no one in Zoom and no one in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
Move to approve budget units 1121 and 1920.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We will come back at 2:55. Patrick's giving me the eye.
He made me wait.
All right, welcome back. We will continue where we left off with our Treasurer Tax Collector, Budget Unit 1122, that will be found on page D22. And Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Good afternoon. Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer Tax Collector. I'm here with Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector Liz Martinez. So I know your board's already aware of some of what we've done this year, so I'll try to give you the highlight reel and run through this. Again, Treasurer Tax Collector's Office runs three different divisions. We have Treasury, Tax, and then the Court and County Debt Collections Division, which is primarily court ordered debt, but we also assist county departments as well. Some of the accomplishments we had in the last fiscal year, there was a lot on the Treasury side. We completed our electronic check processing upgrade. There were a lot of technical upgrades we needed to do, software upgrades, hardware, in order to get that done. But we are now able to transmit checks electronically. So theoretically, the day we receive a check, if we were to be fully caught up, we can actually transmit it to the bank that same day, and it's recognized in our account. So this is actually further increasing our interest earnings, because prior to this, checks were sitting for an extended period, even when we were caught up, because they still had to be physically picked up and brought to the bank. Now, we are able to transmit those electronically. That coupled with the Lockbox processing program has really cut back on our times. We're able to stay current even during tax season. We're avoiding that backlog by using RTL and their Whittier facility. Let's see, we continued to restructure our banking. We've been able to further enhance our earnings using different vehicles at our operating account in addition to further utilizing local government investment pools like the CAMP program or CalTrust and LEAF, which is a state treasurer's version. Continued work with Chandler Asset Management on the rest of the portfolio to grow that. We're also working with them to help bolster our liquidity, especially with the state budget deficit and some other issues facing us. We're having to expand the amount of funds that we are able to have readily accessible. And we're trying to minimize the impact on our returns while we do that. We did another Chapter 7 sale, another large auction where we started out with 1,000 properties, and that was a success. We conducted a Chapter 8 sale with the City of Clear Lake, which is now fully complete. We have made some other advancements in court collections. That was an area that definitely we've spent a lot of time focusing on. We have now contracted with a third party agency, so we're going to be stuck going live with them hopefully next month. I believe we have everything in place. That's going to go after a lot of our older debt and see if we have another crack at recovering it. They're helping us as well. They're going to directly manage the tax intercept program for us, which we're getting set up with the State Controller. So that's going to provide another stream of revenue where we're able to intercept those tax refunds directly. See, another, another thing in that area is our transition with probation. We're now consolidated all financial enforcement related to court. So it used to be that some cases would go to probation, some would come to us. Now, once the case is final, all cases come to our office. So that includes victim restitution. So I think we're able to provide a higher level of service for victims, partially because we have access to those other tools. So not only are we collecting on all criminal cases and traffic infractions or any other administrative fishing game or other fines of that nature, we're also helping recover for victims and then handling the distribution. So I think that's a major change that I hope will help everyone out. So some of the goals going forward, we're continuing to implement the tax sale module. We're continuing our tax sales, working with the City of Lakeport on a Chapter 8 sale. We do have another Chapter 7 sale that will be in the works. One thing I would highlight is that this budget is premised off the fact that we are not planning to do auctions of the paper subs solely. If you were to follow the standard practice at this point, in spring, we would do 1,000 properties that are all paper subs in lease and lucerne. That cost would, it would just be a massive hit to the general fund. We incur costs. It would be somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 to do that. So I've been working with the State Controller, and I think we've found something that we can all live with. And your board will see that come before you, where I can bring forward a sale listing all those paper subs. I would recommend that you deny my proposal, that you reject it, so that we don't do that sale. But that satisfies my requirement. By doing that, that's going to open up more opportunities for Chapter 8 sales. It will give your board and other county departments time to come up with plans, you know, whether there's government agencies, land trusts, there could be other uses for that land. And if we can move it in a more logical way, rather than in a piecemeal fashion at a Chapter 7 sale, that would help, it'll save the county a lot of money. So I just want to be clear that we're going to change up the plan for Chapter 7 sales, and that is what this budget is premised on. Some of the other things, we'll continue to work on Lockbox, expanding that. TOT, we do want to increase enforcement for transient occupancy tax. We previously used software. There's a lot more out there now. So we do want to do an RFP and find something that can help identify unlicensed rentals and get them on the rolls paying their taxes. We want to continue to expand the investment program. We're going to finish migrating cases out of probation's revque system. They were, we both have the same collection software, but it was on different versions. So we've finished upgrading to get to the same version. Everything we do, it seems like it triggers another technical issue, but we've completed that. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be able to get all of probation's cases completely into our system. But for now, we're actually running two systems while we complete this migration. Otherwise, I think that's it. I would just say to court collections, that is taking a lot of my time. There's a lot of changes at the state level there that are causing some headaches. It feels like every year there's a new bill that restricts our ability to collect. But while the state continues to restrict our ability to collect in the way that we can enforce those cases, they're not relieving us of any of our obligations. We're still required to make an annual payment to the state. They're not really cutting us any breaks. So I would just highlight, this program is definitely a point of concern, because essentially, we need to get more efficient and get a better collection rate just to maintain where we're at. And especially if the state continues on this path, that's going to get harder and harder for us. So just thought I'd highlight that. And if there's any specific questions about our budget or any of our programs, you know, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Transient occupancy taxes, that includes short term rentals?
Yes, that would actually be the focus of what our RFP will be. We want software that can help identify Airbnbs and Verbos, all those different websites where they're renting. Another advantage of those is that typically, most of those software programs allow access to anyone in the county, which means code enforcement or assessor, anyone else that has an interest in regulating or identifying these parcels would be able to ride along with the use of that software.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to say how much I appreciate what you've done to the department. It doesn't just affect the county, it affects every single one of our major agencies that provide public services in Lake County. Just the extra collections that you've helped create, and just the level of work coming out of your department is highly appreciated. So.
Appreciate it. I'm lucky we have a really great staff. So definitely thankful for them too.
Yep. Thank you so much. Let's open it up for public comment. Any comments on this one? You have it easy, one budget unit. I see no one getting up in the board chambers and no one in the Zoom room. Bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve budget unit 1122.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move forward with Animal Control and Vet Medical Clinic. This is Budget Unit 2703 and 2711, and we will begin on page D177.
Oh, CAO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That's all right. This budget will be presented by the ACAOC, Stephen Carter. We also have the Assistant Animal Control Director, Jessica Leishman here, in case you have any service level or technical questions.
She gonna come up?
No.
Thank you, Board. So in Budget Unit 2703, Animal Control, here, yes? I'm talking right to it, too.
Maybe I'm close.
Talk in it, not to it.
All right.
It's that time of day.
So Budget Unit 2703, Animal Care and Control. The requested appropriations for fiscal year 2425 is $1,625,854. The department enforces local and state laws pertaining to the ownership of care of domestic animals. LCACC provides rabies control efforts through the quarantine of biting animals, responding to loose and vicious dogs complaints, a dog licensing program, and offering low cost rabies vaccinations to the community. LCACC also provides humane animal investigations, abatement of loose and nuisance animals, including livestock, animal rescue, and disaster response services, which is the LEAP. And by providing veterinary services to any stray domestic animal within the County of Lake as mandated, which is in Budget Unit 2711. LCACC operates a shelter with a holding capacity of 42 dogs, 90 cats, and nearly 24, so did livestock. The facility is open to the public six days a week, where they can retrieve lost pets, surrender or stray animals, purchasing of licenses, and viewing of available animals. And some of the accomplishments for Animal Care and Control, they continued the community cat program with nearly 400 cats altered, responded to over 1,900 calls for assistance. So they've done quite a bit. Now, related to direct budget numbers, if you notice in the revenue section, in 8122 and 8123, there's 135,000 that comes in and then goes right out. That is actually geothermal funding that is meant for the vet clinic itself, Budget Unit 2711. It just works out better going through a general fund department first. Within the expenses, the capital assets, the, there are actually four extraordinary requests, but only two have been granted prior to September. And those two are the animal control truck boxes. And the reason for that is two of them have been destroyed and already ordered. They just take, I believe, about six months to get, somewhere around there. So they've already been ordered and don't want to, in case they come in before September, need to have the appropriations. But in September, also need a Ford F-250 truck and a couple other items. That's all I really have, unless you have questions on Animal Control, Care and Control 2703.
Let's go ahead and finish the other units.
Next budget unit is Budget Unit 2711, which can be found on page D192. Overall appropriation request is 589,486, and that's Animal Care and Control Medical Clinic. Clinic. We current, I don't want to go ahead and review, read the department overview this time. There are generally a veterinary and a vet tech. Neither one are hired at this point in time, so we are still looking for those, but we do have extra help kennel attendants, et cetera. Do you want to add anything? Nope, not yet, good. We do have two extra help kennel techs, kennel attendants, to try to pick up some of that slack. Like I said before, this is where 135,000 actually comes in from geothermal to help, because if we had a veterinarian, we would actually do surgeries, and the funds, the proceeds from that would pay for the services. Without that, general fund or a similar funding source would need to pay so that, because we're going to have to contract out with veterinarians to provide the services that if we had a vet, are mandated to do those, we are mandated to do those services. So that's a big expense with no revenue generation. I think that's about all I have for that one as well.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding these budget units?
Just real quick, the vet that we have is just under contract, that's why it doesn't fall within the animal medical, okay. Also, I don't know if it's a constant need, or if it's something that has been left over from prior years. There's been on the capital asset list, a replacement of truck boxes. Is that being purchased, and it's just new trucks that need new boxes, or have they not been purchased? Just kind of checking in.
One of them is from a prior year, because it took so long to get, but during mid-year, we added a new one because a tree fell on it. So it's really new ones, just with the same description. It seems like all of our boxes seem to need to be replaced one at a time right now.
And the reason I ask is because it's such an integral part of, you can have a truck, but if you don't have a box, then you can't do the job.
And they're about 35,000 apiece, and they take, I believe it was six months to build. So you have to plan it out.
I just wanted to check in on that. One other thing, just a quick statement, and I kind of made a similar statement during planning and code enforcement. I don't see anything here that is even highlighting fines or other things, and I feel like, again, Animal Control is seeing a blooming difficulty in trying to regulate pet owners, in trying to meet the guidelines and the rules and regulations that we have in our code. But yet, if we're not putting out any fines, and we're dealing with the same individuals again and again and again, which I am certain is what we're seeing for certain areas, then we're not changing behaviors. And I don't mean for it to be a revenue stream, but it would help pay for the amount of services we have to offer in order to take the responsibility that others are choosing not to actually commit to when they get a pet. And so I would love to see a line item and something being added, so that we can kind of push forward with looking at doing some of those things, because I think it's one of those departments where I just feel bad that we're just running around taking care of someone else's responsibility, because it's a nuisance to the rest of the community. We have to change the way people behave with pets. There are certain rules that you have to follow. So just a quick comment on that. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. I'll bite my tongue on that comment, but I did have a question about LEAP, and whether that needs a line item at some point. And I know we're not going to fix that particular thing right now in transition, but it's hard to say we have a LEAP function, but not have any callouts that directly support it. So just, that's my comment.
That has been under review previously about the 5013C, et cetera, separating or not, budget unit or not. Definitely will take a look again.
I think it falls in line, similar to the COC not showing up on this, because it is a separate budget. Yes, it is kind of held and controlled by the county of Lake due to it being the lead agency, but, or at least behavioral health, but it's not something that is within our purview to control or review. And with that, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands up in the Zoom room, no one getting up in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve budget units 2703 and 2711.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we're going to kind of alter our path through this budget hearing. We're going to start off with building and grounds, or move next to building and grounds, integrated waste management, parks, museums, and we are starting on budget unit 1671, which starts on page D43. Director Ewing, good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon, thank you. First, I apologize for the somewhat casual attire. I guessed that I would be tomorrow, so I would have, you'll see me in long sleeve tomorrow. All right, so first off, thank you in public services, thank you to Katie Galvani, who is here, Deputy Director for Finance and Admin. She's really the driver behind the budgets, as well as her staff, Sheila, Annie, and Dana. So a specific call out to them, as well as admin and the auditor controller team, so thank you. The Public Services Department is, has four divisions made up of seven budget units. Those divisions are facilities maintenance, otherwise known as buildings and grounds. We also have integrated waste management, which is the landfill and countywide integrated waste management program, parks, recreation, and trails, and museums. So with that said, jumping right into budget unit 1671, which again was on page D43, that budget unit is responsible for the maintenance and repair and improvements of all county facilities, and that also includes planning, engineering, and construction management of capital projects that may not be necessarily accomplished by the buildings and grounds technicians, but is accomplished by contract, but a lot of effort is done by county staff leading up to that contract. Staffing wise, we are at about 1.2 million, I'm going to be rounding figures here, staffing at 1.2 million, which is a steady state. Generally, vacancy rate is about zero. As someone moves on, then we're able to quickly fill it in. That's about 12, not about, that is 12 staff, permanent staff. On the revenue side, $283,000, which is a relatively steady state. That is made up of primarily facility leases, the telecommunication facilities on the courthouse roof, as well as Guard Street with child support. On the services and supplies side, 1.1 million, which again is relatively steady state. Capital assets, I'll note that there are no capital assets in this budget unit. All facilities, capital improvements are budgeted in other budget units that either have already been discussed, or will be discussed later today or tomorrow. Accomplishments and goals, I'm going to breeze past this, just in the sake of time, but suffice it to say that buildings and grounds, everyone's walking through it, and you see what they've done. They're keeping the buildings in working order, and dealing with an aging infrastructure, so I applaud them. On the non-b buildings and grounds staff side, designs are in progress, projects that you're going to be, already have heard about, or will continue to hear about, Armory, Courthouse HVAC, Courthouse Solar, Kelseyville Senior Center, and the list goes on and on. So that work is, has gone this year, and will continue next fiscal year. Also, we completed an update to the county facilities capital improvement plan, which will be updated again this year. Goals moving forward, keep keeping that moving forward, but also focusing on planned maintenance as opposed to emergency response. Also transitioning to a countywide keyless system, as opposed to a hard key, so electronic key card system, updating the county's ADA transition plan, and I mentioned that the county, the facilities capital improvement plan, after final presentation of budgets, we will come back with an update on the capital improvement plan. Also, planning, planning projects, not just design projects, but planning for fourth-floor vacancy is one thing, the sheriff admin vacancy, so there's a lot of planning that needs to be done that is not currently in design. So with that said, one other thing that is not in the budget, and I apologize to admin for this, this is kind of a last-minute request, but in our position allocations, we have one capital project manager. I'm going to ask for a temporary additional allocation of one. We have a retirement that is coming sooner than I'd like to say. Put us in a bind, and so I'd like to request a temporary increase from one to two, and the funding should be covered through capital projects, so it should be no net, no net effect on the, on the general fund. So we can, we can discuss that more potentially later, or as necessary. So moving on to the next budget unit that is there, which is budget unit 4121, on budget manual page D250. So integrated solid waste management is, as I mentioned earlier, the Eastlake landfill and countywide integrated waste management program. Staffing is a relatively steady state at 2.3 million. Vacancy rate, again, is generally zero. Staffing is seven permanent support staff, which covers all of public services, essentially our office staff, and then the landfill staff is 12 permanent staff, and two term staff plus extra help. Revenue, on the revenue side, 5.3 million is the revenue. That is primarily landfill disposal fees or tipping fees. That's at 56,000 tons, the number that is estimated there is based on 56,000 tons of debris, and it includes a minor 2% increase, which your board previously approved, just through CPI. The remainder of revenue is from hauler franchise fees, countercycle grants, and other miscellaneous, such as interest. On the services and supplies side, it's 2.1 million, which is pretty steady state, and that covers ongoing landfill operations. Capital assets and projects, on the asset side, we do have some equipment replacement for a loader and a pickup truck of 176,000. The project side, the landfill expansion, which is underway, which is phase one of the overall landfill expansion, we have 1.5 million for that project. We may need to increase that at final. Your board previously approved a change order that will likely need to increase that. We won't need to increase that until final, because those costs won't hit until fall at the earliest, certainly after final. We do have the reserves for that, which I'll go into here in a bit. We also have a landfill gas system expansion, $750,000 for groundwater quality measures, and that's in concert with the landfill expansion project, and then some minor landfill operations office building improvements. Reserves, to touch on reserves, those are shown on page C5. The expansion is one reserve, we have 12.2 million in that reserve. That is a net increase of 682,000 this year. That has been as high as, I think, 17, almost 18 million in years past, and that's, as we, as we tap into projects, like we're doing right now, it goes down. So the amount that we have now is not sufficient for the entirety of the expansion that we have planned over the next 10 or so years, but we will progressively be adding to that reserve to build up enough to fund it as we, as we build the projects. Davis Street is another reserve. That is for our shared, shared maintenance agreement with the city of Clear Lake. We have 125,000 there, proposing a $5,000 increase. Another reserve is landfill gas system and water quality improvements, a decrease of 750,000 in consideration of the former capital project that I mentioned. Equipment reserve, we have about 1.4 million. That is an increase of 324,000. We, as we need to replace equipment, we replace it. Sometimes it's a million-dollar piece of equipment, other years it's less, so that's just appropriate funding to ensure that we can maintain our equipment. Closure and post-closure, this is a responsibility that all landfill owners and operators have, which is to have a reserve fund to cover the future closure and maintenance after the closure of the facility, and these numbers are established in state law. It proposes a $365,000 increase, which is based on how much airspace we used in the previous year, how much we have to deposit is based on that. So the 365,000 is, you know, as an engineer, it's just formula-driven, I'll just say that. The same with the unanticipated corrective action reserve, which shows a $48,000 increase. The one other reserve that's there is environmental liability of $1 million. That is a steady, just a stagnant number, that is what's driven by state law, $1 million. I will, the accomplishments are, you know, running that landfill and keeping it environmentally friendly, that's, you know, they, the staff there deserve all the credit. The expansion that is going on, it's a milestone, and that will continue, so I think that's the biggest accomplishment. Goals for next year, finishing the construction of this phase one, and then getting to the point where we're nearing the completion of the design for phase two and three. We're going to combine those into one project. We're also looking at a landfill gas to energy feasibility study, and property acquisition for phase four of the, of the landfill expansion. That touches on the landfill, but we look at county integrated waste management, which is the countywide program. We're talking about recycling and curbside collection. We're looking at an organics curbside collection. Your board may be aware of organics being a push statewide. We are exempt from that requirement, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be planning for the future, when we are no longer exempt, so on a voluntary basis, which is what we have pursuing, pursuing that. Also, beverage recycling center pilot program, we just recently got approval in a project with Mendocino County. We're waiting on the state to really release the funding, but trying to, I'll say, help the state in their, in their recycling CRV program. It's a state system, they have the funding, and we're trying to solve a local problem that really is a state-driven issue. And then lastly, continued material-specific free or reduced cost programs, such as tires, mattresses, carpet, oil, and hazardous waste. So moving on from solid waste to Parks, Recs, Trails, there are three budget units, excuse me, two, two budget units here that I will touch on. First is budget unit 711 on page D303. This budget unit is Parks, Recreation, and Trails. It really covers primarily the maintenance, repair, and improvement of all county parks, as well as, similar to facilities, the planning, engineering, and construction management of capital projects for those parks. It also includes, and I don't want to minimize, the Recreation and Trails, the department does have primary responsibility for that, and that's a goal of this year, is to, is to enhance that, that aspect. Staffing, staffing is a pretty steady state, 1.2 million. Vacancy rate is generally zero. Staffing is 13, 13 permanent staff this year, well, next fiscal year. That is a proposed increase of one, in consideration of additional parks that we're adding. It also includes seasonal and part-time extra help. I will note that there's a change needed to Attachment B. It calls out 10 parks, excuse me, it calls out nine parks maintenance worker allocations. That should say 10, so I think that has been communicated with admin. On revenue side, department-generated revenue is 5.1 million, that's a minor increase. The majority of that is park improvement grants, 3.5 million. It's also from telecommunication leases on Mount Canocti, as well as TOT and geothermal. Services and supplies is pretty steady state at 1.1 million. Capital projects, 4.2 million, the projects there, this is, 711 does have all the capital projects for parks, they're not housed in other budget units, so I'll touch on these. Hammond Park Improvements is a state grant of about 2.3 million. We also have Cobb Area Community Parks and Trails, the planning and design for that. Your board just approved, I believe, last week, if not, if not this week, a contract to begin that planning and design effort. We are wrapping up the Clean California Parks Beautification Grant, which is improvements at about 15 parks countywide, you probably, they're not, they don't stand out per se, because it's a lot of different amenities, it's not a significant improvement at any one park. The caveat to that would be Hinman Park in Nice and Middletown Square, where there are two restrooms that were put in, well, one restroom at each, so those are ones that might stand out there. We also have a riding mower, and potentially more added at final, when we start looking at what is available through the, through the budget process, so, and I'll leave, the Parks Reserve, I think, is presented in 1120, budget unit 1120. Accomplishments, the Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan, just wrapping that up, coming, coming to completion here. Hammond Park Improvements in Nice, we are at the 90% design phase, so we're very close to getting, getting out to bid. Lake County Recreation Agency, the JPA, working with that, essentially, it's, you know, you're looking at the county staff that is participating in that, and we're trying to make, make some headway where, you know, there is no, you know, there is no funding there, we're trying to, trying to make some, make the name known, I think is the best way to put that. Goals, moving forward, recurring parks maintenance, that's, I just need to emphasize that, the park staff, keep those parks operating, and they deserve, they deserve a lot of credit. That's, you know, first and foremost goal. Second here, we have new positions, they're not in the budget now, but we need to work, one of the recommendations from the Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan is focusing on recreation programming, specifically new positions that would have that as their, their sole purpose, so recreation programmers, recreation planners. To that end, a goal of this year- To that end, a goal of this year before we have the staff is, with the existing staff that we have, get some recreation programming out there. So just to put it out there, probably as the first public notice here, is that we will have a, what we're calling Lakeside Kids' Summer Day Camp, July 30th through August 1st, just a half-day for three days, just a kids' summer camp. Signups opening up very soon, if not this week, then the first part of next week. And I'm really excited about doing that, so we can open up some programming for kids and adults as well. That's the focus. To that end, other programming that we're looking at in the fall would be what I'm going to call the Canocti Climb up Mount Canocti. You have 5Ks, 10Ks, walks. We can do that on some of our property as well. So I've been in communication with Adventist Health, who's talking with Sutter, and it'll be a good partnership with those entities, as well as the Lake Rec, the JPA, and I look forward to other collaboration as well. Lastly, on the goals, well, not lastly, but just Cobb Park Interim Use Plan and the final design there, and just progressing with our projects. Moving on to another budget unit, which is 7073, Quimby Parks Improvement. This is Page 307, D 307. This budget unit is, these are funds that are placed in reserves to be appropriated in the future for park improvements based on subdivisions. So when there's a subdivision proposed, there's a fee assessed to, if certain conditions are met, then the developer pays a fee for the need for park improvements. It's about $3,400 per parcel. We currently have $260,000 in reserve. We usually estimate about two per year, so not significant, but it starts to add up. We do have a significant amount in there, relatively significant, primarily from Collier Avenue. So we have a good amount there that is going to be going, just because of the nature of the area. Hammond Park is right next door, so we're looking to put the majority of those reserves towards Hammond Park. All right, moving on to Budget Unit 7074, which is John T. Klaus Park. This is a budget unit that is one individual park. The reasoning for that is that it's a, as required by the trust, that how the county received the property and the trust proceeds, it required that the funds were separate from the general fund. So starting with this fiscal year, we have $3.6 million. That comes from trust proceeds, which is the current reserve balance, fund balance carryover, and then remaining trust proceeds. We're looking to spend this year budgeting $450,000. Of that, 135,000 is for planning and environmental studies. Your board just approved a contract to that end, less than that amount, but we're setting some aside for future planning for this year. Also, $65,000 for staff and a placeholder of $250,000 for site cleanup. There is a good amount of cleanup to be done out there. And that leaves in reserve $3.1 million for future work. And that wraps up 7074. So moving on to museums, two budget units here, 7201, 7202. 7201 is on Page D 311. Museums, this is essentially the operating budget for museums. There are three county museums, the Courthouse Museum here in Lakeport, Schoolhouse Museum in Lower Lake, and Gibson Museum in Middletown. Staffing, staffing is at 335,000, which is slightly up from last year. Vacancy rate is, I'll say generally zero. Right now, it's 50%, because we have one recruitment open. There's two full-time staff, so, and we're very close to filling that position. One permanent curator, one permanent assistant curator, which is the one that we're filling, and that is an increase from a three-quarter time. And we have, the majority of this is part-time extra help, plus nonprofits that are volunteers. So I want to thank them very much for their efforts. Services and supplies, $185,000, which is relatively steady state. I will point out that a good portion of that, 100,000, comes from Marketing and Economic Development, Budget Unit 1892. And on the capital side, we have $144,000 for a Pomo family sculpture, which, the maquette for that, basically the design, will be coming to your board soon for show and tell. That has been designed by the artist, selected through the selection process that included a tribal advisory committee with the museum, so looking forward to that. Accomplishments, two of the grants, one for the Pomo family sculpture. These are grants that we secured after work was already in progress. So we have 67,000 for the Pomo family sculpture and 75,000 for the Pomo gallery upgrades in the Courthouse Museum. Increased visitation, over 4,000 individual visits. I don't have a percentage increase, but it's certainly gone up from COVID. And then lastly, accomplishment here, it's on a county park, and it's an internal collaboration, but it's collaboration with parks and a nonprofit organization, History Corps for Historic Rehabilitation of Mary Downin Cabin on Mount Canocti. A few goals that I want to just highlight, completion of those two projects, the Pomo family sculpture and the Pomo gallery, but also collaboration, well, consultation with local sovereign nations for repatriation of artifacts. We're underway with that, which is a very involved process that largely drives our request to increase our assistant curator time and potentially other time. So that's underway. And then lastly, as a goal, is just an increased presence, increased programs, and new exhibits. That's a big push that we have. All right, and the last budget unit that I have, also museums, is the Museum Improvement Fund, Budget Unit 7202 on Page 315. This is a repository for donations that are received, and it's intended for exhibit improvements and collection care. So we have appropriations of $5,000, and we're proposing 75,000 in reserves. Of that 75,000, 21,000 is intended for just, for general future exhibit improvements and collection care, and 54,000 is specific donations for the Courthouse Museum Lake Family Pomo Sculpture. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your summaries. Are there any questions or comments? So real quick on the change, is that a change that we will be affecting in our position allocation, and will that change affect the appropriations? Or were all of the position allocations already accounted for in the salaries that are on the Parks and Rec?
So in Budget Unit 7011 in Parks and Rec, it is accounted for in the appropriations. It was just missed on the position allocation, so that will be amended. And then on the Budget Unit 1671, Buildings and Grounds, the capital project manager, we will need to discuss that with Lars, and we'll bring that back before the position allocation is set.
Yeah, and that was me dropping it right here. So that's through no fault other than my own, is what I'll say, and the, you know, and the recent knowledge of the retirement.
I will say one thing, you have a laundry list of projects. I'd like to know what's possible within the budget to look at a little bit more than just a overlap and then a swap, because somebody is retiring, but one individual dealing with all the projects you have, because one of my questions to you is, for example, some of your projects that you have on the capital asset list have been on the list for quite some time, maybe two, three years, such as the District Attorney roof. There's some other roof projects that have been on there for a while, and I understand that when you have that many things to get accomplished, you're trying to chip away at all of them, or trying to get some of the other projects accomplished, and it's not possible to get to all of them. I guess a brief question is, on the capital asset list, under capital projects, outside of the water line, that's not you at all, but I would suspect that the rest, the construction in progress for buildings and improvements are all yours. Are all of those anticipated to be accomplished this year, or they're just on the list, again, because of the accumulation of funds and the sequel process and so on and so forth?
Yeah, the roofs, roofs are ones that have been on there for quite some time, and that is, that is not an issue of our staffing, either on the planning or construction side. That was, that was an issue that was external to the department, external to the county. And, you know, it had to do with how we were proposing to get it done, and that just didn't work out with the company that we were working with. So we are, I just received proposals from an architect to design all of those. There is a cost to that, and so the numbers that are in that capital budget would go up if we were to pursue the architecture side. So essentially, you know, hiring a contractor to design, which is reasonable, but when we talk about replacing a roof, we're not talking about something that is a brand-new design, so it's relatively straightforward. So I think that the answer, you know, I don't have an answer to your question, other than roofs are one that have been on there longer than I would like. It's not a sequel issue at all, or anything else that might commonly delay these projects. It's more of a funding issue. So if we have to, if we say yes, let's take the architecture design side, great, and we do have a building reserve that we can tap into and help pay for that, but it's expediting it through additional funding.
Okay. And then just to check in real quick, Courthouse Solar, I know we've done some contracts and some approvals here. Is that anticipated within the '24, '25?
It is, yes. Yeah, we're looking at fall, being ready for construction. It's a design, simplistically, it's a design-build, so the same contractor is working on the design that's doing the construction. We are at, very near the 100% design development phase or stage, and PG&E is working on their necessary upgrades on their side that result from our project. So it's on schedule and should be ready this fall. Now, whether the permission to operate is there on PG&E's side is something else entirely, but based on the way things are going right now, we should be on schedule for end of this year.
So I apologize, I'm going to ask you a question, because I know you're involved in the conversation, but it's outside of the budget unit. I forgot to ask when Under Sheriff Bingham was here about the jail generator. Did we not finish that up?
We finished one generator, and the second generator is...
The backup?
Yes, exactly. There are two generators, and it was expedited when we, without going in, I'm happy to go into the details, at least the ones that I recall here, but when we installed the new generator, the old generator was basically not grandfathered in anymore for air quality purposes. So we had to expedite the replacement of that second generator, and that is, I believe, scheduled for this fall. There's a transfer switch that's a part of it, there's a number of pieces besides just the generator, but that is being replaced.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have for you. I'm happy to see, though, that you want to add somebody to your parks. I think your parks look amazing throughout the county. I know that Vice Chair Randall was saying how people at RCRC traveling through to Sacramento make some positive comments about what they witnessed when driving through, and so adding somebody to the list of our 28, I believe it is, parks and facilities that we have, I think is going to be great, especially with the expansions that we're doing. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see nobody in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. I will bring it back to the board for action, and no amendment, it's only on the position allocation. Okay.
Move to approved Budget Unit 1671, 4121, 7011, 7073, 7074, 7201, 7202.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go back to where we should have been, and we are going to invite Social Services up to the front, and we're going to look over the number of budgets that they have. We're going to start on Page D 254. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board. Rachel Dilman Parsons here for Social Services. I'm the director, and with me here today is Kelly Page. She is our Deputy Director over Administration, and she is prepared to make her remarks and walk you through the budget and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. First off, before I run through our numerous budget units, I want to thank our DSS accounting team, Carrie Holt, Nicole Streif, Diana Dixon, Tracy Keener, and Zach Kazaka for all the work they put into this every year. It's quite a bear, and they tackle it every year without complaint, and they do a great job. I also want to thank the folks at the Administrative Office, in particular Casey Moreno and Stephen Carter, for all their support. It's always great to work with you. And I do want to let you know that I have Nicole Streif, our Accounting Supervisor, on standby in the Zoom room, just in case there are any questions that require a deeper dive than we're prepared for. And also, I'm recovering from a cold, so my voice might decide to cut out on me. I am not contagious. Okay, so I'll run down all of the budget units, starting with the biggest, 5011. This is our Social Services Administration Budget. This budget is the administrative piece for DSS. It provides our staffing, services, and supplies needed to carry out our department functions. In addition to the administrative expenses, this budget also includes certain program expenses, such as CalFresh, Medi-Cal, CalWorks, Welfare to Work, supportive services and childcare, adult protective services, public guardian, public administrator, and also direct child welfare services. This budget also includes the in-home supportive services, public authority contract costs. And this budget starts in the Budget Manual on Page D 254. All of our budgets live from that page, ending on D 278. The next budget unit is 5012. This is Social Services Special Programs. This budget unit is comprised of staff that are assigned to the public authority and to the Area Agency on Aging. The next budget unit we have is Budget Unit 5121, General Welfare. This budget unit provides assistance payments to families through the CalWorks program. It funds direct payments to resource families and residential facilities for children who are removed from home due to abuse and neglect. This budget unit also funds the share of payroll costs for IHSS providers who assist older adults and those with disabilities, so they can remain safely in their home. The next budget unit, 5125, is Wraparound Services. This is a bit of a unique budget unit for us. It's the budget unit where we deposit our CWS wraparound reinvestment funds that were collected during a pilot program we were involved in. These funds are used to cover specific CWS services as recommended by CWS staff and approved by the DSS Director. Our next budget unit, 5164, is Housing Administration. This budget unit includes operation of the Housing Choice Voucher Program and staffing and support for other housing budget units, 5165 and 5169. 5165 is our Home PI Housing Services Budget Unit. This one consists of loan payment proceeds from first-time homebuyer and owner-occupied rehabilitation loans that have been made out of home grants from previous years. 5168 is our next budget unit. This is the Senior Citizens Program. This budget unit assists in supporting local senior centers and provides Lake County's matching funds to the Area Agency on Aging of Lake and Mendocino County. Our next budget unit is 5281, General Welfare. This budget unit is comprised of our General Relief Program assistance payments. And finally, our last budget unit, 5282, is the IHSS Public Authority Administration Budget Unit. The IHSS Public Authority maintains a registry of screen providers and offers training to providers and recipients. The Public Authority contracts with Social Services, Budget Unit 5012 for staffing, and Budget Unit 511 for operations. Some highlights, over our last fiscal year, we issued $38 million in CalFresh benefits to more than 17,000 residents of Lake County. That's about a quarter of our county's population. We renewed Medi-Cal coverage for over 31,000 individuals. That's 46% of Lake County's population. We supported over 2,500 IHSS recipients with 2,100 providers. We certified 18 new resource family homes through Child Welfare Services. We successfully created and implemented plans to consolidate building space more appropriate to our current staff needs and to improve evits of access for our clients and customers. And we completed the transition of DSS programs back to pre-pandemic operations. Our goals for the upcoming fiscal year include leading the mass care and shelter efforts, which we had a little bit of a reminder of yesterday. And in doing that, we will... And in doing that, we will once again continue to work with our, our partners, local, state, federal sheltering organizations as needed. We're going to continue to pursue creative ways to recruit and retain staff to help reduce our vacancies so that we can deliver the vital services we provide to the residents of Lake County. We plan to research and pursue technologies to strengthen our ability to meet our reporting requirements, reduce any inefficiencies we find, support our staff, and to provide excellent service to our clients and customers. We also plan to increase collaboration with community partners and provide support when and where possible. We also hope to include the use of DEI lens to help guide in our decision-making as we are looking at our policies, procedures, programs, and any decisions we are looking at for implementation this year. And as your Board is aware, the DSS budget is primarily comprised of state and federal dollars. This year, our total recommended budget amount is right around $71 million for all the combined budget units. Bulk of our budget is derived through time studying. I know we've talked a little bit about that process previous years. We have struggled a bit in our department with vacancies. We've been hovering right around 18% for quite some time now, and that's right about where we are now. And we still have our three staff who are dedicated to recruitment, retention, and supporting our staff. And we do also fund a full-time position at County Human Resources. The position changes we have for this year, we haven't added any allocations. Instead, we're trying to be a little creative. We're taking some of our current positions. One in particular that comes to mind, we're taking a full-time CWS social worker. We're going to try two part-time positions to see if maybe there's a little bit more flexibility for somebody to come in and work a part-time job. Maybe they don't want a full-time job. So we're just getting creative with what we have. We're changing three of our employment and training worker positions to two social workers and a social services aide to see if we have a little more traction recruiting for those positions instead of our historically hard-to-fill and training, our training worker positions. And then our capital asset requests, we have the same request we've had for a couple of years for financial management software. We've kind of held off on that one, waiting to see what the county puts into place. We're hoping to find something that will seamlessly integrate with the county system before we go out and buy something. So that's the hope, that whatever the county chooses, there'll be a module that's just for DSS and it'll be super smooth. And then we're also hoping to pursue a lobby kiosk for Anderson Ranch where folks can submit documentation, make it a little bit easier to get their stuff in. And that will, you know, depend on funding we receive from the state. And as you're aware, you know, our funding for this year is kind of up in the air. We won't know too much more about it until later in the year. We're hoping our allocations aren't cut by too much, but we are preparing in case they are. And that kind of follows along with how we've been spending conservatively for the last couple of fiscal years, just to make sure we're not caught short. The one note I have on our CWS reserves, those funds are very restricted for use. They can only serve those CWS clients that fit very strict criteria. And really, they're meant to help as a wraparound to maintain a placement for a youth who may be struggling to stay in that placement. And it has to be a funding source of last reserve. So there's very definite criteria and that's what those reserves are for. And that is about all I have prepared.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
First, a compliment. I'm super excited to see the bump up in wraparound funding. Who'd you have to say hi at admin to get that done? So that's awesome. On Budget Unit 5165, on page D 271, at the bottom line item, 57-03, I saw no actuals in 22, 23 for the home rental loans home program. And so I see 1.2 million budgeted for the next fiscal year. I'm just wondering if we have any actuals tracking in the current fiscal year because really there's a need, we need to budget for it, but are we making any progress?
Can you tell me that page number again? I'm sorry.
And the bottom appropriation line item, 57-03.
So this line item, we try to guess who is going to pay off their loans throughout the year and if we're going to be able to issue new loans. It's very hard to know until we get closer to the new fiscal year into the September timeframe if we're going to be able to contract for the services to make new loans because very few people do that service anymore and our staff at housing just don't have the expertise, quite honestly. So this is something that we hope to be able to do, but haven't had very much success.
Thank you. Anything else? Appreciate the patience on the accounting software so that we can figure out what can work for more than just one department or one section of the agency. So I really appreciate that. And I, I do have some concerns as well about the upcoming state budget. And I think that there is no need for any conversation right now today, rather than in September, where we'll have the actualities of what that effect will be. But I know that I am constantly concerned to the resources you have when it comes to adult protective services, child protective services, and things of the kind where the, the funds are very limited. And I know that Social Services is, is going to continue to get more and more important as state budgets start to get crunched. It's not just Social Services, it's other programs that our seniors rely on that will be impacted and the need will only grow. And so I'm looking forward to September to really see, especially with our fund balance carryover, what is that going to look like and how is it that we can fill in the gaps of what has been kind of gutted out by state budget? So, but I appreciate you bringing it up. And I am going to open this for public comment. No one in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. Bringing it back to the board for action.
I'll totally do it. Social Services in the house. Move to approve budget units 5001, 1, 5001, 2, 5121, 5125, 5164, 5165, 5168, 5281, and 5282.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. So at this moment in time, I don't have specific direction, but I'm going to try to navigate with what I've been told. We are going to see our UC cooperative extension tomorrow. We've missed our special district's director, so we'll see all the special district stuff tomorrow. And so that means next is our district attorney. Look at the happy, look at the happiness. And so we have three budget units and we will be starting on page D 91. And our district attorney, Susan Kropnis.
Thank you. Hi. I have Tatsu Suzuki here with me, my head of the Victim Witness Office. And Doris Langford, she is on Zoom somewhere in the ether, so hopefully I won't need her, but you know, normally I do. So she might be able to answer some questions. So to get started, in terms of, these are budget units, 2110, District Attorney's Office, 2113 Victim Witness, and then 2116 is the Asset Forfeiture Unit. So to start off with District Attorney, accomplishments 2023, 24, I was able to hire two new attorneys back a while ago, and they've been working out terrific. And so it's so much, it's very helpful to have more attorneys to cover all of the cases that we have. And then I just recently hired two other attorneys just this, this month. And that's fantastic. And so I'm getting closer to being fully staffed with attorneys. I think I have at least one or two more positions open, so I'm hoping to fill those in 2024, 25. And it really is important because, you know, we have a couple of attorneys, at least one possibly retiring next, next year, at the end of next year, but we, you know, the constant, we do have a lot of attorneys that might be retiring in five to, five or so years. So it's really important to bring in new attorneys and have them trained and get experience so they can follow, follow forward with the, you know, once, once we have people retiring. So we also have, I think the biggest thing that we have coming, oh, we did establish an intern or certified law clerk position, which is also very helpful. It's helpful for not only to have them in the office, helping with motions, responding to motions and everything, but also it helps with recruitment. So if we can get somebody in the office, either certified or as an illegal intern and they like it, then as soon as they pass the bar, they, they're hopefully will stay with us. And so we're in the, in, in a situation right now, we've already talked to somebody who's very enthusiastic to come to our office. And we're hoping when he passes the bar, he will stay with us. And so I'm, I'm very, very grateful that we were able to start this program in this position. Now, the biggest goals or, it's a goal, but it's, it's a, it's kind of a, you know, well, it's a necessity. So I think that this is the year, 2024, to, we're going to have to upgrade to a new case management system. And this is crucial to do this before January 1st, if possible, because that's when we have to implement the racial blind charging law, January 1st, to have a system set up where when we charge a case, we get a report in and it has to be expunged from any mention of names, race, certain terms, basically, so we cannot tell what the race or even a possibly gender of the person when we make our initial decision whether or not to charge it. Once we decide whether or not we're going to charge it and at what level, then it all reverts back to, oh yeah, we can see it all now. And the purpose of it is to show that we are not basing even, even if we don't realize it ourselves, we're not basing our decision on any kind of racial or gender or other factors. It's a state requirement, so there are several case management systems that provide that service included in their case management system. But if we don't have that, it's going to be a nightmare to try to implement it without that upgrade. So we have been in contact with two companies. We've interviewed with them. They've told us what they could provide for us and we are hopeful that we can make a decision and get that contract with them this year. There's a couple of advantages to, to move forward now because I've talked to Ray Buena Ventura, the public defender, in terms of if he would, you know, sign on with us to go with the same system. And he's thinking about that. That could save us some money. We're also looking now at a situation where we'd be able to, a so-called piggyback with another county that has that company, so we don't have to go out for a bid. And we also have, I forgot what I was going to say. Anyway, we also, because we're going to be required to start using the system, it's, it's going to take at least, we're hoping to do this quickly because of, you know, it's, it's going to take time to transfer the information into the new system. The, one of the systems that we're looking at is, is compatible with the court system. So that would make it a lot easier to deal with the court, E-courts, the system that they have. So that is one of the big things that we're looking at in this, in the near future. We do have some asset forfeiture funds to, for the startup costs. We don't have, we're waiting for a ballpark figure of how much this will be. We're looking at maybe 100,000 to, to, for all the startup costs. And then maybe 50,000 to 75,000 a year for maintenance, depending on what the needs are. But we can use some asset forfeiture funds for the startup costs. And so that, that would be a great accomplishment to get done this, this coming fiscal year, this fiscal year. Well, soon to be. Okay, so then our Victim Witness Office, you know, we have, they provide so many services to victims. They're so essential for us to, to be prepared for court, to, to present a really good case in front of juries. The Victim Witness Advocates, they, they bring in the jurors, they accompany the, the victims to court. They stay with them. They meet with us when we're talking to victims of crime, preparing them for court. They coordinate travel. They do so much. We also, our Victim Witness Office includes our multidisciplinary interview center, which is fantastic. It's a safe place for children to be interviewed. And so we are really, the attorneys depend on our Victim Witness Office every day. So they're a very important part of our office and they do a lot of other things, too. And there's, as you've been probably hearing all day, there's a severe proposed cuts to the funding for Victim Witness. And if that was to happen, we would not, basically, we wouldn't be able to fund more than just maybe one person. And that's, that, we would not be able to do what we're required to do under law to, and provide services to people in the community if that happens. So I'll let Tatsu talk about that for just a couple of minutes.
Good day, Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So just to give you a little bit of numbers from our office, so last fiscal year, we assisted, so basically from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, we assisted a total of over 1,300 victims and provided over 11,000 services to, to survivors in Lake County. Now, the VOCA funding cut has been, VOCA funding, meaning Victims of Crimes Act, funding cut has been all over the news for the past six to eight months or so, where they have proposed approximately 40%, which is a, the federal grant cut, which is allocated to all the states in the, in the United States. And that was proposed to be decreased by 40%. Now, the Lake County Victim Witness current situation and consequences is that we're anticipating 44.7% reduction in this amount, which basically, so our office, we have four individuals, a forensic interviewer, myself, and two advocates. Three of those positions are VOCA-funded, Victims of Crime Act-funded. This 44.7% reduction would equate to a $138,659 cut, which equates to 1.725 positions cut out of those, those three individuals. There are two Assembly Bills that were working their way through the California Assembly. One is AB 1956, which in, in a nutshell, basically would award, let's see here, Prior to Crime Victim Services Funding- victim services, funding the awards office, if 10% or more was cut from the federal grant, so the state would cover this. And this is an assembly bill that is currently held in committee, so it will not be going anywhere, at least for the foreseeable this year. So that assembly bill has not been, has not been, has not come through. There's Assembly Bill 2432. This bill creates new revenue sources to provide ongoing funding for crime victim services in California. The bill holds that bad corporate actors accountable for financial and legal wrongdoing. It establishes new fines, which will be then funneled to the California Victims Fund and given to the crime victim service providers. However, this is not immediate, immediate funding. It's going to take a while to happen. It was amended in the California Senate and re-referred to the committee back just last week, June 13th. And currently, the California budget for fiscal year 2024, the legislature has included $100 million to backfill the VOCA fund and to fill that gap. This amount is in keeping up with the amount that Cal OES requires to avoid that 44.7% cut to all of the counties. But that requires this to be included in the final budget and signed by both the legislative, legislature and the governor. So that is not, that's still, I believe, still in negotiations of what the final budget is going to be, so that is not something that we could 100% guarantee that will be there or not. And ultimately, there is a California Penal Code 13835.5, which outlines mandatory services for crime victims and survivors. And with this cut, it will maybe reduce our numbers to one, and we may have to consider closing the division without funding assistance to fill that gap. So that is where we are currently in hopes of California coming through with some sort of funding or, or some assistance somewhere.
And I'm also in contact with Mike Thompson, our Senator Assemblyperson, I'm sorry, in the House. He's reached out to me and as well, he supports funding, and he's doing what he can, and also our state representatives as well. We've reached out to them to, to, to fund this and support this. If, state funding if the feds don't come through. So, and then our last, my last budget is 2116, the asset forfeiture funds. We have, not sure exactly how much money we have in that, but we continue to get asset forfeiture funds in there, and, and we have to, obviously, we get a small portion of it, and then it goes to the agency. The majority of it goes to the agency that did the case, but we do have a substantial amount of funds accumulated, and that's why we would be able to use some of those funds for the new system, case management system. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation and also your advocacy for what your needs are. I may be corrected, but I'm looking at your asset forfeiture reserves, and it looks like it's 751,900, which is a decent amount.
Yes, yes.
And I know that we had a presentation at CSAC regarding the racial blind. I know the Yolo County District Attorney had already worked on getting his own software prior to that becoming a state law, and it would be great if we can use that in multiple departments rather than just one. And in my mind, I was thinking, even from an HR perspective, in making sure that we're doing a, an unbiased process with our staffing when we're dealing with personnel issues might be something fun to even just talk about and see if it works as well, just because I think that the issue that is being dealt with is not just an issue in crime, it's an issue way outside of just that. So it got me thinking of what other departments might be able to benefit from looking at something like that. And also, another CSAC session I was in was the fact that every state mandate was on the table for not being supported, and it was, it's not good news at all for anybody, and I'm sorry that you guys are in the crosshairs as well. Thank you so much for your presentation. We have a question from Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Appreciate the need to pull the trigger on, on the software, but I don't, you know, in the budget as presented, I see like barely 20K allocated for software as a service. So between your asset forfeiture and whatever you're going to do before you come back this in September, clearly we're going to need some additional detail. I don't know if you've already been to Technology Committee to talk about these needs, but the clock is ticking. One thing you did mention in your presentation, and the clock will be ticking on that, will be care court implementation. So do you have any detail about the level of advanced planning that's been done on your office for care court? And do you have any unanticipated costs that you're going to incur as we move closer to implementing that?
Well, we have the Mental Health Court Committee with the courts, and, I mean, as far as I know, I mean, right now, we don't have any current plan in regards to the care court, different from what we're doing now. The courts have not really established any procedures on that. Other than Mental Health Court.
Well, we do have an implementation deadline coming up, don't we? Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Randall?
Yeah, it's unfortunate to hear about the Victim Witness Division and cuts that you may be looking at. I have attended a couple of those, of court cases with folks in there, and you do some heavy work. It's a lot to take home as well, and I don't think, understand that you probably aren't compensated as such as well, and so it's very, very difficult to deal with the funding that you have. The two, the two bills that you mentioned, is there some information you can send to me so I can talk with RCRC about some of this funding? I know they deal with it as well. So if there's some things maybe we can meet about, I would like to try to help advocate. And then also, I'm looking at the, sorry, I had it, there it is, asset forfeiture. I know it says that it can't be used to supplant county funds that would normally support the law enforcement or prosecution efforts, but is there a way that that could be used to maybe help them? Because I do understand that these, you serve a lot of people, and as Director Jones had mentioned earlier, we have a lot of folks with behavioral health issues, and we have a lot of victims in the county, and I think it's essential that we have this service. But, I mean, I understand if you can't, I just was asking.
Well, that, yeah, that's the problem. I mean, in terms of our asset forfeiture staff, I don't think we can, you know, use those funds to staff an extra person or pay for the salaries, so that's the problem. And, and with, I mean, our staff is really who put in the work and talk to these people and assist them, so it's more than just giving these individuals money for, I mean, the state obviously has a compensation fund for victims, and they, victim witness helps them apply for those funds, but I don't see any way around it at this point to use that money for salaries, or to increase salaries.
I see. Yeah, I just worry, I know that they assist victims to get into court, to be brave enough to go to court, and at times, if they don't have that advocacy, then the case doesn't go through, the, you know, the salient just kind of gets off and then does it again, and we're back at square one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a to-be-continued conversation.
Right, yes.
Again, in the final budget, I think we might have a deeper conversation based on the realities of if some of those bills have changed the outcome, and one of those bills sounds like it's not going to have any impact whatsoever on this one, but it'll still be around possibly, and at that point, maybe looking to have a letter of advocacy coming from the board might be in favor of that. If there's nothing further, let me open it up for public comment on these budget units. See nothing in Zoom and nothing in the chamber. I'm going to bring it back to the board for action.
Move that we approve budget units 2110, 2113, and 2116.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our assessor recorder, Mr. Ford, coming up, and we have five budget units. We're going to start on page D26. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We'll start off, as you said, we've got five business units, kind of typical, I'll kind of go a little fast, and then I'll kind of wait for you guys to start asking questions, and we'll backtrack a little bit. So we'll start off with the 1123, which is the assessor's budget. As you know, the assessor is basically tasked to do all the taxable properties within the county boundaries. And so under that, the accomplishments we have done for this year is we did set a goal, which is one of our last big buckets, to attack the outstanding permits, and we have accomplished all the SFD, which is a big accomplishment that is quite a bit of work this year. We will be closing the tax roll on the 25th, which that will then land at that point, which is big. That's our last big bucket. The remaining stuff in that bucket is much smaller, like, you know, gazebos, some solar that's not even taxable, or at least not taxable on the first, first go-around. And so that will be attacking this year, and that's probably our last big bucket. When I first took over about, now at this point, eight-ish years ago, I estimated it would be about 10 years to fix it. And so we're a little bit ahead of schedule because that's pretty much our last big bucket. Once we fix that, we're pretty much where we need to be. All assessors' offices have different components, and any given day, the different components can be, you know, a little bit behind, a little bit ahead, depending on what's going on. After we fix the permit bucket, we are pretty much on track with where we should be, which that's a little bit ahead of schedule from my initial estimate. We did have additional pass, additional staff pass the basic appraiser exam, which is good because that means we're moving forward with keeping our staff certified, and these are brand-new people we just brought into that, that section. They passed it within this year, which is kind of really what we're looking for. We don't want somebody out there for a couple of years, we really want it within about the first year, especially if they have the education that they can sit. Continue training as always. Our goal for this year is we are going to do, reduce the use code, I think we've talked about in the past. Our use code produces about, I think it's about 1,600 combinations. We generally use about 30-ish. And so that has been ongoing for a long time. It takes a little bit of doing to do it at the right time, and the honest answer is we really want to do it right at the close of the tax roll. We're hoping to do it right as our tax roll happens, but we don't think, we've got a couple of other things going on at the same time. We don't think it's wise to do it this time, so we will be shooting for next year at the same time, and that's our goal. As far as the budget itself, you can see it's relatively flat. We've got, you know, some things that are kind of out of our control. The PERS, of course, is a delta between, between the, well, if you look at 24, 25, and 23, 24, you say delta between those and insurance health and insurance public liabilities. We don't necessarily control those. Public liability is a open case that was before my time, and so that's, that's where that's trying to recognize. Then we'll move on to 2707, and like I said, I'm just going to keep going, and then we'll get to the end. So 2707, the recorders. Oh, let me go back to the 1123. So we have four vacancies, those are hard to fill, we have been working on those, but we've done numerous recruitments on those and have had either nobody show up, or nobody qualified show up, or even have hired somebody and they left within a month. So we've been struggling on those last four. The people we have, we have really good retention, and they've been really steady with us, progressing, doing really well. Other people we have, we've struggled on the ones where people have either retired and not been able to replace them, or they've left on a leave and then come back, and so those three or four, we're really struggling to try and replace those, and that's key. But 2707, we'll move on to the recorders. This year, we were able to replace all our guys, we are fully staffed. Now, when I say that, that also means we're new. We got probably about 50% of our staff that's fairly new, which means they're in the cycle of learning. We train all the time, as you guys have heard in the past, and, and they are catching up pretty fast, but they are newer, and so that is just what it is, and we will increase working on that. As far as, you can see our accomplishments, training the, you know, new staff, hiring the new staff, and this year, which is why we're not doing the use code, is because we're dead in the middle of doing the implementation for Tyler, and hopefully, as soon as Tyler gets implemented, which should be in about another month and a half, that's the first step, and then after that, once that gets digested into the department, we will be looking into an e-recording, hopefully somewhere around December, January-ish, that's our goal. I don't want to throw that out there and have people go, oh, it didn't happen exactly. It's all based on the steps that are occurring right now, and making sure that those go through smoothly. So far, the implementation's going fairly well, but that's what we want to see, we want to see it go fairly well, our staff go through it. Anybody who's gone through an implementation, there is no perfect implementation, they are all not fun, but you do the best you can to, to implement it, train it, we're going very good on that path. So that's, that's really good news for that department, that's years in the making trying to get to that point. And everything else is, is basically just set up, ready to go on that, just waiting for this to kind of get there, get our module, get the system, the new system implement, and then we'll be on our way. And we'll jump into what you would call, I mean, the trust funds or special revenue funds, and this is where we would probably talk about reserves, I guess. Let me say before we get into any of these, these have definitions, and so the definitions are basically, definitions apply to me, definition apply to basically accounting rules. So the only way somebody can actually touch the funds, reserve or otherwise, would be if it falls within the definition of each one of these funds. So I cannot spend it, like, and these are all recording, so I cannot spend it on the assessor side, I can only spend it on the recorder side, and specifically for that definition. So recording micrographics, we got our redaction project finished for some past redaction that had not been done before my time, but we caught up on that project. New, new staff, the new staff implements with this through micrographics in indexing and verifying, they are training, the new staff is training, and the old staff is getting more training. Of course, we'll continue that, and we hope to do some projects and scan additional old records for preservations. We have some stuff, again, before my time, but stuff if you want to catch up, that's different components of the index. Then we go to recording modernization, kind of same type of scenario, this is where Tyler is being paid out of, and this is definitely within the use of that, of that fund, and so the system is being paid through that. We also can pay for anything that modernizes, so we can pay for additional redaction, we can pay for additional books, any other scenarios like that. As you can see, our goal is to rebind another batch of books, which is binding, deacifying, preserving, encapsulating, depending on what it needs for the documents, to make sure it preserves. Once we deacify, preserve, encapsulate, depending on the scenario, it's about 150 years out in the future that it preserves for that book, and that's what's part of our, our mandate, but that's what we want to continue to do. We've done, previous assessor did quite a, quite a bit of it in the lobby that you see. We've done another chunk, we have some more that we definitely want to do, and we're kind of just doing it in stages. That'll be paid through that fund. Next one is recorders, vitals, and health statistics. We, of course, again, our training, new staff, we got about 50% new, so we're going through that. Our intention, hopefully, is if we can get the other goals in the Tyler, the e-recording, all the things we've talked about for our goals, we intend to look at a remote kiosk, we've looked at it in the past, we kind of held off on it because there's a couple of things, you know, with other departments and with our department, so as soon as we can get these other ones, we're hoping to get that in by end of year, which will allow the ability for, for greater accessibility within our department. So that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Comments, questions? Supervisor Green?
I'm afraid I don't want to know the answer, but I see two different reserve funds, 390.00, 392.00, but those reserves are spread across these three micrographics, modernization, and vitals, and health stats. So, and they're, and they're big dollar amounts, and they're different dollar amounts, given the relative scale of the budget. So what's the back, why do we have two different reserves that are kind of sprinkled about? So what's the back, why do we have two different reserves that are kind of sprinkled about these functions?
You actually should have three different reserves and it's going to be one tied to, and think about it from an accounting standpoint, each, my first two budget units are general funds, so they have no balance sheet whatsoever. Every other one that is not a general fund, it's going to have its own balance sheet. So you should expect a balance sheet and/or reserve for every single one of those, so three reserves for them, one for each one of these. These are actually stated in rules and regulations, called out exactly for, in certain cases, a dollar for each one of those collected on the fee. And so that is going to continue to grow and as it does in every recorder's office. It's only intended to be spent on what it's used for. So sometimes it goes down, sometimes it goes up. And in our case, because of different things, when I first arrived, some of the projects took a while to go, the guy before me had not spent any of it. And so I inherited a fairly large balance. We have spent it on projects, different redactions, different, in this case, Tyler, rebinding, different things that apply, but even as we do those, some of those are a year-long project. And so we spend it as, as we can get the projects through. But that balance will probably stay the same or grow through my time because it's, keeps getting funded as it goes along. And that is called out in, in the regs.
But you're saying the regs actually call out for one reserve for, like, Fund 182?
No, that's, that's generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, thank you.
So it's basically, it's a special revenue fund, it should have a balance sheet. And so if it's, in the case of the general fund, it's not going to have a balance sheet, we share all the balance sheet as general fund, as Utter Controller can, can explain. All general funding departments, we don't have a balance sheet, we all share it into one big bucket. Every other one that is separate is going to have its own balance sheet. And so by default, think about it from an accounting standpoint, reserve is just another form of retained earnings, right? It's whatever you use or don't use at the very end, it's going to drop off to the end and create retained earnings, i.e., you know, in its pseudo-way of reserve.
All right, thank you.
Does that help? I don't know if that explains it all.
Close enough for today.
Okay.
And I'll add a little bit to that. I know the, every other one of your reserves shows somewhat of a depletion from being utilized for its purpose, that it's there for. I'm not seeing that for the micrographics, is that because we're behind on getting that really going full steam? I'm seeing very small incrementals of expenditures occurring year to year. And here we're going from 605 to 749 to 793,000. And I guess in my mind, I'm like, is there a maximum of what the reserve should look like before it really kind of rings a bell that we need to spend that money?
I can double-check on the regs. There's nothing in the regs that I've ever read on any of these funds that calls out for kind of a maximum. The thought is that these are all set apart to make sure that, like in the case of vitals, that we have those vital records. Because once they go through, like let's say a birth, once it goes through the medical department, right, it's going to come to us for, you know, safekeeping. And we need to make sure that those records and those systems are accordingly okay, right? In the case of some of the projects we want to see in the future, we don't know if we'll get it done, is scanning of those and kind of indexing of those. And so we will deplete it at that point, but there's not a lot of projects in vitals. And so, but I've never heard anything about calling out, you know, shutting down those. I can go take a look and see if there's any way that, hey, we feel there's a max. The only downside is it can be kind of confusing for industry if you push a dollar out and then you push a dollar back. A lot of times in industry, and we hear it through our associations, they like to see it flat and at least predictable. And so that's, again, I kind of inherited a big chunk of that, but we do not, such a lot of vitals at this point because we don't have a lot of projects to do. Big one is going to be what, the one I described. Does that help?
I mean, it, it does, but it's a fee and there's a purpose for the fee. And if it's not being utilized, then it feels like I have to ask, why are we collecting the fee?
And that's a fair.
You provided the best answer, I think, that you are able to provide and we'll see what it looks like in the following years. It doesn't look like this year, you're planning to utilize it in a way that will take off some of the reserves, it will, the reserves is planning to grow.
I, I will say, just if I can add is, if we can get through all the projects, you just heard about three or four fairly, you know, heady projects, we can get through those fairly good with the nice and smooth. My soft project would be going through that project I just described. But that is, the other ones have to go pretty smooth, allow enough time.
And just one last comment, appreciate your efforts in going through all your extra buckets of things that you needed to get through, your prop aids, your new construction, all of those things. I know that that was a, a great point of concern when I started just about six years ago, but it's, it's nice to see the progress that you've been able to make with your staff and it looks like we're in a better place today. So appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Nobody in the chamber, nobody in Zoom, bring it back for action.
A move that we approve Budget Unit 1123, 2707, 2708, 2709, and 2710.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I want to check in with CAO Parker. We have skipped everything that we needed to skip as far as the UC extension and special districts. The last piece is your department with all of the administrative budgets. Would you like to carry those over to tomorrow so we can finish? Usually it's kind of like the culminating conversation. Okay, I wanted to check in rather than make that decision on my own. So it sounds like we are adjourning for the day and we will continue from where we left off with, like I said, our UC cooperative extension, our special districts and administrative budgets, and we will reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Thank you for joining us.